Are approximate. Consideration of items may require more or less time than is scheduled. Items on the agenda may be taken out of order. The public body may combine two or more agenda items for consideration, and the public body may remove an item from the agenda or delay discussion relating to an item on the agenda at any time. Public comment is designated for discussion only. The public has the opportunity to address the commission on any matter not appearing on the agenda. However, no action may be taken on any matter raised until the matter itself has been specifically included on the agenda as an item upon which action may be taken. Additionally, public comment may be heard on any item listed on the agenda. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any agenda item at the Lander County Commissioners Board meeting. All public comment may be limited to three minutes per person at the discretion of the commission. Please note that the public body may interrupt the open meeting and exclude the public for the purpose of having an attorney-client discussion of potential and existing litigation, and that's pursuant to NRS 241-0153-B2. I'll call this meeting to order. And Lakin, would you leave us in place this morning?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a moment of silence. Lander County Commissioners may break for lunch from 12:00 PM to 1:15 PM. Any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. We'll now go into public comment for non-agenda items only. Is there any public comment? Okay, hearing none. We'll move into approval of March 26, 2025 Agenda Notice. If I can have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the March 26, 2025 Agenda Notice.
Hey, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. 1.2, Overview and Discussion of Fiscal Year Hereafter, abbreviated as FY 2025/2026 Revenue Projections and All Other Matters Probably Related There Too.
Okay, good morning, Commissioners. Lakin Sullivan for the record. Our property tax rates didn't change this year. At the time of doing this, I didn't have the pro forma from Department of Taxation for our property tax revenue. But I got that this morning and did a quick glance, and it looks like our property tax revenue increased by about 6%. So that's good news. The consolidated tax went up a little over $2 million, and that was from us removing ourselves from the guaranteed status. And then motor vehicle fuel taxes right where it normally is, and our net proceeds came in quite a bit higher than they're going to this year. So we should get about $23 million, and 16 of that will be for projects.
Okay, thank you, Lakin. Does the commission have any questions? No. Okay. We'll move into 1.3. Procedures, Overview and Possible Discussion Regarding Presentation of the Fiscal Year 2025-2026 Budget. This meeting is the first public hearing on the fiscal year 2025-2026 budgets to prepare the tentative budget, which is filed with the Department of Taxation before April 15. The Board of County Commissioners is required to hold public budget hearings in accordance with NRS 354.596. The county offices, departments, and boards will present and discuss their budget proposals with the Board of County Commissioners during the budget workshops. The budget workshops include the presentations, the presentation review, and discussion of revenues, expenditures, and transfers to and from county funds and specific funding requests. It also includes, but not limited to, the negotiated cost of living and level increases, additions or deletions to personnel at public employer retirement systems, PERS, increases, equipment, supplies, and services used or received. The Board of County Commissioners may take action for approval of the proposed budget, but all budgets are subject to final approval and action at the time final budgets are submitted. Backup materials for each department request, including amounts, requested anticipated future budget increases or decreases from existing fiscal year budgets, capital and equipment expenditures, and additional full/part-time personal positions are contained in the packet, which is available from the Clerk's Office, 50 State Route 305, Battle Mountain, Nevada, 89820, phone number 775-635-5738, and is also available at the meeting hereon. So topics for discussion and actions for March 26, 2025, as well as March 27, 2025, if necessary, will be: grant requests, CCP projects, building and equipment, airport capital improvement, departmental information and requests, and capital outlay requests by department. I've been asked to bump our district court judge up. He has to be somewhere, so we're going to open 2.16. Good morning.
Good morning.
So District Court, Discussion and Possible Action. A, there is a decrease to operations by $44,897. Floor is all yours.
Huh?
I said, the floor is all yours.
Yeah, we have a decrease in the salaries in the budgets here in District Court. We, one of the things, we had as a court reporter, but we didn't go online for that, so we took her salary out. And that was the decrease.
Okay, so I've got some questions, just for clarity, because it was a bit confusing going through this. So, and then in discussion with staff and the new commissioners up here as well. How the District Court works is basically, it's on a, like a cost share, like Lander County's responsible for 40%, Pershing County's responsible for 40%, and Esmeralda is responsible for 20%.
Mineral, right.
Or, sorry, mineral, yeah, sorry. And then, so how, so my question is, how did we come to arrive at the ratio of that? I mean, why isn't Lander County responsible for our district court up here? Pershing responsible for theirs, Lander responsible for theirs. And then, two parts. I remember back in some of my earlier terms where we used to meet in Winnemucca, and we'd convene a board of all three counties to discuss this exact fact. And I don't ever recall doing any of that any time recently. So those would be some of my questions. It's just, I'm trying to just gather how the relationship works, and could we do anything to streamline it to make it more efficient? Because I don't, I can't see how this is efficient when we're responsible for 40%. I mean, when the actuality is, it could be less, it could be more, but I just, and I don't know if there's a way we could get back to that. And I have to defer to staff and the judge because I'm way out of how that got where it is.
In 2015, when we converted over, we had a meeting between all the county, we had represented from each county commission, and they came here and met with them. And based upon the caseload and the size of the county, and Pershing and Lander, and the six districts of this district had been equal, and Mineral came, Mineral didn't have to pay anything in the fifth. So we got 20% from them and 40 from the other two. Our budget hadn't increased that much since then. But I would be glad to have a meeting with all three counties. That would be fine.
Well, I guess where I'm at, and I guess one of the questions I'm asking is, why couldn't, why, rather than this cost share, why couldn't you just have your own budget for Lander County? And the same thing for Pershing?
Yeah, because I have, I have staff members that go to all three counties. My probation officer go to all three, my clerks go to all three, and my court services go to all three.
So they're not, I see. So they're not designated employees for each, they're shared?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, those are my questions. Any other questions?
I have some questions. So I have some questions about your juvenile programming. So can you, I'm pretty familiar with it, but I wanted to know, you guys had...
Hold on one sec. Should I open up 2.18 as well, since it's juvenile?
Oh, sorry.
Yes. So I'm gonna open up concurrently...
Throwing it all together.
With this one, it's 2.18, juvenile discussion and possible action. A, there is an increase to operations by $47,605. Okay, so we'll throw it in.
So for all your juvenile programs that we do throughout all three counties, what is the total that those all cost for all of us together?
I think I should provide that.
Is that the $79,000? I'm a paper.
You're under juvenile, Alicia.
I am. Sorry for jumping around. Yeah, so it's got juvenile programming. It says $79,868, and then our 40% would be $31,947.20, correct? Okay. So you're getting that from all three counties. It's my understanding that the FCC also gives you funding for that. So why are we, all of us?
Portions of it, biggest portions of it.
Yeah, well...
And part of the budgets, in case the FTC doesn't come up with funding...
Right.
Then we have funding.
So, and then that's what you pay us back every year, part of that?
Yeah.
Okay.
You already got your check.
Yeah, yeah, we did. I just, it just doesn't tell me, like, on there what, on that check, what we were getting it back for, right? So that's why, that's why I'm questioning.
It just came, you'd submitted money for the District Court and for the juvenile, and you just get a lump sum.
Yeah, 'cause I think they give you guys around 30, I think it was about $34,000 this year. But they, their total grant was $105, that they just got approved, they said, and then it'll come through. You have to spend it by June, I think they said.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's what, I just wanted to know, because it's kind of looked like you're putting in with them and with us, and so I just want to make sure we're not...
Well, and the grant funding, we hope we'll get it, but we might not.
Yeah. I know they got approved, so...
And then, we have the services, so we need the money to provide the services, and then at the end of the year, we'll have a true-up.
Okay.
So you're saying you put in for the grant, you don't know if you're gonna get it, but you're saying that they did get it?
FCC got it. I just got an email, sorry, because I was questioning that.
So my question, so...
That's for this year, that's not for next year?
She said it has to be, they just, the grant they just got ends June 30th. So they must, they're pretty close when they get those monies, huh?
Yeah, they were delayed on the grant funding.
Yeah. Yeah, and they wrote it for $105,144 for the 24-25 year. So, and they said there was $34K in progress. So that's what the, they get a couple different grants for that.
Right. Judge, so when you give us that check back every year, what, so what does that entail? What is that check coming back to us for? What is that paying back for?
You contribute to the District Court, you contribute to the juvenile, and then whatever's left in the bulk funds, they combine it and send it to you.
So basically, we, we basically, we write you a check, give it to you, what you don't use of that check then comes back to us?
Yep.
Is how it works. So, so, so one of my questions is, when we write you that check, because I was told by staff yesterday that we're also doing a lot of the administrative ins and outs of income invoices, things like that, why wouldn't it be that we give you the check and then, and then your department would be responsible for that? Why is the administration of the commission having to handle some of those things?
I think what he's asking is, we have the operating budget within this breakdown.
Yeah.
And then we also have an operating budget in, within the District Court in Lander. So why the, there's the two?
Well, and... You have local expenses for juries and stuff like that that get paid by Lander County, and then for counsel and for some things like that. And then competency evaluations for interpreters, those come out of Lander County funds.
So those are not necessarily taken care by the check that we provide you?
The check you provide is the green figure on my District Court, and it's a yearly amount, and that goes to the whole operating of the district.
So, Lakin, is there a way that that could be streamlined to where we're not having to do that? I mean, could it just be included in that? I mean, I guess...
You could, you could include it. We could just track it the way we track it.
It would just be where we don't have an operating anymore in Lander. It would just be our one check we cut to them. It would be included in all of that, and then they would do the true-up.
So, so my question is, wouldn't that be, it seems to me that that would be a more efficient way of doing it? Would you agree? I mean, you, I mean, you run the finance side of it. I'm just looking outside in. It seemed to me like that'd be more efficient.
Yeah, it probably would be less confusing. I think the only good thing about us having an operating budget is because we get to actually see what we're paying and we see the invoices. But if you guys are okay with just doing the true-up and not really having that breakdown, then...
Well, let me ask you this. So when we have our audits conducted, do our auditors audit District Courts? Or is that something that they would take care of on their own?
They audit our District Court budget that we have in Lander. The annual payment that we pay to Pershing, they don't audit that, like what they do with that check once we cut it.
Okay, so as far as your statement, as far as being able to see what's happening, I mean, it's a safeguard, because the auditors are coming in and they're looking at the transactions that occurred, right? It's like a, just a fail-safe to make sure everything's correct, right? So, I don't know. I mean, what, you guys have any questions? Or how do you feel about that, or?
I'd like to go back to that tri-county so that everybody talks and you know what...
So you're saying have those meetings?
Yeah.
Okay. So do we, do we have an agreement in place that would basically stipulate that?
Well, you, you call a meeting.
We can call a meeting. Now, I remember back when I was commissioning early on, there was an actual, I don't, is it, was it a...
We don't have an actual current agreement with the three counties now. We used to back when it was Pershing, Humboldt, and Lander. So if that's at the end of the meeting, then you guys can ask for a future...
Okay. Okay. So is that what you guys would like to see? Where we actually meet with Pershing and Mineral to discuss this act issue? Okay. All right. Any other questions?
No questions for me.
Okay, so let's, do you have any more questions, Alicia?
I think I'm good.
Okay, so we're gonna go back to 2.1... Actually, I did have a question. So on the increase on juvenile, was that, is that for, is that for salaries?
Yeah, we, we give them cost of livings every year for the last 10. We end getting increases. And the juvenile probation committee came back and said, you need to increase their salaries so they become equal to what they're paying in other counties or closer to.
Okay, so, because all I see is an increase. I don't see, so you guys don't have a certain schedule that you follow as far as giving your employees cost of living raises, anything like that? So you're saying it hasn't happened for 10 years, and now we're just gonna play catch-up for 10 years? Is that, is that the number we're looking at?
It's a 10% increase, which is...
So it's a 10% increase overall?
Pretty low for 10 years, but you take the cost of living, which is about 3%, and so it's a 7% increase in salaries.
So in the last 10 years, there's been no increase in salaries?
There's been cost of living, and that's it.
So cost of living, so it's, okay. Over the last 10, but nothing else? All right, does anybody else have any questions?
Nope.
Okay, so I will hear a motion on 2.16.
I motion that we accept the District Court's request for funding? Is that how we want to put it?
I think you usually say budget as presented.
Budget as presented, okay.
Okay, so we have a motion on, for District Court. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, do we have a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and now we'll go to 2.18, a motion for juvenile.
Make a motion that we approve 2.18. The budget as presented, the discussion, the action to increase salary of operations by $47,605.
Okay, thank you, Lamont. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, there you are, Judge. Thank you. All right, so now we'll head back to 1.4. Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Submitted Grant Requests For General Fund Grant Requests. We have 1, Agape Hospice and Palateated Care for $7,900; 2, Conservation District for $6,000; 3, Conservation District for $20,000; 4, Conservation District for $100,000; 5, Nevada Outdoor Schools for $3,850; 6, Northern Nevada EMS Consortium; and EMSC for $15,000, excuse me. 7, Town of Kingston for $119,416, which would be budgeted in Fund 029; and 8, Town of Kingston Water Utility for $2 million, which would be budgeted in the CCP fund. So we'll start with Agape Hospice and Palateated Care for $7,900. Morning, guys. All right, so I'll open up to the commission first. Are there any questions on this budget?
Not at this time for me.
No. I just, I'm curious, how close are you guys to getting your certification? I noticed that you guys are really close. You guys working really hard, been really hard working for lots of years, so...
And then, once you get your certification, what does that, what does that mean?
I'd be pleased to answer those questions. First off, once again, we've appeared before you many times. We've been going through a growing process. At the moment, Mrs. Price, we are in the final stages of our Medicare application. We're hoping that, for that certification to take place sometime late this summer or early in the fall. The monies that we are requesting, the $7,900, are specifically to pay for travel and for Medicare travel and audit expenses. They will travel to Battle Mountain, interview families, interview staff, review our policies, et cetera. Then they will make recommendations if they find errors or concerns that we will correct. And then, we're hoping at that point in time to have our certification. We have, Mr. Sparks, we have no fund, we are not able to bill for any funding until we receive our certification. And we're, like I said, when we get the certification, we can do a little bit of back billing with patients that have been with us in recent time, and then we'll be able to bill all insurances into the future. The one thing, though, that I think is really important to note is that we have, at the behest of Lois Erikyaga, who started this process many years ago, it was very important to her, and we totally agree that we be nonprofit so that if anyone comes to us who has no insurance or any other kinds of needs, that we could, we could meet their needs. So the last comment I'll make is that part of the Medicare certification also requires that we do volunteer work, have private fundraising activities on our own to supplement our budget. Man, do you have anything else you'd like to add? I hope I've answered your questions.
No, I'm glad you guys got close, because it's been a long process for you.
Yes, it has.
And you guys do really great with your fundraising, so...
It's been torture.
I know, I'm sorry.
All right, are there any other questions from the commission?
I have some. So currently, you're just servicing Battle Mountain? You're not servicing...
Well, we're servicing Lander County, and we've had, we've had some discussion. Our goal is to service all patients in Lander County, and that includes Austin and Kingston. And currently, what we, if we have patients at the southern end of the state, at the southern end of the county, what we, what we try to do is to recruit local nurses and those kinds of things to kind of help staff when we're there. It's a really, really a tough thing. If we get a call in the middle of the night, we need help, and then, you know, we drive 200 miles round trip and find out that someone forgot to plug in their doodad and the batteries run dead. That's a pretty difficult kind of, you know, we want to be there when there's need, not when there's inconsequential things. So we are struggling with staffing in the South. You know, we keep recruiting and making sure that we, you know, trying to have people available in that area. And it kind of goes up and down. There's some people that are there, they'll help, and then they leave, and then we're recruiting new people. So it's an ongoing challenge to us, but we are definitely committed to do what we can to...
And you're working with our ES group out there in Austin and Kingston?
We're trying. We haven't had any luck in finding somebody, a nurse. We have to have a nurse that can come see somebody.
We don't have any out there.
And that's our problem. We have to have somebody that can see them in 90 minutes. If it's something, you know, if it's something that we can troubleshoot over the phone, it's one thing, but if it's something that, if, you know, they're in the active process of dying, or their, you know, family's struggling, an hour and a half's a long time to wait if you're...
Yeah, sometimes we wait for an ambulance that long.
Yeah. And unfortunately, we just, we want to provide, right now, we're focusing on Battle Mountain, just get everything, get our, you know, everything in order. And the plan is, is if we can get somebody that's down there, but we have to service our patients the best we can. And an hour and a half's a long time to wait if we don't have somebody down there that can help, so... We're working on it. We're trying.
Maybe you can coordinate more with Mike with the ambulance service.
I know where they work, so...
Yeah, you know, at least if the machine is unplugged, one of our EMS can run in there and plug it in and save a trip.
Yeah, maybe it's something that we can help with over the phone, but, you know, there's a lot of things that we can't troubleshoot over the phone.
Right.
We want somebody that can actually be in the home with the family and the patient, so... We're trying.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the commission?
No, I just want to thank them for their detailed profit loss, too, because not everybody gives us one.
Yeah.
So I really do appreciate that, yeah.
Okay, I will hear a motion.
I will make a motion to approve $7,900 for Agape Hospice. I'm gonna miss, thank you, air.
Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion, seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, there you go, guys.
Once again, thank you so much. We appreciate you.
Yeah, I look forward to you guys getting your certification, because like...
Thank you.
We'll have a big party.
Yes, we'll be there.
We'll invite you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we're going to open lines, or items 2, 3, and 4. That'll be Conservation District, $6,000; Conservation District, $20,000; Conservation District, $100,000. And we'll take them one by one, but if there's questions that lead into others, we'll be covered by opening them.[1651.65] And we'll take them one by one, but if there's questions that lead into others, we'll be covered by opening them, so. So we're going to start with Conservation District, six thousand. Okay, so, uh, we'll open it for the commission here. If there's any questions, we'll start with you, us. Are there any questions on, uh, the six thousand dollar ask? Okay, um, you guys have anything you'd like to say on it?
We'll just do a quick overview of what the Conservation District is, because, you know, sometimes there's a, that's some confusion. So we made some notes. Um, we're asking to continue funding on our natural resource projects throughout Lander County. The Conservation District has been efficient and effective in providing natural resource cost share programs. We also been, uh, participated in funding for sage grouse habitat products. And we offer, well, mostly these guys offer, technical, financial, and educational resources to protect, enhance, and conserve agricultural lands and natural open spaces throughout the county. The cost of materials, such as seed after a fire, is one thing we do. We do herbicide controlling, invasive plant controls. Um, and then, of course, they go out to all the projects at the beginning to do the assessment, and then throughout the project, and then afterward. And that, as you know, the cost of gas has gone up, so that's impacted us a bit. Um, so we're looking for some of the same funding. We're asking for the same amount, and we plan to provide the same level of service throughout the county and to all residents. We are working aggressively to get the word out. Anna's been putting things in the newsletter, um, which has been helpful. We've had a couple of new faces come into the meetings and request project support, so that's been nice. And, you know, that's just always the challenge, is communication and getting the word out. And then you guys all know about the tractor already, and I believe Anna has a big project prepared with some other information for tomorrow, maybe, or something like that.
Yeah, I just handed it out.
Oh, you handed it out. Perfect. So just quickly, we'll do all three. So the six thousand is for operating costs. It's a, it's a share, it's a match of what the state provides. The twenty thousand, number three, is for weed control. And then the, the number four is for the wildlife projects, and we work collaboratively with NDAO. And like I said, we're getting new faces into the meetings that are asking for support, especially with some of the impacts we've had with the wild horses and some of the other things going on. There's been some pretty big asks, so that's just a general overview.
Okay. Uh, questions? So on, I see on your weed control, uh, we budgeted twenty thousand, but you, you haven't spent any of that, but you're asking for twenty thousand again?
That's where these guys do a better job. Yeah, we haven't had weed projects so far this year because the big one that we had was Ferris Creek, and that's been done since, I think, the nineteen eighties, right? And it's just not really working to spray them, so we're trying to get reseeding done, which we have to collaborate with BLM because it is BLM font, our grounds, so.
Okay.
That, that's our big project, and we haven't been able to spend that money on that yet.
Okay.
And then all of the other seeding projects, like Indian Creek was a big one. And again, we've been spraying and spraying. It keeps coming back. We need to find a different route, so we're trying to go with reseeding, so.
Okay, so, so my point is, we, we budgeted twenty thousand for you for twenty five, but it, uh, it hadn't, hasn't been spent. You still have twenty thousand there, so.
Yeah.
It's not necessary to give you another twenty. We'll just let that twenty thousand ride.
Until the end of the fiscal year?
It hasn't been spent.
Oh, yeah.
We're just gonna roll it over if you don't spend it.
Yes, perfect.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure it's not, we're gonna keep the twenty, then give you another twenty, and.
No, we don't need that extra.
Okay, so, and then, um.
So Brian, just to clarify on that, you would have to, um, still approve this, this ask, because the grant funding ends in June.
So basically, okay, so basically, the twenty thousand is still in our possession, and it hasn't.
Yes, you guys just reimburse, I sent Lake and.
Okay, I'm tracking. Okay. I think the clarification we're looking for, though, is you guys don't plan on spending any of this twenty thousand before July one?
We're not sure yet.
So that, so, so that's what he was asking, is just to roll this over. He's saying you aren't gonna spend any of this twenty thousand. That's the clarification.
Oh, okay.
Right. So, uh, they aren't sure if they're gonna spend that twenty or not.
Yeah, we're not sure.
Or not before July one.
It depends on if people come to us with projects.
Okay, so, so let me ask you this. On the, so this is for weed control. Could weed control, could that be lumped under any way that could be lumped in Wildlife Conservation? I'm just asking you that.
We've spent wildlife funds, like, on some weed abatement, right, uh, like contract fees.
So what I'm saying is, rather than have just a line item for weed control for twenty thousand, why couldn't we lump it into just Wildlife Conservation? And that, that, those funds are there for weed projects if you need them.
Yeah, I think, uh, Melanie, for the record, for the state program, uh, we've traditionally done both. So we're doing weed treatment in a meadow. For instance, we are going back and doing rehab or habitat value. In some cases, it is just strictly, you know, abatement programs, so along the roadway, Hilltop and Ferris Creek, those were just strictly trying to control and minimize the spread. Uh, so we didn't bid directly in the, like, the wildlife project scope, but now that we're going back and seeding, that is that restoration component.
So.
So, yeah, it can definitely be moved into that.
It could be moved, okay. That's what I was asking. Would you guys feel better, rather than having that separate line, just roll it into Wildlife Conservation?
I don't see where there's a problem with it being separate. It helps us track exactly where they're spending it.
So you're saying.
Yeah, if you roll it into Wildlife Conservation, it, it makes it more of a general item. They can use it for weed, or they can use it for whatever, whereas, like, different communities now. If Shannon decided she wanted to put in, to have them come out and help with weed control, you know, there's an actual fund that she can talk about, whereas with Wildlife Conservation, that really doesn't tie into that.
Okay.
I feel the same way. I think it's good to use the money, it's, and have flexibility to use it for something, so I, I support that.
Okay, um, so, so let's go ahead, and we'll, we'll tackle number two first. Is there a motion on, if there's no more questions, on the Conservation District grant for six thousand for operations?
None, for me.
No.
Okay, I'll hear a motion on it.
We'll make a motion that we approve, um, item number two, the Conservation District, uh, approval for six thousand dollars for operating costs.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion is seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 And then, if there's no more questions on item three, Conservation District grant for twenty thousand for weed control, I'll hear a motion on that.
I'll make a motion. We approve number three for the Conservation District for twenty thousand dollars for weed control.
Okay, and is there a second?
I second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now, up for discussion is item four, Conservation District, uh, grant for a hundred thousand dollars, which is Wildlife Conservation. So my question on this, doesn't, don't we as a county, don't we, what's our, we have a budgetary line item for Wildlife Conservation?
Wildlife enhancement.
For how much? Two hundred fifty thousand? And have we spent anything out of that in the last?
We have, um.
But any, have we, have we exhausted? We have never exhausted the fund, right?
We usually always have extra funding.
So my, so my proposal is that, basically, is that we deny the Conservation District grant for a hundred thousand, and that anything that needs to be done in regards to Wildlife Conservation, it just comes in front of this commission, and we basically hear the project, and we pull from our fund to fund the project.
So if I, if I can, real quick, we, we've done this before in the past. So traditionally, Conservation Districts, which are state entity, uh, Aronah County Board, just as a reminder, uh, they function under an NRS five forty-eight for the state, and they have the autonomy to just work around and with partners, but they don't directly report to anybody other than my state program and our state commission. And so that gives them some flexibility to work outside of kind of traditional red tape boundaries. So we're able to go on to different landscapes, work across multi-jurisdictional landscapes and multiple partners to do projects immediately. So shovel-ready, we're, we're there with the funds and the technical expertise. And by adding another layer of having to put it on a commission, come and present it with the commission to bring in the landowner, and they then have to present, which often they're not public speakers, so they're not really interested in that. And then we're trying to present through their project and sell it. It gets a little muddled. Uh, so I, I respect where you're coming from. I, I like to streamline as much as possible as well. But the, the purpose of the Conservation District is to kind of remove that red tape and that muddling. That's why this fund has been separated. We do bring them before the commission. I think Bert made that request a few years ago, uh, to have projects come forward for you guys to review them. So we've done that in the past. We've brought forward, uh, projects for the Temera Landscape, the Savals. We've brought forward the Kingston Pond Project. Those all did come before the commission, before we even moved forward on working with them. But we have that funding, and so we knew in advance what we could budget as a Conservation District to kind of do those projects.
Well, first off, it's, were you gonna say something? Yeah, so a couple things. Just the history of this, so, so the commission, that this started off as a fifty thousand dollar grant for sage grouse, you know, conservation, and then, and then it's, and then it's grown. One of my concerns that I'd like the commission to be aware of is when I, I don't recall any of them coming before this commission for approval. All, all the projects you speak of, um. They were updates, if I recall. Yes, they were updates, and they were already pre-approved, um, and already moving, but I, and, you know, that's just my recollection, so. But I did request some of the funding and some of the expenditures on, on projects that they got, and is what I got back was a bunch of redacted checks. I think that if we're gonna fund these kind of projects, that this board, when, when you guys ask me to go gather information, I should be able to provide it to you if it's, if it's coming from our funding. So, um, that is one of my concerns with it. I just want to make the commission aware. I'm trying to do my best when I'm requested to, you know, gather when we put out, you know, funds of where they're going and what, what's happening with them. And it's hard to tell when, when that's what we get back, so, um, and that is one of my concerns. Yeah, just to piggyback on that, that's my, that's, that's my exact reason why I'm asking to do it the way that I'm asking to do it, is because our county manager did ask for documentation, it's, it's county funds, it's tax, taxpayers' dollars. It should be a hundred percent transparency, not things that are redacted, things that are held back that are not, that can't be known. Anything that's ever requested of us as a county, as far as financial, is never redacted. Here it is. This is what we spent it on. This is what it was. This was the amount. That's the way it should be. So, uh, in, in order to put that control mechanism in, that's why I'm suggesting that we just allow the hundred thousand, and we have our fund, and the projects will move forward. If you guys hear, you guys hear all the, the projects, you approve it, you come to a commission. It's a simple, you go on a commission meeting, say, hey, this is what we are hearing, this is the project. We approved it as a commission, as a Conservation District Board. We just have the final oversight on it. We get to see the project, we get to know. We don't have to ask for it. It's, it's all transparent in, in a public meeting, and it's like, okay, good, everything looks like it's, uh, straight and forward. All in favor? Aye, no? And it's, I think it's a simple process. So that's, that's my, that's my, uh, pitch on it, is I, that's the way I think we should do it.
So I have a question. So in the past, we just wrote them a check for a hundred thousand dollars that goes into their bank. They do their programs?
No.
No?
No, it's.
They're still coming to us?
Yeah, I always send it to Lake and, and then she.
So basically, we budget a hundred thousand. We're saying they have a hundred thousand. They, they hear their projects, they decide, they, they spend the money. It doesn't come to us. My problem is, when we have a county manager that wants to have transparency, asking for outgoes, incomes, and we get redacted information, redacted means like, there's things that are blocked out. There's things that you can't see, you can't know. And that's unacceptable.
Right, so for the record, Anna Vina Gravam, the secretary, they're redacted on Wells Fargo. And so then, that's how they're provided to us, so. The only information redacted is the signature line, yeah. Where it was spent, two, two, and the amount is all there. And, and it's in the description, plus it's part of our public meeting process, which is very well posted and everyone's invited. Two of those projects are regularly scheduled on multiple district meetings for everyone to attend. And then you can ask questions.
I think the information that we had requested was back when we did just cut a check, and we didn't know how it was spent. And then I think we had requested past information, and that's when we got a bunch, a bunch of documents that were redacted.
And that was when I was brand new to the Conservation District, so I didn't really know what you guys wanted, so. I mean, I'm happy to sit down with Lake and Bert, too, and see, like, what kind of process you guys want from us, too, regarding documents.
So do you guys get, I mean, you apparently got invoices from places that you did that. Did you not receive invoices?
Well, so I think there's, and, and this is where I don't understand, is like, it was, you know, Melanie had kind of, um, reached out to how they work cross jurisdiction lines and, and kind of, they can get projects done that typically we couldn't get done, um, because they don't abide by, like, the, the law to us. If we were to, if, if the county was to try to do that, we could not, we couldn't do that. How the Conservation District and the laws that they fall under, I don't understand. Or, you know, and maybe, maybe there can be some more clarification on that, because I, you know, there are just some of them things that wouldn't, would not apply to us as a government agency. We, we just couldn't do, and, and they can't. Um, or are doing. I'm not sure how, what the, when I've asked even, um, NDAO and some of the people that are, that are getting the checks, and they're like, you know, we just kind of do this with the conservation. We aren't really sure, but it's a quick way for us to get projects done. Don't ask, because we don't have many answers. And, uh, and so that's where that's kind of came from. And I can pull up the, the old emails and, and share them. I'd, I'd be more than happy to do that with, with some of our, um, previous requests. But it's not necessarily my concern, until I get it brought to me by commissioners or the public that would like answers, and they have concerns, and then when I reach out, I can't gather that information to answer to them, so. That's kind of my two cents on that. I'm not sure how they, how they work some of their projects legally.
Yeah, uh, Melanie, for the record, it's not a secret. Um, we function under NRS five forty-eight, um, NAC five forty-eight. Everything is spelled out there. We do have authority to walk, work across multiple jurisdictions. We also have the ability to contract and direct hire. Um, we do have a three-bid process under DC and our Department of Conservation Natural Resources. We can use that process as well. So we do often put projects out for bid. Um, those bids come back to us, they're reviewed by the board, and we hire someone to do the work. Um, it's, it's pretty simple. I promise you, there's no, no, you know, background handshakes going on or anything like that. We, we just have the ability to direct hire. So when working with NDAO, I can call Morriside Air, we can direct hire and put seed on the ground immediately responding to a fire. So we do have some ability to kind of, um, respond a little faster on the ground, which is what's made us a really successful partner throughout the state. There are twenty-eight Conservation Districts in the state, so I invite you to come to any meeting in the state, in the hills, and you can see how Conservation Districts function in other areas, and, um, we're happy to present on that. Or I can bring, you know, further clarification from this District Attorney General's Office. We can go over kind of legal authority if that's the interest, but there's no secrets. We're happy to provide those full portfolios of spending, invoicing, and what's paid out. We included that, actually, in this updated project folder. You'll see that every single project has, um, the total amount spent and the materials provided by each one of our partners, so you can kind of see what that matching component looks like across multiple partners.
Thanks, thank you, Wayne. Do you have a?
Yeah, uh, uh, just because we received the, the hundred thousand dollar grant, it's just like the rest of it. I mean, we don't have to use it. You know, it's, it's nice to have it. And with the wild horses, you're going into fruition in the Lander County, Nevada, which is, I'm really anticipating that, and there's gonna be a lot of need for help. Okay, there's ranchers out there that springs was suffered devastated, and they're gonna need some help to, to, to rehabilitate these areas. NDOW is gonna need some help with reseeding some of these areas for the wildlife habitat. I mean, we've reached a point here where we have, uh, over fifty-five thousand, or over five thousand wild horses in Lander County in fifteen hundred years. I mean, we, we're gonna have a real big need, and if we have this money available, we can use it. If we don't need to use it, we don't use it. We've been very frugal over the last two years. The, uh, uh, the comments that Mr. Ramos brought up were, were from previous years. And I do believe all of those issues have been rectified in the last couple of years.
Okay, a question back to this redact, with the check, where the signature's redacted, where you're spending taxpayers' dollars. Why is anything redacted? It's public knowledge you signed that check.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I haven't seen redacted checks.
I've never got, yeah, I've never.
Well, Wells Fargo redacts the signature, because when I pull it up, uh, I can provide them with, like, I can take a copy of the check before I send it, if that's what you, that's what I'm saying. I'd love to sit down and see what kind of process you guys want from me.
Yeah.
Because I'm still only three years into being the secretary, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's just part of the knowledge, like, who signed the check? What was the project, what was the money spent for, and who signed the check?
No, Wells Fargo automatically redacts it from the website, so that's where I was sending it from, but I can just photocopy it.
So it wasn't, she's saying it was not like the old days where you have a check and, like, I can see the sig, you know, like, we used to get them back in the mail. They're not getting them back in the mail now. They're.
No.
Yeah.
Well, I can just take a photocopy, scan it, and then send that, instead of that's what you're requesting. I don't want to issue that.
Well, I still stand on my position to where we, you know, where we have a budgetary line item for a quarter of a million dollars for Wildlife Enhancement Conservation, and it's very important to us in Lander County that I just think it's, it's a bit of redundancy, and, and I think some of these projects, they just, we hear what they select, and we have a decision on it.
How, um, how hard would be, if they had a project, how hard, they'd just be waiting two weeks to get that many?
Yeah, yeah, that's not, exactly.
How many projects do you have lined up for this year? For the next fiscal year?
For the next fiscal year, probably three to four. We have, like, two continuous projects, so Hilltop, Ferris Creek, and Indian Creek are kind of our continuous projects, so between the seeding that we're trying to line up and then providing landowners around seed to do seeding on their parcels, and then again, the, the weed abatement project. We'll probably go back out to Kingston. I talked to them not too long ago about, uh, seeding habitat for potentially more deposited material coming into that pond again. So they reached out with, um, you know, asking to go back out there and look at that. We've looked at the community garden project, and then we're developing some informational material with the museum. So that'll provide kind of a, a pagoda with public information about natural resources in the community. So those are our current ones. We did, the board did just meet with the Wildlife Advisory Board locally, uh, and they're sharing ideas across each other as well to kind of figure out where we can maybe look at off-road funding. So the OHE program for the state of Nevada has about forty thousand dollars set aside for conservation specifically. Uh, and that's, so we're looking at opportunities like that.
They also have some really good grants, for matching grants.
So looking at the last six years here, um, I'm looking at the last six fiscal years. We started, the first three years we had, starting in the fiscal year nineteen and twenty. Uh, it seems the, the three years after that, or the two years after that, we had a fifty thousand dollar, uh, grant, and we hit those marks. And we're either, we're either right above those or right below them. And then it seemed, right when we increased that to a hundred thousand, you know, the first year we increased it to a hundred thousand, we used ten thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars. So, you know, looking ahead, you know, in, in the last year, the, the twenty-four, twenty-five year, we only used sixteen thousand for one project. So, you know, I'm just kind of wondering why we would try to go after another hundred thousand if we don't have X, Y, and Z lined up, and, and say that is gonna cost us a hundred thousand dollars.
That was gonna be one of my suggestions, if you did continue to go this route, maybe go back down to the fifty. We went up to a hundred when it was still for sage grouse, but the last couple of years, we've only seen one, maybe two, projects come for this native wildlife. So maybe we put it back to the fifty until the extra funds are needed.
Because, I mean, me thinking, I mean, fifty thousand dollars, we hit those marks for three years in a row. And, uh, you know, we would still, if, if for some reason we couldn't, we needed more than the fifty thousand, we, we have these resources available at our, our, our budget items, so.
Yeah, and I think a lot of that came into, that's, there was discussion of why we stiffed that line item for the, it was in our own budget for, for two hundred fifty thousand, that if there were any bigger projects. That if there were any bigger projects that we recovered, right? So, but that's why I'm saying it's like, I, I, that's why I think it's a bit of redundancy. I don't even think, uh, cutting it back to fifty, we have a line item for two hundred and fifty thousand that covers exactly what they need, if they need it.
Because one thing I like to see is, okay, we, we, we expected, we asked for this, we hit our mark. And, and, you know, and there's data to show for that. But, you know, last year when we were hitting sixteen thousand and the last three years, we, we've asked for a hundred thousand. And all three of the last three years, we haven't used a hundred thousand total, so...
I think in part that's because we're getting more partners. Like, the State Conservation Commission gave us a sage grouse grant for twenty thousand last two years. So that twenty thousand went from them. That would usually be spent out of that wildlife fund, so that's part of the reason why we're not using those funds as much, so...
And you're not showing, you're not showing us where you're getting all these other funds from, just...
In the project portfolio. I did put that in.
In the portfolio of...
Yeah, that's why I gave that out too, just so you guys can see that. There is an increase in partnerships, so that's the reason for the decrease.
That's something we ask for in the grant, you know, when you're asking for money, is that we ask who are you partnering with, who are, who's...
I don't see that in the grant request.
So I think in the very, the last one, I... Next to each one, there's, there's a little board that has some of that kosher.
I have your sources.
Yeah, I see it's in your handout here, but I can see, in the actual grant request, you submit to the county for the money.
I think I put it in the very last paragraph.
Now, most of the grant requests, you have to, if you're asking for a hundred thousand dollars, you have to explain what you're going to spend that hundred thousand dollars on. We're going to put fifty thousand here. We're going to put twenty thousand here. We're going to put ten thousand here. And you're just asking for a generic amount that you haven't spent in three years.
Yeah, and, and just as a reminder, we actually were fine with staying at fifty. It was this commission, it was the commissioners, um, that bumped it up to a hundred. We didn't ask for that. It's great, right? I'm not going to say no to that, but, um, they're operational at fifty thousand. And then there were about, um, these last few years especially, we had a lot of federal funding and partnerships that provided us a lot of match money and additional funding from the state. Um, as you know, right now, that's going to go away again for probably three to four years. So it's an ebb and flow. Anytime we work in a grant, um, we try not to live and die by the grain. We try and have operational funds that keep those, you know, keep Anna's position funded.
Right. Well, I think we need more clarity in the future of where your additional funding is coming from.
Well, I go back to, I just think that we should operate our own county line. And I'm going to make a motion that we deny the conservation district a hundred thousand and basically allow them, as they always have had access to the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar line item for wildlife conservation. And we'll just see how it goes, uh, this year. And if it, if there's any bugs in it, it doesn't seem like it's going to work. We can always default back to a lesser amount on this item, but I, I, I think we should at least give it a shot. That's my motion. Uh, if there's a second, please say aye.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
We're going to move to five. Nevada Outdoor Schools, three thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Hi, Melanie. Hello. Melanie Urquiaja for the record with Nevada Outdoor School.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, so does the commission have any questions? I'll open it up to you guys first, uh, for the Nevada Outdoor Schools and their grant ask.
Oh, thanks for all the information. You give us a lot of information.
It's awesome. It's nice to see that in the requests.
We try very hard to answer every single question to the best of our ability. And as you can see, we're certainly not just reaching out to Lander County to support our programs. We have quite a bit of, um, support from Nevada Gold Mines, Small Mine Development, SSR Marigold Mining have always been invested in Lander County, which is great. Um, Nevada Division of Outdoor Recreation, this is new, um, a new program and grant funding, um, that we hope to see grow. And the Energy Foundation really boosted our grant this year too, so we were able to contribute a little bit more to Lander County. And then, of course, we have our Marigold program that helps us staff our program, so...
Okay. Well, if there's no questions, uh, on this grant, I will hear a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve number five, Nevada Outdoor Schools in the amount of three thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
All right, so we'll move six. Northern Nevada EMS Consortium, NNEMSC for fifteen thousand.
We're on the phone. Can you hear us?
So does the, if I remember right, they, they came in front, there's Mike here right there, but they came in front of us. It was this, uh, last year, right, asking for the money? And basically, we said they would have to apply it during our grant process? Is this the same outfit? Okay. So, uh, does the commission have any questions on this line item?
I'm still getting through the leadership school here.
I did all my questions before.
Okay. All right, so, uh, and what's your name on the phone?
Jesse.
What was it?
Jesse?
Can you hear us? Okay. Yes, can you hear us? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, Jesse, uh, what would you like to say?
Just real quick, obviously, we put everything in front of you guys. Um, so the NNEMSC, the five oh one, is a free nonprofit. And we serve rural Nevada. And so I think some people get confused sometimes when we say rural, that being Reno as well. We serve six counties in northern Nevada, Elko, Lander, Eureka, Humble, Pershing, and White Line. And so that's our focus. Because you feel like there is enough money in Reno, Las Vegas, to help some of those EMS and first responder initiatives. Uh, we do have a board here, local to northern Nevada. Um, and I think our biggest thing we're focusing on right now is two main events. Is our trauma symposium and our mental health summit. Uh, we try to make these things local, so our EMS first responders, our police, our fire, don't have to go out of town and get this training that they do need. Uh, we do fundraise year round as a nonprofit. We do have volunteer board members. Um, and again, we are, we are looking at fixing on some of our main programming, that mental health summit training. Um, overall, we're trying to expand. We are a small nonprofit, trying to grow, trying to add more services for our EMS and first responders. Uh, but we'd like to add more here in the future because we see such a need. Uh, we are, we just finished with our rural Nevada trauma symposium that had a great turnout. Um, we had folks from Lander County as well there, did some lecturing, uh, with some great topics, some great training. Uh, we hope that we can ask you for support in this. Nobody else in our area in rural Nevada does what we do and it's like, we're a volunteer organization to try and give back and do the best we can for our first responders.
All right, thank you, Jesse. Mike, what, yeah, I have some questions for you. What are your thoughts in regards to how is this going to benefit Lander County, coming from somebody that actually has boots on the ground here every single day?
So Mike Harris, so just so you guys know, I am a board member on the NNEMSC. Um, I don't stand any financial gain. It's a volunteer position. So it kind of benefits us in two ways. One, if you look, my education line, I think, had twenty thousand dollars. So if, if I take two employees, send them to Las Vegas, now we're paying, um, travel, we're paying, we're paying for their food. Those conferences are fairly expensive. And so you're getting a big chunk of, of your budget shoot up for like two, three employees. I think the tickets to this one was ten bucks and they, and, and they fed you. And we had speakers from the University of Utah, the amputation team, the burn center, a bunch of the air companies. Really, the goal was to make it to where every provider in rural Nevada had a chance to get high-quality training that was affordable. Um, so like Jesse said, our last, uh, our last trauma symposium had like a hundred and twenty people in it. The hospital sent three or four. We had five there. Um, so it was a very cost-effective way to get high-quality training. And if we can do this year after year and keep expanding it, I think, one, it kind of helps with the cost effectiveness and it helps keep these trainings local, um, which ultimately has the greatest impact in the, in the local area.
Give me, give me an example of some of the training that they provide that you guys would take.
Oh, okay. So, uh, in the trauma symposium, we had, I think we had twelve different lecturers. Um, so we had Corey Cox come in from, uh, the University of Utah, and he actually, so if you guys don't know, this University of Utah has the only regional field amputation team, right? That doesn't matter to somebody in Reno because they have a trauma center right, right around the corner. Well, we don't, right? Our nearest trauma center is a level two, an hour and a half, plus forty-five minutes for an aircraft to get here. So they come in and, and they basically show us like, hey, when you have somebody that's entrapped and they possibly need a field amputation, these are the steps you need to take. Um, same thing, we had somebody from the burn center come in and teach us all the latest and greatest things and, and the, uh, you know, the newest, the newest techniques in treating somebody with burns. Um, you know, we had, uh, a, a, a trauma surgeon from Renown that came in and did a case study, right? So you could walk through from top, from the time the nine-one-one came out, to the recovery of the person, all the right things that need to happen and the little decisions that you can make that can actually steer them closer to mortality. Uh, we had Sam Schwab come in with standby for tones, and he did a great lecture on the first two minutes of a trauma and, and how you really have two minutes from the time you get on scene to make the right decisions to increase somebody's survivability or not. Um, you know, one of the leading causes of mortality is exsanguination and, and bleeding out from traumas. If, if we can just keep furthering this, that's a number that we can reverse. And, and I said this in, in the trauma center when I was talking to, um, or the, the trauma symposium. And the reason I joined the NNEMSC is because I don't believe where you live should dictate your chances of surviving a traumatic event, right? We have a critical access hospital here. We're a small place, very far from trauma centers. That, that is being able to provide these kind of trainings to the majority of our providers. I mean, we can send seven people up there for a fraction of what it would take to send them to Vegas.
Yeah.
And get a high-quality training. It's cost-effective, and we're getting the most bang for our buck.
So let me ask you this. It's nice to hear your excitement about it, uh, is, is, so do you feel the fifteen thousand? So basically, when, when we grant this, it's going to give you access to that training, so you're not going to have to go to Vegas and spend this, right? So do you feel that it's actually going to pay for itself?
It sounds like it already is.
Yeah, exactly. It's kind of, that's why I just haven't heard you remember, so that's why I was asking.
Yeah, so, and so this...
Sorry, Jesse. That, sorry, Jesse, that question was for Mike.
Sorry, give me a second, Jesse. Um, yeah, so these, these trainings are actually open not just to EMS, right? So the sheriff's office can send people in there. Um, the hospital sent people in there. So maybe not just for EMS, right? Because we'd have to send a majority of our staff, but we still have to have staff here running calls. So with us alone, probably not, but regionally, absolutely.
Well, let me ask you this, because I'm thinking in terms of the line, of the grant request, right? We have our own conditions to it where each year it has to be less the amount they have to be. This doesn't really, like, it fits into that. Like, this maybe should be something that would become a, a budgetary line item for his budget for, that would fall under like training, right? It's like a very efficient way to cover training in your department. So I, I don't know, because I can see like next year, you come, they're going to ask for fifteen thousand. We're going to say, no, per our guidelines, it has to be a less amount. Do you see where I'm going with this? So that my question is, is should we be truly looking, we are looking at it as a grant as of today, but I'm saying for future, should it be looked at possibly differently?
Yeah, that, that might be a better question for Jesse that does the administrative side of this. And, and it's, it, I think that's feasible, right? Especially as it's grown, because it doubled in size from last year. So if this training, these trainings can continue to grow, and then even at the low cost, like I said, I think I paid ten bucks for my ticket. Even at that low cost, it, it could be feasible that, you know, as this training grows and more and more people come?
It looks like in their grant request too, that their goal is to apply for federal funding in the future. So maybe it won't be coming back.
Gotcha.
So maybe that's question for them.
Jesse, do you have anything you could add in on that? Okay.
Yeah, trying to jump in there. Uh, so this would be for more than just that trauma symposium. But we're trying to get right now, we're doing a trauma specific one. We're doing the mental health summit, but it's for all of those. We're adding in hopefully next year an additional training. We do, like was just mentioned, we're trying to go for a federal grant to expand what that looks like. So all the counties do, um, provide for first responder, EMS, police, fire, so nurses, a variety of people from all those specific counties to help get that training. So these funds would help be split between the, the mental health summit, the trauma symposium, and then hopefully we're going to be adding additional training here in the future just for these counties.
Okay, thank you, Jesse. Uh, all right, those are all my questions. The commission, you guys have any further questions or...
I got one question. Um, as a disclosure, I'd just like to disclose, uh, I am related to Director Harris, uh, but I will be not abstaining from any discussions. Uh, Michael, this question's for you. How many of, of your people were you able to send to that?
I guess I think we have four of, of EMS people, um, and then we had three or four nurses from the hospital, one of the dispatchers. So from Lander County, what was?
Now, for, to attend this, uh, does, can these just be regular EMTs or do they have to be paramedic level and above or...
Nope. It's, it's, it's tiered, uh, every level.
And the reason, the reason I ask that is, is we do have more EMTs getting ready to graduate and come out in the field. So I, that's why I'm asking is, is if these EMTs that are, uh, getting ready to, to finish up their schooling, if they're going to be able to take advantage of this program?
Yeah, it's, it's tiered to every, every facet of public safety.
Okay.
Right? We have sections for law enforcement, dispatchers, nurses, EMS of all varieties.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, are there any other questions?
No.
I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve number six, Northern Nevada EMS Consortium, NNEMSC, for fifteen thousand dollars.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Okay, so line seven, Town of Kingston, a hundred and nineteen thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars, which would be budgeted in Fund O two nine. Hey, Shannon.
Good morning, Shannon Ziss from Town of Kingston.
All right, first, uh, commission, do you have any questions on this grant request?
No, I don't know. Um, I own, should I clarify that I own property in Kingston, but will have no monetary gain from this?
Okay, thank you for the disclosure.
Mm-hmm.
All right, Shannon, all yours.
Well, um, the Town of Kingston, with a lot of residents that have, um, asked them, would like to build a playground in Kingston. We have a playground now. It's pretty sparse and it's not, in non-compliant. Um, it was put in, I think, in ninety-two. It's just a few swings and a covered wagon. So I got ahold of the same company that built your playground here in Battle Mountain, and I asked him for, um, a few, um, types of playgrounds with different prices and options and things like that. And the one that I sent in with the, um, grant is the one that the town board approved to try to get the grant for. Um, we have a lot of, uh, people moving in. We have a lot of vacationers, and we have a lot of grandkids now. So this is, uh, just what they decided they wanted to do this year.
Um, I don't see, I don't see your pack unless I'm overlooking it. Have you approached anybody else for, for any great request on this?
No.
So commissioners, um, I got to step in so Shannon doesn't get beat up on this, because I was the one who encouraged her to, to put in for this. Um, we put the four million dollars aside for community improvement projects, but we, but we left Kingston out because they have their own town board. And so we want to try to do something solid for them, and that was part of me encouraging her to put in for this.
Gotcha.
Um, and if we can fund it out of there, we would be happy to.
Okay.
But with their, with their town board, we wanted to make sure not to overstep on them.
Okay.
I also strongly encourage Kingston to come in. I know what their playground looks like. It was the old playground from Austin, from years and years ago, and Kingston just kind of got, there you go. So they really do need it.
Shannon, this, this playground, it, it says for Kingston residents, but that would also include people that come up that maybe aren't residents for a weekend. Uh, is that what I'm kind of hearing?
Oh, absolutely.
Other, just, I mean, it says for Kingston residents, but...
Right, it would be...
It won't be locked away where, you know, weekenders who maybe have young kids that are a little bored at the campground or you know, whatever can come down and play at the, at this, okay.
We have a lot of, um, travelers going through up to the canyon and stuff. They stop by the park and enjoy the park and stuff. This will be close to the park. They'll be able to use it. Um, it, our, our other playground is being used a little bit, but, um, it, it's not very safe compared to what a new one would be. So, but it would be open to everybody.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions?
No.
I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve number seven, Town of Kingston, in the amount of one hundred thousand, one, one hundred thousand nineteen, uh...
One hundred and nineteen thousand.
One hundred and nineteen thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars, which would be budgeted in Fund zero two nine.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion and second. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so line eight, Town of Kingston Water Utility for two million, which would be budgeted in the CCP fund.
So, um, this is a grant, um, this one is a little more complicated. As you know, I've come before you a few times. Uh, I, I actually received a grant from you to dig, dig a well. It didn't work out. Um, so Kingston is growing. Kingston has two wells that are very close together. They're about ten feet apart. One runs in the summer, one runs in the winter. Um, I, and they're under the influence of the creek. They are considered groundwater, but they're under the influence of the creek. And the last time, uh, before we had the heavy snow three years ago, the wells were, uh, dropping significantly because of... significantly because of the drought. So I've been trying to figure out another way to get more water to Kingston, alternate water, deeper water and quality water, of course. So you guys gave us the money to do the well, that didn't work out, we actually hired a hydrologist to find a place that was within our point of diversion for a water right that we do have under the books. And like I said, it did not work out, we got thirteen gallons per minute, which is not enough for municipal use. So I became unsure how to proceed, I think that Bert actually paid attention to my distress because I am not an exploration person, I'm not a well driller, I'm a water operator is what I am. So I think he listened to what I was saying and he said, why don't you put in for this grant and we'll get some professionals involved, we'll get a group involved instead of just one person, to try to find Kingston an alternate source of water for growth and for the future. And so that's what this is.
Okay, thank you Shannon.
So I also think it's important that the Commission knows, you know, Shannon and they operate their own system, so it's self-preserving in me hearing Shannon's cries because we don't want to take over an additional system, especially one that's poorly maintained. So, so with that, I encouraged Shannon to put in for this, I said, you know, if you're going to do this, we'd like, and if it ever were to come back to Lander County, we would like a pristine system. Shannon does a great job and hopefully she has forty more years left, but if she decides to fail out of there.
Oh no, no, no.
Yeah, if she decides to fail out of there before then, I think that it's crucial that we, you know, put some of these funds to work and get the community of Kingston some good water, so.
Okay, does Commission have any further questions?
Yeah, Shannon, so if approved and a nice new well goes in, what happens to the old ones?
Oh, they will still, they will still.
So they're not taken offline?
No, no, they won't be taken offline, what will happen though is they will get rehabbed because they haven't been rehabbed in quite a long time because they can't take them down to rehab, but they will be also in the system. You know, I have two tanks that they pump to, so they will remain.
Okay.
The other thing that this will do is it'll bring us, bring the community of Kingston into compliance with the state's regulations and that's, if your biggest producing well is out of commission, that you can still provide at your highest day's demand in peak use, which is typically the summer. And I don't think that Kingston would even come close to that, so it will, they may.
We do except for fire, we wouldn't, and we're required to have that for fire and we don't at this moment.
Yeah, so it would bring them into compliance with that as well if we can get something that's actually a real producing well, which can be probably tough too, so this could be some fails in this as well, so the Commission knows.
So this well would be just a new well that ties into the old water lines and water supply, right?
That is to be figured because it depends on where we can find water and how it goes into the system. I have a large, I have a lot of gravity, I have four PRVs, so we have to put it somewhere where either it can go straight or we have to maybe put a main line to get it there.
Okay.
So it won't, I tried with that last well to just put it somewhere where it would just go directly into the system that exists, but that's what we're going to have to try to figure out.
The reason I ask that is because if, you know, if we're not taking out the two old wells and we're hooking up to the same water line that, you know, if a new well goes in and it's tied into the same water system that there, you know, if there's a check valve that fails or a valve that fails on those two other wells, there's a possibility of backflow and, you know, a problem there.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, that would.
I haven't seen those wells, so I don't know what the valving situation, but check valves do fail and like you do say, if there has been no maintenance done on them in so long that, you know, it's very possible that new well could backflow into the other wells, so.
Sure.
And that really kind of disrupts the water.
No, I understand that. And when we do rehab those two wells, we will probably replace all the check valves.
Okay, all right.
At the same time, they're in the same area.
Okay, thank you.
I just have one question, are most, all your residents are on your well, they don't have their own wells?
No. I have two customers that have agricultural wells, but they just use them for watering, they're not hooked up to the system or to their domestic water.
Great, thank you.
Okay, any further questions?
No, I just have to make a comment, I know Kingston is growing, every time you go out there, there's new places being put in and people doing dirt work and pretty soon the system isn't going to be able to support it and we need to make sure that Kingston is allowed to continue on.
Okay, all right, I will hear a motion.
I'll make a motion on number eight, Town of Kingston Water Utility, two million dollars, which would be budgeted in the CCP fund.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
There, Shannon.
Thank you. I do want to say that you guys have always been very generous to Kingston and we recognize that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move into Battle Mountain Town Grant Requests, we have one Frontier Community Action Agency and WIC for twenty-five thousand, two Battle Mountain Chamber of Commerce for thirty thousand, three Lander County Historical Society slash Cook House Museum, forty thousand and eighty-four dollars, four Battle Mountain Raceway for twenty thousand, five Battle Mountain Junior Rodeo Association for twenty-five hundred, six Battle Mountain High School Rodeo Club for eight thousand, and seven miscellaneous grants for ten thousand. We'll start with one Frontier Community Action Agency and WIC for twenty-five thousand dollars.
Hi, Amy Nelson and Wendy Nelson, not related, is on the phone. Spelled with an E.
Yeah, I bet, I bet Amy Nelson E. Yes, so it's Frontier Community Coalition and it formerly was Frontier Community Action Agency that we've taken some of those grants over with. We have not applied with WIC, although we share a building with them. We have had the twenty-five thousand and as you know, it took a little bit of time for us to get everything up and running. We really appreciate the county of Lander that has been nothing but amazing. And so we have spent so far out of the twenty-five thousand that we were allotted about two thousand five hundred dollars so far. So we'll be spending more out, what we've decided is, after speaking with Bert and others, it seems like they, it was a little more accidental, we're really going to be strict about things and it's really for utilities and rent assistance if they need it. It's, a lot has changed, just in the last bit because we've gotten so many other grants, we have had grants that are going to be for the first time in Lander and things like that. So I don't know that we're going to need the twenty-five thousand and we're definitely probably not going to spend out this twenty-five that we have. As a matter of fact, we're trying to make sure we partner in with Lander County with different partners. As you know, the eleven judicial, you guys heard that, we have a hundred and one thousand dollars for them for all of those programs, so it'll more than cover that. And they're already spending some through SAP, which was thirty-four thousand and we just got awarded the remainder seventy thousand. That grant should last to the next three years, so we probably will be able to float all of their programs that they have for the eleven judicial in that, in the four programs that we do. And we also have an additional seventy thousand that we are looking to give to the sheriff over there for the resource officer, which will help offset you guys as well. So we're trying to just partner as much as we can and write in what we can. I would say we're probably going to spend out by end of June, maybe at the most, I'd say twelve thousand. And so I don't know, after looking at things, we have a lot of money that's coming in, we've been writing a lot of grants and being awarded things. I think we probably don't need to be asking for the twenty-five thousand, to be honest with you, I'm thinking if we kept it at a max of fifteen, that would probably be real comfortable and it's just really utility assistance in emergencies. We're, you know, we haven't really tried to advertise it so much, but what we do is wrap around services when they come in and Amy can speak to how things handle that, so I'll be quiet, you can ask Amy what she wants to add as well.
Well, thank you Wendy, for your transparency, you got all this money coming in, that's awesome, so.
Yep, so I'm going to throw a little twist in it, of course, because we are trying to figure out, I've been on the Frontier FCC Board of Directors since, for years, and I've been involved with the FCC since two thousand and one, I think I'm probably the longest tenured FCC person in the state. However, what we've learned is, because this has been a huge learning process, and I think it was in February, the FCAA lost their five oh one Z three status and then FCC came in, we scrambled, put the grant together, and we've just been doing a huge learning process. What we've learned is all of the food, work that we do, the food pantry, the mobile harvest, none of that is funded. That is all volunteer work and it's all donation-based. So that was really interesting, we weren't aware of that. So with the food pantry, I'm just going to give you some data because we are going to do a little bit of a informational thing. So our office supports lower income, fixed income, a lot of senior citizens, a lot of residents that struggle, we help with Medicaid, Medicare, food stamps, energy assistance like Wendy talked about and different things like that. Since October, November and December is all the data I brought because that's when we took over and through the fiscal, I mean, through the calendar year, we had almost nine, eight hundred and ninety-three people come through the mobile harvest, three hundred families, so it's not necessarily feed three hundred vehicles, but three hundred people were fed through the mobile harvest. Lamont volunteered a couple of times, he knows it's busy. About fifty senior boxes a month and that's for people who bring in less than sixteen hundred a month in their fixed income social security, over sixty years old. And then the food pantry, which is the amazing shop that Lander County supports, we've had approximately two hundred people a month come in, we do it two days a month and we get about a hundred families each time. All of the food services are, like I said, through donation, they are unfunded. So we get donations from, the leftovers from the mobile harvest, when they come in once a month, anything that's left over, they give us that food. Catholic charities comes in once a month with a pallet of canned food and miscellaneous things. We get, Midway Market has been giving us their stuff as it's getting close to the end date and then we do, you know, we have canned drives, the mines have brought in some cans, H&R Block had a canned drive, so literally everything is donation. So I guess we weren't sure how to explain this and if we need to come back and do a different ask, but not through the FCC, but through Lander County or possibly through FCC if you want to do it that way, because we're the ones coordinating the food program even though none of our funding supports it. The commodities through Food Bank of Northern Nevada, they give huge discounts if we can buy food through them. So that's just information I'm going to bring up right here. If there was a way we could get money from Lander County and it can be through the FCC or if you want us to come in through a separate ask, that's fine, then we can buy actual meat, frozen meats, frozen vegetables and the healthy food as opposed to just we get what we get from Catholic charities. And so we were, you know, I don't, if you guys want to try to do it through this with that extra money that Wendy said they don't need, if we could get, I mean, five hundred a month even, we could bring in better food, healthier food, it's frozen chickens and eggs and different things. I mean, ideally if we could get a thousand a month, we could knock it out of the park with very healthy food for our clientele. And like I said, we're feeding the have-nots in this community to the tune of several hundred.
Would that, could they, could we just, could the ask just be from the Frontier Community Action Agency and then they do that or would they need to come back and, or we create our own line, what would be the cleanest way of doing it?
So I have to make a clarification on the agenda, that was my mistake, it shouldn't be, it should be Frontier Community Coalition on the agenda, so I didn't touch that, I apologize. So if they're not going to use the full twenty-five thousand for direct services, like for the rental and utility assistance, then I don't see why you couldn't say that they can also use it for food, but I think legal would need to answer that for sure.
Yeah, that was what we weren't sure about, so we didn't know if we needed to do some kind of a separate application or.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, we're looking towards our DA for an answer.
Which, which thing?
So basically there, what Amy's saying is that, so the money that we've budgeted would be used for rental assistance and such, but she's saying that they're, they'd like to use some of that money for buying some better quality foods for the have-nots and is it appropriate to pull it from this grant to do that? Did I state that correctly?
And what we would do if you want to keep it really clean is we'd get a monthly invoice and we could bring it right to Lakin and she would pay directly to the Food Bank in Northern Nevada.
Well, in general, you can make whatever charitable donations you wish, which is what this amounts to, that's, you guys are five oh one C three, aren't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that answers it.
So I think the, for the sake of the agenda and how it's worded, I think that we'd have to come back if we wanted to and just, and augment the budget that you guys give them with their grants to include that. Just so it's all above board, but then the twenty-five thousand, something else that I never did follow up with Wendy and Amy, we were talking about moving a walk-in freezer over there and I don't know if, you know, I know that that will increase the power bill considerably. If that's something that does happen in the future, it might be something you guys consider in your grant because.
Is help with utilities?
Yeah, I mean, it's going to bump everything else up here, so.
Yeah.
And it's a great service and they've done, they've done so wonderful for our community, I can't even, they stepped in when everything was falling apart and have really done a great job, so thank you guys.
So we're, thank you Bert, this is Wendy Nelson again with Frontier Community Coalition. We are interested in that just because we don't really have any budget line items and we have seen a large increase in our electric bill, I think it's running around six or seven hundred dollars already. And I think it's because the shop has, you know, heating and cooling in there now and then however the heating is working and, but again, we're willing to do whatever, we just want to partner with you guys and whatever works best with Lander County, thank you.
Thank you Wendy. All right, Commission have any questions on this?
I'm going to abstain from this because I work with the Frontier Coalition, so.
Thank you.
So my question is, and Bill, maybe if, hopefully I heard this right, is could this be approved for the twenty-five thousand dollars and does this wording need to be a little more specific when they come back or do we have to deny the twenty-five thousand dollars? Maybe I didn't hear that right.
No.
So could we approve a twenty-five thousand dollars and with a little bit more documentation?
Well, you can approve it right now, number one, number two, you can approve it down the road, obviously.
Yeah, because rental and utility assistance is very vague on, I mean, what those terms are, but, you know, we are talking about using this funds for food and something outside the scope of what's on this paper.
And that was where I was saying in, on a future agenda, we would bring it back to modify these funds that you guys have approved.
Okay.
Say that, you know, you guys are going to approve fifteen thousand of that for utilities and then the other ten thousand could be used for food and it would be a designated line item for clarification for the public, just so we aren't in violation of open meeting law.
Yeah, so today I think we're just looking for a motion just to approve line item one for twenty-five thousand, if that's what's said.
To the Frontier Community Coalition.
Yeah.
Because that one is wrong.
And leave WIC off or?
Yeah, leave WIC off.
Okay, all right.
So if there's no further questions, I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve line item number one for the FCC and WIC in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars with more documentation to be explained later.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Without WIC, you have to leave, I just asked that, we leave WIC off.
Oh, you leave WIC off?
Okay, okay, so let me rephrase that. I'd like to make a motion that we approve line item one for the FCC in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars with more documentation to be explained later.
Okay, so we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm staying.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you guys and thank you for your patience as we figure out what we're doing.
Thanks, thanks Amy.
Yes, we appreciate you all, thank you.
Thank you Wendy. All right, so we'll move to line two, Battle Mountain Chamber of Commerce for thirty thousand dollars.
I don't see her here.
We don't have her chamber person here. So is that a no?
She was here earlier.
Maybe she's in the restroom.
All right, so we'll start just with the Commission, are there any questions on the ask of thirty thousand?
She's going to use it all towards events. I hope that's not her.
Well, she does, I mean, right here she's, we gave her twenty-five last year and she's only used five thousand, but I'm assuming she hasn't got crab feet invoices into you yet.
I'll tell you what, is she in the building, do we think?
I don't know.
Okay.
I've seen her walking through the parking lot leaving, I think, so, and that was earlier, so we can message her.
Yeah, so we're going to skip that one and then we'll see if we can get her in here and then we'll just, we'll move on, we'll go to number three. The Lander County Historical Society and Cook House Museum has an ask of forty thousand eighty-four dollars. Morning ladies.
Good morning. Lori Price for the Lander County Historical Society, Lois Serkiaga, board member.
All right, so does the Commission have any questions for Lori or Lois on the grant request?
I have a few, but I'm going to disclose that I am related to Lori and I will be, I have no financial gain from this, I will be voting and discussing.
Okay, thank you for the disclosure. Thank you for the disclosure.
Okay, so this money is strictly for the rendering of the railroad depot?
Yes.
Okay, and, and is this going to become self-supportive afterwards? Are you gonna be coming back?
This money is only for the construction of the building.
Right, and then are, it's gonna be self-supportive after that, it's gonna make enough money to cover the cost of it?
We are hoping, we have, I, I gave you a whole list of all the things that we do, our fundraising. We work hard on our fundraising, there's only a few of us that do a lot of work, but we have a lot of, of help.
Why get that?
But it is our goal.
Yeah, it is your goal.
That's our plan.
And what, what kind of events are you planning on holding there?
Uh, well, for our, only our events, Pinnacle and Cribbage tournaments, our craft fair, uh, we have a Christmas cruise that we begin and end there. Poker run, we have raffles, um, art at the museum we want to have there as well. So we have lots of those kinds of activities. We want to open it up to the community. We've already been asked several, several times for different things, but we do not have a certificate of occupancy yet, so we haven't been able to rent it out. But, um, the things we've been asked for is graduation parties, um, a baby, um. Shower, thank you. Weddings possibly, uh, meetings for, a lot of the mines already use our museum for meetings. Actually, a funeral, uh, somebody asked if they could use it for a funeral. So there will be lots of different, um, events in there that we can rent it out.
Are you putting a kitchen in?
It's going to be a kitchenette, so there is no stove, but there will be, um, you know, a place to put food if we have it brought in, or roasters, or, you know.
We're also going to, uh, build a really nice barbecue area that's completely covered, so maybe that'll expand, you know, the potential for a rental venue.
Well, I like to see, you've asked for a lot of help, and there's been a lot of help for you guys, which is awesome to see. I like, I just like to see that you're thinking future terms of like self-sustaining, which is nice, uh, so, yes, I, I just, uh, thank you for that. Any other questions from the commission?
No, I just, um, I, I think that you guys do fundraising, and that's great, cause a lot of groups don't do that. You guys, your golf, it looks like your golf tournament was really good.
It was, yes. First one, so.
Yeah, it was, it was good.
All right, so if there's no further questions, I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve line item three, um, Elsie Historical Society Cook House Museum in the amount of forty thousand eighty-four dollars.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
All second.
Motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, ladies.
Thank you very much for all of your support, so that since we do have this forty thousand, we only have about forty thousand left to actually finish the whole thing. The actual, the actual construction of it. We have a list of all the other things we still have to buy, but thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah.
All right, we'll go to item four, Battle Mountain Raceway, uh, for a grant request of twenty thousand dollars. Morning, Randy.
Good morning, Randy, Art's president of the racetrack. Be gentle.
I'm Rebecca Klein, treasurer.
All right, so do we have any questions for the grant request of twenty thousand dollars? I see last year their ask was twenty, but we funded them nine thousand. Let me see here, I'll see.
How many races a year do you run?
We are, we've cut down to two-day races once a month, so we start in May. Just cost-wise, insurance-wise, it's cheaper than running every other weekend like we used to. Um, I'm sure you're gonna have plenty of questions.
So did that drop the fee for your announcer, where you're paying twenty-five hundred dollars for motel and twenty-five hundred dollars?
No, because that's for the weekend. And, uh, I'm working, everything's volunteer, and the announcer travels from Elko, he does a great job, does live streaming. Just, I just got back into running the racetrack again, I did this for years and was out for about ten. And I wanted to step back in and help, so some of this stuff is, I may not have an answer for you. But, uh, our flagger comes from Winnemucca, does a great job, volunteer, but he asks that we pay for his hotel room, and, um, we ask for volunteers locally. It's just hard to get, especially a flagger, because it's so much responsibility.
And so.
And I'm working with the hotels to try and maybe get a free room, if we buy, you know, if, to designate one as our racetrack hotel, and everybody goes there and says they're with the racing association, and. So that cost, no. As at this point, the money we put down that we spent last year is what we're looking at spending this year on that. Something with the grant that the county has gave us in the past, I don't know exactly what all we could use it for. Becky, would know more of that, or you commissioners would. I would like to expand what that is used for. And the money that's left in it right now, we will definitely use to get started up in our May-June. But like our electricity bill, um, I don't think the announcers or none of that's submitted into the county. Basically, what I'm looking for is I need a boost to get this back up to where it used to be. As our economy dropped, um, racing kinda took a dive. And it's kind of a catch-22, if you want to say that, per se. We have to get race cars there to get people to come and watch, wanna watch the racing, but we have to get people there so we can pay the racers to come and race. So we're just looking at a way that we can cut some of our outside costs, like, um, not outside, but our costs on electricity, insurance, equipment, which the counties helped us with in the past. So we can maybe take some of that money and apply it towards other things so we can pay more money to the racers. You know, use the, the grant money to get the track back up into, uh, compliance, I guess you would say. We need some outbuilding repairs and stuff.
So your entry fees, do you, um, all of it goes into prices, or does a percentage of it stay at the raceway to cover costs?
The percent that, so, um, our sanctioning body for like the IMCA Modifieds, that all goes back to the drivers, and a fee goes to IMCA to be sanctioned with them. But we try not to take anything out of the back gate. The front gate is, you know, our spectators and all that. But we try not to take anything out of the back gate. I mean, it's just, it's so expensive to race, I mean, if we're not paying the guys that come, it's just tough.
And the concession stand, do you have a nonprofit group that comes in and runs that, or do you run that?
We run it ourselves, um, with volunteers, so I think it's the Cinderella Group.
We've had, um, sober seniors, we've had, um, before my time, there was, uh, sorority girls, women, um, and then the sort of Cinderella pageant.
Do they get a percentage for running it?
We pay them a flat rate to run it for the weekend.
A thousand dollars.
Well, that's what it was for the year.
For the year.
I paid them two fifty a night, so it would be five hundred dollars to help us, and then we realized that was a little steep. We lowered it to about three hundred for the weekend. And then they go do their fundraising also, like, good travels, things like that.
It is a lot of money that we're paying out for that, and as a, as a owner, I saw that as an expensive cost. The other side of it, it is going back to an organization that does something for the community, like the sober seniors and Cinderella Group. But, I mean, I just tried to throw everything out there that we're spending money on at the track, to give you an idea, and ask for help.
What's your guys' annual budget, I mean, what does it cost, what's it cost, the annual budget to run the whole thing, Becky?
Well, Ms. Price, I got, like I said.
I'm just curious.
Bear with me, this is new to me this year. I mean, basically, it looks like we spent fifty-nine thousand five hundred and thirty-nine dollars and three cents.
Awesome. Do you guys, sorry, Randy, you guys, you guys put, you, you guys put in for grants with the mines as well?
So yes, uh, before I submitted that grant, that was not done, so that's why that's not on there. We, uh, got with Nevada Gold Mines and IED Gold, and that's the only two mines that we put in with. I have also received funding, sponsorship, whatever you like to call it, for some, uh, year-end payouts for some of the classes. And I got some from Desert Disposal from Winnemucca, and Patriot Storage, or, excuse me, Rentals from Winnemucca. They're sponsoring the IMCA, or, excuse me, the hobby stocks. Dirk Towing and Recovery from In-Town has gave us five thousand dollars for year-end payouts.
That's awesome.
And since we've got that information out there, we've had racers from Fallon and Fernley reach out to us and said they're coming to race every weekend, cause they want that year-end payout.
Maybe going forward too, Randy, since you're stepping back in trying to clean everything up, just make sure going forward, like, if you're, you've, you spent fifty-some thousand, give us that itemized list so we can see what it is. Uh, give us that itemized list of who you've reached out to, what fundraisers you've done, how you intend on, on lessening the ask every year. Uh, and then another thing I was thinking, and I don't know if you've utilized it, is it sounds to me like promotion would be key, like, it's like heads, like heads at the gate, cause it, you know.
Yeah, so.
Maybe getting with Burt and, and running something in our newsletter.
Yeah.
Getting it out there, you know, it's like, hey, we have this race coming up, these are what the buyouts, the pays are, and I don't see how, would it be possible, Burt, if we had? Well, actually, we could just send the email list to them, or, I mean, not the email list, but the, the newsletter to them, and they could forward it out to other counties to let them know.
For sure, and, and this last time, the, they kinda had bad luck. We had our, our carnival come to town, and I think a rodeo, there were a few things that happened all at once, and we were hoping that, you know, with the rising tide, all boats would, would be rising as well. But, you know, people kinda got sidetracked and went to the carnival and went to the rodeo, and, and the race kinda got put on the back burner. So I think it probably hurt some of their gate.
Yeah, I think homecoming was that same weekend, it just, stuff just, I mean, when we make our schedule, we get with the other towns, and, you know, we look and try to see what, it, that was just a, that was just a bad deal that happened. I mean, it doesn't always go that way, but some things, Brian, to, I know where you're headed with this, like, we don't want to come and ask you for money.
Right.
Can I sit here and tell you we will be self-sustaining? I cannot tell you that. It's a nonprofit, it's expensive, but we're gonna start, get back to keeping better track of what comes through the gate, you know, adults, seniors, kids. Um, how many people are staying in hotels, this, that, so when we come back, we have better information. I know this is, this is very vague and broad, and I apologize for it, and it was kind of a rush job to get it put in, and I'm like, we gotta get them something so we can get on the agenda. So, I mean, we're doing everything we can.
Have you thought about approaching convention and tourism also for your advertising and stuff?
We, we have, and we're in the process of that, um, something I've been drawing up, I want to get us, like a, a sign out by the track, a better one. I mean, everything we have out there's pretty much been volunteered, and I like a, maybe a lighted sign, so I just want to get a quote from YESCO and the other sign company. And see if they can help us with that out there, you know, just more visibility. One of our benefits is, is we're by the, by the interstate, so I mean, there's, we, we've had truckers see that there's a racetrack and pull in and see what's going on, which is, I mean, it's just, we gotta get our name back out there. We've got our social, social media streamlined a little better now, and that's the kind of way that we advertise nowadays everywhere in this world.
Way of the world.
So, I mean, we're, we are moving forward with our heads down, and, uh, we appreciate all the help we've got from the county in the past. And you, this, this county's done a lot for this racetrack, and we truly appreciate it, with just a little bit more, to get us, you know, back where we can be maybe self-sufficient. That is our goal.
So Randy, I'm looking at, at how much we've, we've spent, you spent last year, and it's, it's, we still have about a third of the money on the table.
Yes.
Um, so, you know, I think this is an opportunity for the, the racetrack to kind of rebrand, maybe, you know, to, maybe we have an opportunity there, but, um. And then, yeah, I see all your breakdown here of everything, so was it things that you believe maybe we weren't investing in the right things, we weren't spending the money the right way?
Um, so like I said, I'm not sure where all that grant money was supposed to go to. I'm pretty sure it didn't go towards a lot of the costs that we have. That's why, and the money is there now, we will use to get started for our May-June.
Um, the grant was funded for our insurance premiums, um, our IMCA dues and fees, and fuel to run the equipment. So that's all that that's been funding, and so that last third will go for our May, May-June races, because it's a thousand dollars a month for insurance for those two races. And then our startup cost for insurance and a few hundred for the IMCA dues.
Yeah, to me, it just seems like a good opportunity to re, to just kind of rebrand and, and.
Yeah.
And kind of utilize some other resources that we have.
So what, I guess, Mr. Edgar, I don't understand, like, what do you want us to rebrand as, or?
Well, like I said, if, 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 if we, if we're not getting the, the attendance that, that we're, you know, maybe is it, you know, if your advertising budget's four hundred, you know, is that kind of what you're looking at, about four hundred dollars, maybe it's?
Well, I'd like to see that a lot more, and, I mean, we just gotta start, basically start over.
Sure.
Is where we're at. I mean, we're open to any suggestions, like, if any commissioners want to come on out and announce, we'll take it.
Well, that's why I suggested convention and tourism for your advertising, because that's what that money's supposed to be for.
And we've, uh, Santi is our sergeant in arms, Villanueva, and he's talked with Paula, right? And she has some ideas and stuff, and it's just, um, as you know, we're all volunteers, so. It, people get burnt out volunteering, and that's why I left for over ten years. And I'm in a position now where I can get back into it, and hopefully streamline this back to where, you know, we can get our attendance back up, more cars. And hopefully our economy is better so people are spending a little more money on racing because there is no money in it.
We do have some equipment that has been donated to us, but, you know, everything goes up in costs, I mean, maintaining that stuff, but, you know, we've got, you know, our blade that's getting to where it might need some tires pretty soon, um.
Well, and I think part of that grant, we were able to put in maintenance costs to the county too. But we are gonna have some more maintenance costs this year, cause the equipment is just in need of dire repair.
Yeah, what I'm, what I meant to say by rebranding was, was, you know, of course, the attendance is everything, trying to get those people indoors when they, you know, they're paying at the gate, they're paying for concessions, or maybe some space. But, uh, you know, how do we get, how do we get more people out there? How do we get those people to fill up your, your seats, you know, that's, that's what I'm talking about, re, rebranding, trying to, you know, cause sometimes, you know, getting people in there, even our locals, I mean, sometimes they don't know when the races are.
Well, there's a lot of people that, I mean, believe it or not, we have a racetrack in town, and I feel that that's part of our fault for not, I mean, I'm open to any ideas for better advertising. Cause we've utilized the, the board, you know, the community board there at Convention Center, and, uh, we have our little sign that we put out on the side of the road there that the snow pile took out. So this, more, yes, more advertising.
And what we're gonna do too is, um, I think we're, I just do a raffle, and then every time you attend, you have a raffle ticket, and you win the, you win the raffle at the end of the season. You know, just try to get that attendance up, and of course, sharing our Facebook page to the, you know, community pages and things like that, you know.
Well, we're open for any suggestions on getting more people in those stands, cause, I mean.
And we also have a gentleman from Winnemucca, uh, Bush Dorno, he's, uh, bringing over his Galaxy so they can do a parade laps. You know, and what he's aiming for is trying to spark up the interest of the high school kids, you know, have them vote on, you know, driver to drive the Trophy Girl. And then, uh, the winner at the end of the evening, you know, will get presented a muzzle and a grade with Battle Mountain season opener. You know, so he's kinda throwing some ideas out there that might help spark up a little more interest, you know, in the, in the youth. You know, and myself, and Randy, I mean, there's new racers that we're always, you know, buffing them, the men, and more than willing to help them, you know, uh, performance-wise and, you know, getting started. Because a lot of people, just like our shows, just like everything else, they don't know who to go to and get any kind of a guidance. So, you know, we have put that out quite a bit more, we do have a lot more people getting interested in, you know, purchasing cars, building cars. So there's definitely, you know, something for them to do that way, you know, I mean, it, it helps bring them something to do, and, you know, as we all know, you know, we kind of lacked a little bit, and, and stuff to do in Lander County.
Gotcha.
Do you, I got a question real quick, do you guys, um, do you, you give trophies out each, um, for every race, right, or is it just payouts?
No, we do trophies.
Okay.
And they're usually sponsored by.
Okay, I was gonna ask you, cause that's.
Mr. Villanueva welds them together at my shop.
Well, maybe you should get sponsors like we do for the car show.
And that's a good point.
Cause in the past, we've gotten, um, actual, the medal trophies from, um, uh, who's he, Elko.
It's Green Creek, yeah.
Yeah. TNT welding, and they just, they've done it for us, I mean, not three.
But that's a great, it's a great way to supplement that. But that's a great, it's a great way to supplement that, because we do that with the burners, and it'll supplement you guys, I mean, it's just a little extra.
And that's, I mean, that's a great point, and I didn't actually think of that, and that's, like I said, this is basically, um, maybe, like Mr. Edgar said, a regroup as, you know, a reboot, maybe better to, this is where we are, and we're kinda in a disaster at the point. And this is where our goal, and I apologize for not having a, a better goal set forward for you, so you can understand. Well, yep, I have a plan how long I'm gonna do this, and it's for many more years, so we will get better at presenting.
Thank you, Randy.
Uh, Brian, uh, Cole Nelson, director, just from the public side of things, you know, you, you look at the, uh, motocross track out there, it has to be one of the best motocross tracks in the country, if you want to have, honestly, from what we ran for years, it's phenomenal, and it's an untapped resource that, that, uh, speaking of Randy, and this is just a suggestion, uh, reaching out to some of those folks, and I can help with this, like the Wild West Series, if we could get that to come here, you'd have three, four hundred riders to show up on that track, and it's, I mean, they got lights, it's, it's totally untapped, and I think that's something that we could grant more by reaching out to people. If you get two or three of those series going, they're phenomenal what the riders will, will, will come to, and then I've had people call me out, well, what is that going on with that track, man? We had, why aren't we using?
I was gonna ask that. Did you guys take over the?
Well, so, that, that was
We tried.
our plan, and that was to help generate revenue and combine the, that got shot down by insurance. We could not, as the racetrack, stock car racing, get insurance when we're involved with the motocross. Don't ask me why, Tyler Peterson and another guy are kinda heading that up now. There was an insurance deal, and I said, that can't be right, there's no way. So I actually addressed it myself, no. The only way that it's, it won't, they wouldn't cover the racetrack and the motocross together under the policy, and there's some other issues. The only way that's happening is it's a, basically privately owned, like Reno Fernley has a bunch of the same stuff going on, it's privately owned.
Nobody wants to insure motocross anymore.
It's only two insurance.
And it's just, I was floored, like, yeah, I was like, that can't be real, there's, and it's, so unfortunately, the racetrack and the motocross will have to stay two separate entities. It was gonna be a great thing.
And they have to get their own.
It looked good on paper. Um, so-
So having to be go?
We are doing other things to generate, to raise money, and we're waiting for some response from Nevada Gold Mines and I A D and uh, some other businesses that we've reached out to for weekly payouts added, and, I mean, once we can get spectators back, crowd back, I mean,
Yeah, maybe add SSR mining to that too, because they're really good about-
Yes, that's one that I haven't got to.
Their application's a little longer now, but-
My new secretary's been very busy with racetrack stuff.
Take it off my plate this time.
Um, I hope I've answered some of your questions.
Yeah, we just, we need to decide. Are there any other questions?
No, I don't have any other questions.
I know that our policy is not to, is to try to make it less every year, but you've heard Mr. Archer's testimony, um, as far as, so I don't know, I just, we have the ultimate say.
Yeah, well, and I'm, I'm happy to see him back, because I think that things, not that they didn't try hard before, but when you have somebody who's got that experience, and they, they know they get it back on track, it's gonna go a little smoother for them, so.
And, um, sorry, I, I wasn't, I didn't understand all this grant stuff. I've learned a lot in the last month, so it is, um, I mean, listening to Brian earlier, or Mr. Sparks, excuse me, um, like, if we don't use it, you kinda frown on it, but it's also a deal that if it's not there, we can't use it. Um, and I don't exactly know what the total cost is gonna be this year, because we have a ton of equipment upkeep, and, but anything that we can receive from the county would be greatly appreciated.
We don't wanna fall through the, the mess.
Mm-hmm.
This will keep hurting, the floor needs to be replaced and things like that.
There's just some stuff that we gotta fix.
All right, well, let's, uh, there's no further, uh, question, are there any questions? I'll hear a motion, whatever, which way you guys wanna go.
I'm gonna make a motion that we approve number four, line, uh, Battle Mountain Raceway in the amount of twenty thousand dollars.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the twenty thousand, is there a second?
I'm gonna second that.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and I vote aye, but with the, the note that next year, it's not gonna be the same amount, so
No, completely understand.
take that, give, and do the best you can with trying to get it to regroup and make this thing as self-sustainable as possible, and just increase your line of sponsorships, all that, you know, blah, blah stuff.
Most definitely.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, and if you guys want anything like we do for the burners, let me know, and I'll get you the stuff for the-
Yeah, I'll get with you. All right, we appreciate your help. Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, so five, Battle Mountain Junior Rodeo Association for twenty-five hundred dollars.
Hello, Mike Craig for the record, um, I'm here representing Carrie, um, she had an appointment today, and so I come in to speak for her, so hopefully I can answer any questions you need.
Morning, Mike.
Good morning.
All right, so, what did we grant to you last year?
The same.
The same, twenty-five hundred.
I'm just kinda reading through this. I just got this last night, so I've been kinda skimming through it and going through this. Um, I know Carrie does a good job on, I helped her do the ground with this stuff last year and helped her as much as I could. I do know she puts a lot of effort and does a good job with this. Just from my point and putting on events and learning the aspects of it all, I don't know how she does it this cheap. She has a lot of people helping her from the back end. I know this, uh, stock calling charges, I know for a fact she's probably getting that for a half-quarter price. So, um, a lot of this stuff, she's, she's doing good, and what she's asking for is a very minimal amount from what I've seen and learned from this. She's bringing a good thing for the kids, um, this, this rodeo would've died off if it wasn't for Carrie. Um, she's a, she's from Elko, and um, she's kinda taken over when the Battle Mountain folks wouldn't do this, so I'm just kinda throwing that out there. I think she's doing a good thing for the kids on this rodeo here.
And she put together a really cute video for you guys with the kids in the rodeo, but I could not get it to save on the thumb drive, so she, I, she was gonna try and have you bring it, but I don't think you guys were able to do it.
I don't think I got it.
But it was, it was really nice.
Okay, um, yeah, I mean, it's, it's always nice being able to help out our youth and, and uh, in our community and putting on these events, but, I mean, as far as the procedural stuff, you know, it's, it's, when we ask, when we give this money, we, we have a very specific outline of what we ask for, right? We wanna see, like, other donations, people you've asked for, what they've given you, what's your plan to try to keep yourself as self-sustaining, it's like, and it's like, that is our policy that we set, so I guess my message to you, Mike, and, and that maybe you can get to Carrie, is that for you, for the years to come, it's like, I'm, I'm going to expect to s, to see that, right? It's, we're trying to install these policies, but it does no good if we just accept everything that comes through without m- mentioning it with the, the point of trying to bring, bring compliance into our policies that we set as a board, so, um, but yeah, I, I do agree with you, it's a, it's a very minimal amount in the grand scheme of things. And they hold one event a year, or is it?
Correct.
One, yeah.
Just one event?
Just the one event.
And they, in their grant, she did put at the very bottom that the event is free admission to the community, so I'm thinking maybe that's why they're not getting a lot of revenue to be able to self-sustain.
Yeah, and they don't do the concessions either, because they, they farm that out to sober seniors as well.
Correct.
So they're working with other groups.
So they're helping other groups within the community.
Which makes those groups self-sustaining.
See, that's nice to know, that's, that's information we like to hear, so.
Is this a weekend event?
It's on a, it's on a Sunday.
It's just a Monday event.
So it was kinda hosted, it's the weekend after the high school rodeo. They try to do everything kinda in conjunction with, with each other. And then last year, um, Sean and Mindy Gimmer put on a, Dale and I did a working cow horse event, and we conj, we, we combined all, all those events together, you know, and it, it actually brings a lot of people to the community, even though it's a single day event. It does bring a lot of people around, you know, to utilize the facility, and, and honestly, right now, we're rebuilding this facility, so this'll make it much better for up-and-coming people coming, you know, to use this.
Yeah, I've, I've watched your Facebook page, you're doing a lot of work on it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It's with the support of the county.
Yeah, it's looking good.
Okay, and if, there's no further questions, I'll hear a motion.
Make a motion that we approve, uh, line five, Battle Mountain Junior Rodeo Association in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay.
Thank you, and no Carrie thanks you guys as well.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Uh, okay, so item six, Battle Mountain High School Rodeo Club, uh, for a grand amount of eight thousand dollars. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Landry Myman, and I'm the secretary of our club.
Ron Over, director of the club.
Tanya Myman, mom.
Well, welcome.
Yeah, and Jess Lancaster filled out the application, but she wasn't able to be here today, but.
Okay. So anything you'd like to say?
So tell what you're asking for.
Um, so we're asking for eight thousand dollars for our livestock contractor, um.
The price of it has been going up every year, like last year it cost us nine, and then this year we're projecting probably closer to ten, so we're asking for less than it actually costs. Um, we do a lot of other ways of getting money, um, we write grants to I A D and Nevada Gold Mines, um, we actually go out in the community, the actual students do, and ask for, um, money to help cover our um, sponsor serums and stuff like that, and then as well, we put on an event during our rodeo. It's a triathlon, where, and the, um, students, the parents, outside people, anyone can participate in that, and then we also, this year, are looking at putting on a similar event in Austin, so.
During Miranda's Fourth of July one? Or a different time?
I think possibly that Jess is still working on that. They live closer out there. Do you know?
No, I don't know.
Okay.
So I see that you've written, uh, grant requests from like some of our mining partners here. Have, have any of those people, uh, helped you out with any?
Yeah.
Grants?
Yeah, yeah, we get, um, I wish I had that.
We don't have a lot of the paperwork. Jessica had that, and they're shipping cows today, so she's not here, but.
Gotcha.
Yeah, in the past, uh, the minings, they've, they've all supported us. They've been big supporters.
All right, does the commissioner have any questions?
No, but they do partner with sober seniors, does that one too.
Yes.
And you do a good job of cooking shiitakes.
Thank you. And you guys do a three-day event. How many of the people actually stay in the motels and stuff, and how many of them have, uh, horse trailers they sleep in?
Most of them, we have, uh, we bring approximately two hundred contestants into this rodeo. It's a three-day event. Uh, the cutting and the raining starts on Friday, and then the rodeo Saturday and Sunday, and about half of them, uh, those come in horse trailers that have their own, but a lot of them stay in the motels or stay with friends here.
Yeah, well, and we also pay for the judges and stuff like that, from our money. We pay for them to stay in motels, the people who come in to judge the rodeo.
Okay.
Okay, are there any other questions?
Nope.
I'll hear a motion.
Oh, yeah.
Did you guys wanna see, we got a short present.
Oh, absolutely.
Let's see it.
They're the ones that did the video, I'm not the junior.
Come ride with me, it's time to saddle up, ride away. There's so much to see, don't worry, I know the trails, I know the way. I caught a gentle horse, his eyes are big and brown, he's ready to carry you the whole world round. Come ride with me, let's ride away. Come take a chance, I'll show you where the mountains touch the sky. It's a horseback dance, and we can ride forever if we try. A dream in the distance, there for you to chase. Out in the sunrise with the wind on your face, come ride with me. Let's ride away. And the smell of the leather, the sunlight on your skin, they've got a second to begin. The rumble of her beats much stronger than wine, the dust in your hair, the light in your eye.
Thank you.
Thank you, that was nice.
And as you can see, we have a very small group of kiddos, you know, we only have four.
Wow.
And so we rely on so much outside, um, help, which, I mean, both of these gentlemen are just amazing to help, you know, with, because it's all volunteer, so, yeah.
Can you notice on some of them slides you've seen where it says national qualifiers? Those are the kids from our town that go back to the national finals rodeo, eighteen hundred contestants, ten-day rodeo, and some of them have been world champions right here out of Battle Mountain.
That's pretty cool.
Yeah.
We've got a great deal going here with these kids.
Yep, I agree. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, so, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to pass number six, Battle Mountain High School Rodeo Club for eight thousand dollars.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Uh, we're gonna do line seven, then we're gonna take a short break after that, so miscellaneous grants for ten thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you guys so much.
Hey, and thank you for the kids, they, they, they're really persistent when they're going out looking for sponsors to, which is good, you gotta be persistent.
Yes, we do.
All right, so miscellaneous grants, these are just things that might come up within the year that, uh, people are asking, stuff like that. Is this what, and that's what we budgeted last year as well, was ten dollars?
Yes. Did we use any of that?
I don't think so. I don't think we've used it this year.
We didn't help any of the high school kids go, or FAA, or?
I think that was the last that we used year, yeah.
All right, if there's no questions from the board, I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass number seven, miscellaneous grants for ten thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
Uh, second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, we're gonna take a fifteen-minute break. All right, so we're gonna continue. I know we still have to handle the Battle Mountain Chamber of Commerce, and uh, the gal that's gonna be here for that, Holly, she'll be, she's on her way back from Elko, so when she gets back in, we'll circle back to it, but we'll continue on with the Austintown grant request. Uh, we have one Austint Chamber of Commerce, uh, for thirty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars. We have two Austin Historical Society for seven thousand, fifty dollars, and three Austin Medical Clinic for six thousand, six hundred. So we'll start with Austint Chamber of Commerce.
Hold on, Miranda's outside, I'm texting her right now.
Okay, she's coming. So we'll start with Austint Chamber of Commerce for thirty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-five. So we'll wait for Miranda to get here. I was just- Morning, Miranda.
Good morning, how's it going?
Good. So we're, uh, we've opened the Austint Chamber of Commerce for thirty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Yes.
Okay, so, um-
Do you guys have questions?
Yeah, does the commissioner have any questions on this grant request?
Um, I do, so, I'm pretty familiar with Battle Mountains Chamber, and I've been to a couple of your events, but I just have, so, um, where, where other than the commissioners in Lander County do you solicit funds from?
Um, so we're currently pulling from, um, the mines, we have SSR Marigold, we have Nevada Gold Mines, we have small mine development, we have, um, AM Engineering, we have Marquez Arbock, I mean, the list goes on. So we're, we're definitely trying to pull as many funds as possible outside of here.
Yeah.
Um, just trying to get a new event started and getting it established is the big, the big thing, and making sure that we have enough funds to make it go around.
What's the new event?
Uh, the rodeo.
The rodeo, okay.
Yep, yep, and so we've, we've worked pretty hard on getting it set to where it's established. Um, last year, um, the rodeo went on for a long time, uh, it was almost eleven o'clock at night by the time the rodeo was over, so this year we were able to pull a three-day rodeo, so that's three days of people coming and staying for the fourth, fifth, and sixth.
So you're seeing a lot of people come in and, and put some money in there.
Yeah, so we had, um, the first year, I think we had right around three hundred people attend, and then, uh, last year we were right around five hundred.
Awesome.
Yep.
So all those people, Miranda, that you solicit, has any of them given you any money?
Uh, yes, yep.
I just don't see that as part of your package. The only mention I see is Ken Ross, and I don't see anybody else.
I didn't see any either. Yeah, I could give you guys a detailed list of it, uh, let me see if I have it with me. Um, and so those funds are not guaranteed every year, so that's the big thing, and so we're still waiting to hear back from a lot of them. So we did ask for the funds, it's just a matter of how much they're giving. So I think right now we have, uh, three thousand dollars, um, a thousand from SMD. Uh, I think a thousand from McEwen and, um, five hundred from Marques Arbock, and then five hundred from, um, AM Engineering.
Did you, did Nevada Gold and SSR Mining give you money last year?
They did, yes.
Okay, yeah, they're, they're usually repetitive, they'll usually.
They are, yeah, it's just a matter of getting through, you know, getting their, their sponsorship, you know, processed through, and then making sure, you know, that they have time to process everything.
Have you done the application for SSR Mining yet?
Yes, I did.
Cause it changed.
Yeah, yeah, it did, yeah. And unfortunately, last year, we didn't get the funds from, um, Nevada Gold Mines until after the event was over. So, I mean, it was, like I said, it's not guaranteed, and when you're trying to put on, you know, an event as big as this one.
Did you put that one in yet?
Uh, yes.
Okay, cause they're taking a little longer too.
Yeah, and I submit all of my sponsorships, I try to have them all submitted by February. So, I mean, this is well advanced, and the chamber is also working on, um, different fundraising opportunities, so, um, my boards come together pretty, pretty tight-knit and trying to get us to become more self-sustaining, so.
Um, what about membership?
Membership dues, they're hard, um, we obviously have minimal, um, businesses that are surrounding and trying to pull, um, memberships from outside of our community that people are still doing business within. They're pretty leery of to what purpose they need to be a member, unfortunately, so.
I would honestly encourage you to solicit here.
Okay.
Yeah, cause I mean, I would join, I, I'm, I've heard a couple of insurance places, cause a lot of them do business over there.
Yeah.
So they should be joining your chamber.
Yeah, for sure.
Ask April for a list of the businesses in Lander County?
Okay.
And then send your letters out from there.
Okay.
I see we granted thirty-six thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars last year.
Correct.
You've only, you've used less than half of that thus far?
Yeah, so there's a, there's more money that I have been currently doing the EMT, um, program, so I'm a little spread thin. Um, but that will be coming in full reimbursement here.
So you spent more than what's actually reported here?
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Did you have to travel over here for that EMT?
Um, kind of, yeah, for, it's there in, in Austin and here too, so.
You guys are doing two days a week?
Uh, two days a week and then every other Saturday.
Yeah.
Yep. Um, we also had a raffle donated and we've been pulling, um, raffle funds that way. And, uh, our Christmas mashup event, that is completely free to our community. And we give all the funds that are, um, acquired from that to the volunteer fire department. Um, and then our concessions for the rodeo, and anytime we ever have an opportunity to do some kind of concessions, it's usually for a nonprofit. So either one of the churches or the volunteer fire department, they, they tend to take up on that, so.
Lakin, um, I see, uh, last year but nothing prior, do you have those notes handy? Like what, uh, what was the amount that we funded for that grant, like maybe three years prior to twenty twenty-five? Do you have that handy? Do you know what it is?
I was gonna say, I do believe three years prior to it, it was twenty, twenty-one?
But you weren't during the rodeo then?
No, we didn't have a rodeo, we didn't have this Christmas, um, mashup event, um.
Do, do you make a profit on the rodeo? To help sustain you guys, I mean?
For the chamber, not necessarily, right? We're only pulling the admission fees, and frankly, I mean, ten dollars is asking a lot already. I mean, we, we've talked about pulling a little bit more, but unfortunately, you just, I mean, for the Silver State Stampede in Elko, they, they charge twenty-five dollars, and they have gate management, unfortunately, last year. Um, before the rodeo even started, we had about a hundred people that had entered without even paying, so it, it gets kind of hard, especially the way that our arena is set up down there, so.
Yeah, and then we have a back entrance back there and they all have to sneak in, it's like a ten-dollar entry fee and they have to sneak in.
Yeah, it's very unfortunate, but I mean, we try our hardest to pull as many funds as possible.
Yeah, do you guys do your own concessions or?
No, no, and that's all through either the church or the volunteer fire department.
So you work with other?
Yep, yep.
So, uh, how come, so Austin Chamber, thirty-five thousand, Battle Mountain Chamber's thirty.
Mm-hmm.
Why, I mean, why would you be asking more than what Battle Mountain's asking?
Well, Battle Mountain has a lot more pool for memberships and different sponsorship opportunities. Um, I would love to say that we could stay equal, but unfortunately, we don't have as many resources as what, um, the Battle Mountain Chamber of Commerce does. Um, our goal, like I said, our goal is to get as many members as possible, but, I mean, even with the dues that we have, um, our board is currently reassessing what our, our fees are for our membership dues. I'm pretty sure, right now it's forty dollars, um, for your general, and then, you know, if you wanna do advertising and stuff like that, it's, it's a hundred. So, I mean, it's, it's very minimal, and when you do the math on it, it's not enough to sustain us as a whole, but we're working pretty.
Yeah, I mean, if you, I think they have a hundred and sixty, Battle Mountain has a hundred and sixty members, I believe. If you could pull even forty or fifty of them from here to help you, would be substantial for you.
I mean, honestly, it's still Lander County, right?
Yeah.
And that's why I think some of the sponsors, like these, like, like you said, Marigold, NGM, SMD, all these, I mean, it's still Lander County. GeoThermal, what about GeoThermal?
Yep, or Matt, they're really good about it, um, they help us with funds.
Have they, what did, so what'd they fund you last year? How much did they give you?
Two thousand.
And you use most of those funds to help for the events, so, as well, right?
Yeah, and then also just our, our prizes and different stuff like that, so.
Yeah, who, who pays for the majority of your prizes for your rodeo?
Those are our sponsorships.
Okay.
So look at it, your, your profit and loss here for the last year, um, you know, you're looking at a gross profit of a little over thirty thousand, does that sound right? So, but we're, you're spending almost ten thousand on advertising, which I, I get it, you're in the business to get people, can you? I mean, the expenditures for advertising and marketing are, are seven thousand, two hundred, and the website ads, is that Facebook ads or?
Yeah, so we also, um, do a lot of geo-fencing, I don't know if you're familiar with that, that's very expensive, but it's huge. Um, we're able to see over three hundred thousand impressions, that's within a four hundred mile radius of Austin. So, I mean, we're targeting, without geo-fencing, we wouldn't have been able to sustain the, the rodeo and grow it the way that we have. I can use an instance, so for one year, we weren't able to, um, do geo-fencing, do two funding for our wine walk, and we took a probably about a hundred percent loss that year, just from not being able to, you know, get a broad one. We're able to pull people from, I mean, we're able to pull people all the way from Nebraska for our rodeo, which is insane, so.
Yeah, and are you looking this next year to be spending that amount on advertising, almost ten thousand dollars?
Um, yeah, but we've also pulled, um, a lot of different funds, Travel Nevada, um, they're, it's up in the air when they're able to give their funds, and if they, you know, feel that it's necessary, but for this year, I do believe that they said that they have quite a bit of money set aside for us, so that's good.
And they cost share that with the convention and tourism in Lander County, right?
Correct, yep.
So it's all paid for between the two of them?
Yeah, it's, yeah, yeah, if it's available, um, I wanna say it was last year, they were, only gave us a thousand dollars from.
Like convention and tourism or Travel Nevada?
Travel Nevada.
And did convention and tourism give you any last year?
Uh, yeah, convention and tourism, they did, yep, I think they gave us five thousand, and that was to help with, you know, getting raffle prizes and.
So they did pay for raffle prizes?
Yep, yep.
Interesting.
Yep, so, um, it just, it just is dependent on if it shows, you know, your heads and beds, and if you can prove that, and what kind of, you know, funds it'll generate for our community.
Miranda, do you know what the total amount was you received in grants outside of Lander County last year?
I think it was, uh, eight thousand?
Eight thousand?
Nine thousand, maybe? I don't, I don't have that on hand, I'm sorry.
Um, can I ask you one thing? Do you, like, when you do your wine walk, which I've been at and is, is fun, um, do, do you get sponsored, like your wine glasses and stuff like that too?
No, we have not.
That's a good idea too, cause you could get, like, one of them to put their advertisement on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that'll give you a little more money.
Yeah.
Yes, we have done it.
And did.
I, I'll help you.
Yeah, for sure.
Well, that's awesome, thank you. Yeah, cause those little things, sometimes it's, it's, you, you know, you don't think of them when you're doing them, cause I know you're one person and, and it's hard to get volunteers down there, but.
It is very hard.
So a lot of times, if you just pick the phone up and say, hey, can you sponsor that, you'll, you'll, you'll be surprised what you get.
Yeah, for sure.
She's been lucky that, um, Round Mountain Gold has set her up an account at the grocery store, and a lot of, they can order a lot of their food supplies and things like that through Round Mountain Gold and that, at the grocery store over there in Round Mountain or Hadley.
Yep.
And.
And whatever they don't have or they don't have available, that's what you guys see on the, you know, the extra food expenditures or whatever that are on the line items for these, so.
They probably spend, what, about five thousand a year on supplies through that?
I would say, yeah, it's five thousand that we're granted every year. I would say outside of that, we probably spend, I would say, another two grand on stuff that they cannot provide, so.
You solicit the businesses there too, for, I mean, for membership?
Yeah. They, they don't.
Carvers and?
Yeah, yeah, they, yeah, yeah.
So you, you, how many, I'm just curious, how many members do you have, do you know?
I think we have fifty-three.
Fifty-three. Are those on your website?
Uh, yes.
Okay, awesome, thanks.
Okay, then my last question is, keeping consistent with our policies, we asked that our grant applicants start, you know, start decreasing the amount. So if you, we gave you three or thirty-six thousand and change last year, so they asked this year should be less, some down, some were around thirty-two thousand.
Correct, um, so this year, we're asking just on the basis of having that support for our event and making sure that it, you know, the rodeo really stays where it, where we can be successful with it. Um, and then in the future, we do have it planned, you know, um, by year five, we have showing eighteen thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars, so.
You think that's, I mean, I.
That's my goal.
Oh, well, I hope you make it.
That's my goal.
That's awesome, if you make it, that's great.
Yeah, if I, if I become successful at it, I would be very proud, but, um, the support from Lander County is huge for us, especially because it does support our community, it supports all of our businesses. I mean, it fills our town up in a town that's trying to survive itself, so.
Okay, any other questions for Miranda? I'll hear a motion if we wanna fund the thirty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-five or do a ten percent less, that is our policy, so whatever the motion is.
I have a motion that we, um, fund the line item number one, under Austinitown Grants, fund the Austin Chamber of Commerce to thirty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you guys so much, we appreciate it.
Two, Austin Historical Society for seven thousand, fifty dollars.
Miranda Tremaine, for the record, I'm the secretary of the Austin Historical Society and.
For the record, I'm still an active member of the Austin Historical Society, I don't know if I should abstain from voting or not.
None of the money goes to you, right?
No, it all just goes directly to pay bills.
You can still vote on it because you disclosed.
Okay.
Okay, any questions?
Yep, um, I, you guys haven't used all your funds for that either, so I'm just curious, what expenditures do you guys have coming up to use those funds by July? Do you want me to answer that?
If you would like to.
Okay, um, realize that when we put in for the grants, that you guys asked us at every one of them, it, our fiscal year runs through June thirtieth, and so we're still running money for the expenses for the utilities and stuff, and we bill them in quarterly. So we still have two more quarters worth of billing to do for the utilities and, and the internet and all that stuff. So that's why we haven't used, that's why all of these different groups haven't used all their. I know that, I'm just very. Yeah, but actually because we have, uh, had a really mild winter, our power bill's down a little bit this year, which is really nice.
And everyone's different, actually, some people submit monthly, some submit quarterly, some till the end of the year, so not everyone does it the same.
And there's not a paid position there, so.
Yeah.
All of it's volunteer on when it can be, you know.
Open, yeah.
Open up and everybody can vote on it and make sure that we have everything correct.
You can do the museum, right? Yeah. 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 Do they apply for any other brands? Um, no. No.
Any other questions?
And that's just for our, you know, for our utilities, and we were able to drop that quite a bit, getting cheaper internet, so.
And then we went from a hundred and twenty a month to fifty-two a month. I might have one more question, Ryan.
Okay.
And yes, we did ask for less money this year. What'd you guys ask for last year?
He was ten.
Ten, yeah. So you're requesting seven thousand, fifty, I swear I saw somewhere else on here where it said sixty-two hundred.
We funded eight thousand, five hundred, ten dollars last year.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, so up, it says seven thousand. Oh, Andrea had a typo, sorry. Yeah, I was just saying, I thought it was like, it says seven thousand, fifty in one spot and it says sixty-two in the other, so, are we sixty-two or seventy thousand? Seventy, seven thousand, five, fifty. Andrea had a typo, it's the first year. That's okay, I just, I just wanted to clarify, cause I'm like, um, it says two different. She had a typo, sorry about that. Those are easy.
Okay, so if there's no more questions, I'll hear a motion.
I will make a motion to approve number two, Austin Historical Society for seven thousand, fifty dollars.
Motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Thank you guys, appreciate it.
I would like to see the Austin Museum move into the same status that the Battle Mountain Museum is in, where we don't have to, um, come in every year and ask for the utilities and that stuff, just for special needs projects. I think that, you know, we just, because it's, that's all what the museum ever asks for, is just for the utilities and the internet and that.
Yeah, so that's something maybe we can adjournize for later. So we'll continue with three, Austin Medical Clinic for sixty-six hundred dollars.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Stephanie White, practice manager for Nevada Health Centers. We are asking this year for sixty-six hundred, thirty-six hundred for rent and three thousand for utilities. Last year, we were granted twelve-five, and we were able actually to find another grant to use for our telephone and internet. So we've been in, our account has been in contact with Lakin, and we've been, um, paying that back or not paying, so that we were making that up. So we didn't use what we asked for last year as well. So we're about half this year, and then just to give a little bit of an update, we are still open the first, third, and fifth Thursdays from, um, eight to noon, doing telehealth appointments as walk-ins. And we have been having our mobile van down there once a month, it's usually there the last Tuesday and Wednesday of the month. Definitely having more luck, that usually fills up, we have a, a MD on the van that's there, so she's seeing patients. We still don't get as many telehealth, um, people just aren't as eager to do that, but we are still open and available for those if there's somebody in the community that needs it. And finally, um, we do now have a permanent provider in Carlin. She is fresh out of school, she's a nurse practitioner, so we're just trying to get her trained up. Once she gets a little more comfortable and feels comfortable on her own in Austin, then we can, um, provide the services, sending her down there a couple of days a month too. So hopefully, within the next four, six months, we have another provider down there as well.
All right, thank you, Stephanie. Does the board have any questions?
You'll still continue to send Dr. Abby, right?
Yeah, the mobile van will, their plan is to continue to come once a month. Um, I was also gonna note, like, there was twice this winter that they used the clinic instead of bringing the van because of snow. So they did still try to come, weather permitting, um, if they could just bring a car versus the van, but they always try and bring, bring the van if they can. But they still try to come whenever they can, and we would still continue to have her there even if we're sending another provider.
Okay, good.
Okay, if there's no more questions, I'll hear a motion.
We'll make a motion on number three for the Austin Medical Clinic to approve six thousand, six hundred dollars. I'll second it.
And a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks. Probably not here yet. Okay, we'll move into one point, uh, five capital construction projects, discussion of possible action regarding. Uh, discussion of possible action regarding the CCP Fund Zero Five Five, and in that fund we have, A, engineering fees in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, B, flood levy project rollover in the amount of fifty thousand, C, BM Westside rollover in the amount of four million, eight hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, D, community improvement projects in the amount of four million, eight hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, E, safe routes to school, phase four rollover and reduced, one million, two hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and forty-four dollars, in the amount. in the amount of one million nine hundred and eighty thousand, F, Lander County Road Maintenance in the amount of two hundred thousand, G, library rollover and reduced by a hundred and fifty thousand, in the amount of one hundred thousand, H, I A D Sound Wall rollover in the amount of three hundred thousand, I, Golf Course Back Nine in the amount of six million, J, twenty, two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six preventative maintenance, Austin, Kingston, Gilman Springs, and Reese River Roads in the amount of two million eight hundred and nine thousand four hundred and fifty dollars, K, Battle Mountain Firehouse rollover and increased in the amount of twenty-five million, L, new event center rollover in the amount of ten million, M, emergency project line in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We'll start with A, engineering fees in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars.
This is what we budget every year for engineering fees.
How much did we go over last year, or this year?
We haven't.
We haven't gone over yet?
No, so these fees are, are, um, unseen projects, like when we brought all them projects before you guys, um, for our community improvement, which was the footbridge and, um, the back nine on the golf course, things that we don't have budgeted at that time. We can start the engineering on that, and then when the, when you guys do budget it, we have the engineering done somewhere. It's behind.
So with CCP Bill, let me ask you this. We've read it all in. Can, if there's any particular point that we want to discuss, can we discuss and then make one a motion to approve as read into the record, so we don't have to make, uh, teen motions?
Yeah, I don't think it's, it was any benefit to going back through.
Okay. So we'll address it that way, guys. I'm not going to read every single one in, so if that's how it is, we've put it aside for future use if needed. Uh, if anybody has any particular questions on any of the ones that I've read in, let's discuss it now and ask those questions.
Okay, on the sound wall, where are we putting the sound wall?
So this sound wall is better request to NDOT, and it would be from our high school kind of on down, um, to block some of the community from the freeway and the noise and, and potentially a wreck coming into their backyard.
The back side of Gold Creek.
Yeah.
Yeah. Bert, would that just be an extension of the existing one?
Correct.
Okay.
We would like to extend it on both sides, you know, from the school and to Gold Creek.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, my only question is on the event center. We have a rollover of ten million. Didn't we just, didn't we, I thought it was more than that.
I thought it was fourteen or something like that.
That's what I was thinking, too.
So we're.
I know we had initially started there, but then we had that meeting and we discussed increasing.
Get raised up another four million.
We've never fully funded it in the budget workshop, and so this year, we're fully funding the firehouse. So this is just a portion of the event center.
Okay.
And we're going to have to do that over a three-year.
Okay. All right, that answered my question.
Okay, and then, um, the library, we're dropping it? Is that because we don't need to do all the construction and stuff on it this year?
No, that's because we, um, we're kind of front-loaded now with all the books and everything. When we separated from Oco County, um, and did the tri-county and went to our own, we had to buy all of our own books and our audio books and everything. So now that we kind of got that front-loaded, we don't need as much money to continue that going.
Okay.
So Safe House to School Phase Four, what, how many total phases are we working? Is it just four or?
No, we, we will have more to come to you guys in future budget hearings, you know, I think we want to try to get the tree streets and, and continue attaching sidewalks throughout our community.
They sure are nice, I can tell you that.
Yeah.
Phase five is potentially going to be grant-funded by a grant, so that's why they put it in.
Okay.
That's how it works.
And the flood levy, we just keep rolling that over?
So the flood levy, the fifty thousand, the, I think it's fifty, the ten, I think. Um, it is for, we're doing monitoring all the way from the headwaters of Reese River all the way down to show what our flows actually are. Um, so we can, that project's a twenty-year, a twenty-year project. If you're about six or seven years into it, so we continue rolling that over in case there's any maintenance on them flow gauges.
Okay, hopefully we don't end up with one of those years like we did back in the eighties.
Well, even, even if we did, the, they're showing that we have similar flow rates to, uh, to the Humboldt River, and the Reese clearly doesn't flow anything near that, so.
Yeah, that flood levy project, that's, that's, that's a whole, that's a whole.
That's been a big project forever.
Yeah, uh, the, the process that we're in, I think, is probably going to be our best answer for the Army Corps of Engineers, but it's a twenty-year process to get that done.
Okay, any other questions?
No.
Okay, I'll hear a motion to approve A through M as read in and discussed.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
All second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll move into one point six, Building and Equipment, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Buildings and Equipment Fixed Acts, Assets, Fund Zero Two Nine, A, Safety Equipment in the Amount of Two Hundred and Fifty-five Thousand, B, Industrial Park Rollover in the Amount of Seven Point Five Million, C, Austin Community Center Fully Grant-Funded Rollover in the Amount of Six Hundred Thirty-eight Thousand, D, Austin Medical Center Fully Grant-Funded Rollover in the Amount of Eight Hundred Thousand, Lander County Sheriff's Department Building Roof Replacement and HVAC Replacement Rollover in the Amount of Six Hundred Thousand, F, Lander County Sheriff's Department One Fully Equipped Patrol Vehicle in the Amount of Seventy-two thousand five hundred, G, Austin Road and Bridge New Pickup in the Amount of Seventy Thousand, H, Austin Road and Bridge Ten-Wheel Dump Truck with Snowplow and Dump Truck Rollover in the Amount of Two Hundred and Sixty Thousand, I, Austin Road and Bridge Tractor Truck in the Amount of Two Hundred and Thirty Thousand, J, uh, Battle Mountain Road and Bridge Two New Pickups in the Amount of Hundred and Forty Thousand. That's probably total, right?
Yeah, correct.
Seventy thousand each, okay. Uh, K, uh, Battle Mountain Road and Bridge Four New Sanders in the Amount of Forty-four Thousand, uh, L, uh, Battle Mountain Road and Bridge Lawnmower in the Amount of Six Thousand One Hundred, M, Landfield Two Thousand Twenty-five New Caterpillar Nine Seventy-three Track Loader in the Amount of Seven Hundred and Fifty Thousand, N, Airport Fuel Truck Lease in the Amount of Seventy Thousand, uh, O, Recreation Center New Forklift in the Amount of Thirty Thousand, and P, Town of Austin Boundary Line Rollover and Reduce Nine Hundred Thousand in the Amount of One Hundred Thousand. So that was a lot of words. Um, so, uh, we'll do the same. We'll open them all up, so if anybody has any particular ones they want to discuss, talk about, we'll do that, and then we'll prove everything in, in motion.
Okay, so when are we going to start building these buildings in Austin?
Which item are you on?
On C and D.
Okay, C and D?
Yeah.
Uh, the community center, it is supposed to be going out to bid, um, so we're hoping that, that that starts, that that starts going. The, um.
The medical center and the community center combined.
They're all one of the same.
Right, they're all combined, right, so.
Yes, um, the only reason they have not went out to bid and we decided we're going, we're going to just move and then will, is, we've been waiting on responses from NDOT. Um, their number one guy that was in charge of all their permitting retired, and then there was a handoff there, and there's been a shuffle of, of new questions that we thought we had answered, so that, that's been holding us up. But we're just going to put it out to bid now, and then come back on the backside and have to answer to NDOT. But we want to try to get a contractor in town, gets, gets him ground broken and makes some, make some moves. So that has been the holdup on that.
Okay, I do have to say, at our last meeting, when we voted to do away with that grant and just go ahead and fully fund it, I don't know if Aaron sent you guys the paper that they had done, but we really dodged a bullet by switching it over and doing what we did.
Truly, and this goes back to it. I tell you guys, they don't tell us what the, what the hooks in the grant are until the last minute. So we come before you guys, we're telling you guys, we got this grant, we're good, and then we come find out what the hooks are. It, there's nothing we can do about that. It's just.
Yeah, truly, Austin dodged a bullet by us voting that way, I have to say. We made the right choice.
If you're interested, um, you can have Aaron send it to you.
Yeah, I want it.
Yeah, and then, um, what do we need a forklift at the rec center for?
I think that one, I read, when I was reading it, and don't get me wrong, it's like, the, I think at the rec center, they have a pretty big forklift in there. And I think what they're, what, if I read it right, then this, this forklift, it's, it's too big for the area. It's, it's supposed to be picking up pallets and. I mean, if, hopefully I read that right, Sean, I think.
And it's not ours.
It sounds like they're, they want a smaller forklift that's safer to use. I think the one that's in the proposal is electric, so they'll just be able to plug it in. There won't be no gas or propane or, I mean.
Well, and it's a small forklift for the shop we built them, and then like, all their, their blowups, all their stuff, all their vents are on pallets, and they're all up high on powder rat.
Okay.
Um, with this small forklift, the girls there will actually be able to use it themselves without calling the road bridge guys over, so they'll be able to get stuff down and move it to the park for the vents. Um, so it takes time, manpower, money.
Is it electric?
No, it's gas.
Well, I think the.
There's a proposal too. One's electric, one's.
Yeah, I think, I think I seen one in the proposal. The one, I, I, I think this one was for electric, and I think there was an option if you wanted to get a used one that was propane. I, I think that's the ways.
I was going to say, I thought propane and.
But I think this, I thought this one was for electrical, and I think it's a great idea, because taking a big forklift in a, in a smaller area, you're going to hit something, it's a safety hazard, so it.
We can't see that center shop too, with, uh, they just have powder rat or, uh, do the same thing.
Okay.
And these girls are going to be pass-trained and certified before they run it? Okay.
So the current forklift that we have is not Lander County's, it's Cashman Equipment's, but they, in, in kind of an agreement, we allow them to store equipment in our yard when they need to come through town and they just need a place to drop stuff, so they leave a forklift that we can use as, as needed, but it's a monster, and it's not even ours, so.
Yeah, if something happens to it, we're.
Uh, Sheriff's Department, on your, you did the HVAC, but you rolled it over, you didn't use it? Are you just waiting? If it breaks down, you're just, is there a contingency, is that if you have a problem and need to replace it, is there? Is that what you're looking at?
Robert Cook for the Sheriff's Office. So this is twofold. One is the HVAC, the last HVAC unit we haven't replaced, and it's for the roof, and we haven't, uh, replaced the roof, which if we replace the roof, we need to do the HVAC same time.
Okay.
Um, we're getting to the point, we're starting to get leaks again, so I think we're going to have to start looking at doing that. I don't know if this cost is going to be the same in the future. We may have to budget next year for additional costs.
Okay. Uh, don't go anywhere. Another question. So Sheriff's Department vehicle, uh, one patrol vehicle, are you retiring one?
We've retired two.
Okay.
Uh, and this, this is based on our replacement plan that's in our budget, and looking at, um, mileage and wear and tear on the vehicles, we could not justify two, which we normally do every year, which you graciously funded. Um, but because of our lack of staffing, we haven't had as many miles and so forth, so one is needed.
All right, thank you. Um, and then, our track loader at the dump is pretty poor condition, if I'm hearing right.
So our current compactor that's out there, it has nine thousand hours on the, on the current hour meter, which has been changed out. We think it has around eleven or twelve thousand hours, and, and it's having trouble climbing the hill at this point.
And that's the main, that's the main piece of equipment out there. That's the one they're using every day, right?
It's the one that compacts everything, so our, our landfill life dies at a pretty big rate when you, when you can't compact it.
Okay.
Now, let me see, the town boundary, we're reducing it that much because we paid all that out and we're actually getting really, really close?
Yep, I think we're right on the, you know, as you guys were, were aware, we're kind of taking the final steps.
Yeah, okay.
Have, have we always leased a truck for the airport, or have we ever owned?
Oh, no, that, uh, so, we need to buy a new fuel truck. The fuel truck that's out there is in the seventies. What, one of our problems we have is when we have these fire tankers come in, the air tankers, um, it takes us twenty minutes to load them, an additional twenty minutes to go refill the truck. The truck's only two thousand gallon truck, they take three thousand gallons of fuel, so they're diverting tankers to Idaho to get fuel to come fight fires down here. So, um, we won't, not knowing exactly what we need, we want to rent one and see kind of what the, for the first year, and then we'll be back in front of you guys to actually budget one to keep, and, you know, we get some.
Thanks.
Okay, any other questions on Building and Equipment? I'll hear a motion.
Make a motion that we approve one point six, Buildings and Equipment as Read, uh, for Equipment Fixed Assets Fund Zero Two Nine.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll move into one point seven, Buildings and Equipment, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Buildings and Equipment/Repair and Maintenance Fund Zero Two Nine. Did they just, is this like the same fund?
Yes, so the, the first one is for new stuff, and then this is all for repairs on this one.
Got you, got you. Okay, Bill, okay, thank you. Uh, so, A, Battle Mountain Senior Center Rooftop HVAC in the Amount of Fifteen Thousand, B, Search and Rescue HVAC System in the Amount of Thirty-One Thousand, C, Final Two HVAC Replacement Civic Center in the Amount of Forty-Three Thousand, D, Battle Mountain Airport, uh, Office Heating and Cooling System in the Amount of Thirteen Thousand Five Hundred, E, Battle Mountain Road and Bridge Shop New Roof in the Amount of Fifty Thousand, F, Search and Rescue Shop Spray Foam Insulation in the Amount of Thirty-Seven Thousand Five Hundred, G, Civic Center New Roof in the Amount of Two Hundred Thousand, H, Austin Courthouse HVAC System Replaced in the Amount of Twenty-Four Thousand Five Hundred, Aus- uh, I, Austin Town Hall HVAC System Replacement in the Amount of Twenty-Seven Thousand Five Hundred, and J, Austin Senior Center Fridge, Austin Senior Center Fridge Cooler System Replacement in the Amount of Eight Thousand Five Hundred. So we'll do the same. We'll open all items. If there's anyone that you want to talk about, we'll discuss it and get questions answered.
So the plan in the courthouse is to take the three furnaces and all the window units out and make it one big heater that heats everything?
That's a deferred call, Bob.
Yes, I think so, yes.
Yeah, because we've got, what, three furnaces and window units everywhere?
Yeah, trying to upgrade it, or it's, uh, Colt Nelson for the record, trying to upgrade it for it's more efficient and modernized.
Each office will have thermostat?
Yep.
Okay, all right. And we're going to put it upstairs in the back of Billy's office where the one is, or are we going to put it down in the coffee room?
I don't know the exact details of where it's going, but at, at the same time, we've, we've had the, the, uh, our actual company that does a lot of the workforce, Hilltop, look at it, and, and they're the ones who gave us the quote of what would work for the building.
Perfect. All right, and then the town hall, we definitely need that. I think we still have that old diesel furnace in there.
Yep.
And no A, A.C. at all.
Yeah, that was the upgrade to really, really polish that building off to. All of these are just asset, uh, improvements that are really taking us to the next level with all the buildings. I mean, we're right at the last bit of it. I was telling Bert that we put a lot of, uh, funds into all of our assets, and this was the last part of that preventative and predictive maintenance that we're doing.
And then on B, Search and Rescue HVAC System, is that in that green Quonset hut?
Yeah.
That's why they're insulated.
Yep.
Do they have a heater in there now?
No, so, uh, so I'm part of the Lepsi Board, just to disclose that, so that, uh, Items B and F are the same building. Uh, two different companies doing the work. Uh, I believe Hilltop is doing the HVAC system, and then there's another company coming to do the spray foam. So they're the same building, um, but two different companies, and I've coordinated, talked with Glenn Duval on that, coordinated. If this does pass, that we coordinate, that we do it at the correct time, so we don't spray the foam in and then come in and have to do the HVAC, so he's on it. He's, I've already had that discussion with him. But this is for, uh, the Lepsi building, and, uh, we need this because there's, there's nothing in there right now. And as of right now, I mean, if we have that, that area with, with HVAC in there, we're able to have just a better command center. Uh, also, we'll be able to do training in that shop area.
So the Lepsi building is the search and rescue, the same building?
Yeah, same, same building.
Right.
So, yeah, be in effort for the same building.
Okay.
And we didn't want to put the HVAC in without having the spray foam. It doesn't make any sense. It'd all go right out.
Yeah, that's why I talked with them, to say, we'll make sure we get in the right order, so.
Yeah, okay, great. Any other questions on one point seven? If not, we'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass one point seven, Buildings and Equipment's Discussion. Oh, sorry, guys, it's been a long day. A through J.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next call. Uh, one point eight, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Fund Three Eight Zero Airport Capital Improvement, A, Austin General Engineering Services in the Amount of Ten Thousand, B, Austin Airport Runway Special Approach Rollover in the Amount of Sixty-four Thousand Seven Hundred Forty, C, Austin Airport Replacement, or Austin Airport Replace Automated Weather Observing System, AWAS, in the Amount of Two Hundred and Thirty Thousand, D, Austin Rehab Runway and Realigned Taxiway Design Only Rollover in the Amount of Two Hundred Thousand, E, Austin Rehab Runway and Realigned Taxiway Bidding and Construction in the Amount of Three Million Five Hundred Thousand, F, Battle Mountain General Engineering Services in the Amount of Ten Thousand, G, Battle Mountain Construct County Hangars Design Only Rollover in the Amount of One Hundred Seventeen Thousand Three Hundred Thirty-four Dollars, H, Battle Mountain Construct County Hangars Bidding and Construction in the Amount of One Million, I, Battle Mountain Install New Runway Four Dash Two Two Pappas and Reels Replace Beacon Tower, Bidding and Construction Rollover in the Amount of Six Hundred Twenty-five Thousand, and J, Battle Mountain Replace Automated Weather Observing System, AWAS, Rollover and Increased Eighty Thousand in the Amount of Two Hundred Forty Thousand. So we'll open all those items and discuss how, whatever questions you guys have on.
Yeah, we do have our, our engineer, uh, David Myers on, online to probably answer to most of these. He's much more well-versed in this than, than we are.
Good afternoon, David, by four minutes.
Good afternoon, y'all. Good to hear from y'all.
Yeah, likewise. So, commission have any questions? Uh, we have David on the phone, and we can ask.
Okay, this one hangar is that hangar that we had talked about last year that was going to be large enough to put bigger planes in, right?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, and are we going to have to roll that over for more money in the future, or is that going to be enough to cover it?
Based on estimates that we've had in talking with the, uh, some of the building contractors, in particular the ones who did the hangars back in twenty eighteen, um, they think that million dollars should be right about where we can see that cost come in. Um, we, we won't actually go to bid for that. We, we won't actually go to bid for that until April of next year, but because we're straddling the, the county's fiscal year, we wanna make sure we get it in this one. So we won't spend much of that in twenty twenty, fiscal year twenty-six, but we do wanna get it on the books.
Okay. Molly, any question?
Okay, any other questions? If not, I'll hear a motion on one point eight, A through J.
Make a motion that we approve line or item one point eight as read, uh, regarding fund three eighty airport capital improvement.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, we'll move to two, departmental.
Mission, if you do need anything else, just give me a call, I wish you the best of luck on your next few days.
Awesome, thanks David.
Thanks, everyone.
We'll see ya. Two, departmental information and request, two point one, commission discussion and possible action. A, there are no changes to operation, so, that's, so basically, everything is what it was last year.
Yes, it's the same.
So, if there's no questions, I'll hear a motion.
I, motion that we approve two point one, commission funding with no changes.
So, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll move to two point two, clerk, discussion and possible action, uh, there is an increase to operation by five thousand dollars. Now, I want an explanation of why we have an increase.
The reason I have an increase, this is Molly Gonzalez for the record, is, um, due to postage. As of January first, AB four thirty-two went into effect where we have to send letters out, um, to everybody that goes to DMV. There are an automatic voter registration and we have other agencies that are also becoming automatic voter registrations. So everyone that goes there will now get a letter from us, um, we average about six to ten a day. And we also have to provide, um, postage paid back to embalts.
I don't like all those AB sometimes.
I, I don't either, I definitely don't either.
Alright, so, any further questions, Robert Quick? I will hear a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass two point two for an increase of five thousand dollars for the clerk.
Can we clarify that, sorry, her, her postage line went up to five thousand, but her increase is actually only three thousand one hundred and fifty.
Three thousand one fifty?
Put that in your motion, please.
It says on the agenda five thousand, yeah.
Yeah, but it's actually only an increase 'cause she already had some budgeted.
So we're only doing three thousand one hundred and fifty?
Yeah.
Okay, I make a motion to pass two point two to increase of operations for the clerk for three thousand one hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, thank you. Uh, two point three, treasurer, discussion and possible action, there's an increase to operations by five hundred dollars. Alright, treasurer, why are we increasing the five hundred dollars?
It's for my cellphone.
Yeah, that she bought.
Let's see here. Really, it's for your cellphone?
Yep.
She didn't have a county phone before, but when everyone bought the county phones, that's why.
Alrighty, so if there's no questions, I'll hear a motion on two point three.
Make a motion that we approve item two point three for treasurer, uh, increase by five hundred dollars.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, two point four, county manager, discussion and possible action, there are no changes to operation. So if there's no questions, I'll hear a motion.
Make a motion that we approve two point four, county manager, uh, no changes to operations.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, five, assessor, discussion and possible action, uh, A, there's a decrease to operations by twenty-five hundred dollars, now we're talking, that's what. Good job, Laura. Anybody have any questions for Laura?
How did you save money?
Laura, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Uh, we actually just reevaluating some of the things, some of our, um, dues and subscriptions went down a little bit because some things are incorporated into our new program and just kinda here and there, just some different things, like I decreased dues and subscriptions by quite a bit because just we don't have some of those things anymore, so. It just, uh, kind of, uh, just took a look at everything and cut where I could, 'cause every little bit, I guess, helps, right?
Yeah, for sure. Alright, so if there's no questions, I'll hear a motion on two point five.
I'll make a motion on two point five to decrease the assessor's operations by two thousand five hundred dollars.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Laura. Uh, we'll move into two point six, finance, discussion and possible action, A, there's an increase to operations by three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars.
So, like, consulting for the record, this is for audit, um, could we just approve the renewal for the two years and an increase by this much for FY twenty-five's audit?
Okay.
Yeah, I just looked at some things here.
You know, we've been using the same firm for however many years?
Yeah, for a few years now.
So they understand what we're doing and.
Okay, if there's no further questions, I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass two point six for finance and an increase to operations by three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, is there a mo, uh, second?
I'll second.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
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 We'll go to two point seven, building and planning, discussion and possible action, there's a decrease to operation by nine thousand dollars.
I wanna tell you guys that, uh, before Colt gets started here, man, he came in swinging at me, I had, he has me pretty scared, he had like a couple hundred thousand dollar cut. They, they, some of what you guys approved previously, the job that they have done on preventative maintenance has saved this county hundreds of thousands of dollars already. And with savings that are to come, that I'm sure that he can, he can further explain to you guys that, um, I expect to see next year, you guys seen some awesome stuff and that's solely to Colt and Glenn and, and his department, being focused on taking care of the bottom dollar, so, thank you Colt, truly appreciate it.
Thanks, Bert. Yeah, so this one was cut, uh, the nine thousand, code enforcement was not, we weren't using that, so we cut that out and we took another, uh, three thousand off repair and maintenance, 'cause we're just not using that much of it, so, that's where the nine thousand savings was on that one.
Nice.
So, I got a question, on the code enforcement, what do you mean you weren't using it, what is it?
It was, it was six thousand dollars allotted quite a few years ago for stuff in Kingston and Austin where they couldn't go and, and I go, you know, and so we don't, we just don't use that. We don't have a person there that is abatable and it was just on the books for quite a while, I think, uh, even last year, we had a question about what is this, we never use it. So I just took it off, it's just a waste of funds, really, at this point.
At one time, they had a part-time employee go rock out there.
Yep.
Okay, if there's no questions, uh, further questions for Colt, I'll hear a motion.
Make a motion that we approve item two point seven, uh, building and planning for a decrease in operations by nine thousand dollars.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, we'll go to two point eight, building maintenance, discussion and possible action, there's a decrease, uh, of operations by forty thousand dollars. How were you able to cut down a trial of fifteen thousand?
Uh, it's, it was really just overinflated, Brian, it was at thirty-five thousand a couple of years ago and we'd been watching it pretty close and we probably used maybe fifteen, not even fifteen already this year, so, uh, the twenty thousand's gonna be plenty.
Okay.
Well, if we have extra money, can we send those women to Battle, to Austin more than once a month?
That's a whole nother discussion that, that you guys could do, yeah, I mean, we, we're sending them, I think it's twice a month right now.
Nope, once a month.
Is it just once a month?
Once a month, right at the first of the month.
Yeah, I mean, sure.
Yeah, that's something we can put on a future agenda.
Yeah.
Discuss it. Okay, if there's no further questions, I'll hear a motion on two point eight.
Make a motion that we approve item two point eight, uh, building maintenance for a decrease in operations by forty thousand dollars.
Motion, and is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, we'll move to two point nine, thanks Colt, uh, recorder, discussion and possible action, A, there's an increase to operations by five thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. Do we have a recorder in here?
Nope.
Where's the increase here?
She increased her dues and subscriptions by four hundred and fifty and her maintenance and contract agreements by five thousand. I'm like, I know she was on here. I was in another meeting.
I should've.
So, I'm telling her she's missing out on including.
Is this because of the new program that we're running through the internet for like looking up properties and all that?
It's not a new program, um, I now have Tyler Payments, so people can buy copies online.
Oh, wow, okay.
And certified copies, but it's all through Tyler still.
But, but that increased at five thousand dollars for them to be able to buy it?
Um, it's, no, it's been a lot of back and forth on that, but, um, there was other departments paying part of our bills that we didn't know about, so Tyler finally got those divvied out correctly between them and the clerks, so my, mine went up.
Tyler's billing's kinda tricky, so like, if they're, if they're on the same type of Tyler software as the other, some of the other county offices, they bill together, so it was, it was kinda, it's been a struggle to get the billing correct.
Alright, um, so on your statement here, I have a total increase of five thousand four hundred and fifty dollars in my twenty twenty-five, twenty-six budget on including CPI classification and grade changes, bonuses or addition interim employees or wages, are, are there any additional interim employees or wages?
No.
Okay. Alright, um, if there's no further questions, I'll hear a motion.
Make a motion that we approve item two point nine, a recorder for an increase in operations by five thousand four hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Motion is seconded by Alicia, all in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, two point ten, sheriffs, discussion and possible action, there's a decrease to operations by twenty-four thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars, let me make sure I read that right, there is a decrease.
How does that happen?
Holy cow. Um, and then capital outlay request, um, A, three drones rollover in the amount of twenty-seven thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. B, mobile data computer EOL software replacement rollover and added sixty-nine thousand in the amount of ninety-four thousand. C, training simulator hardware, software as a service rollover in the amount of sixty-five thousand fifty-three dollars. D, copier slash printer main office in the amount of twelve thousand. E, replacement, uh, live scan systems in Battle Mountain and Austin in the amount of forty-eight thousand. Uh, F, rifle replacement project in the amount of thirty-four thousand. G, K nine replacement in the amount of ten thousand. Okay, so some questions I have here. The, so your rifle replacement project, how, so how does that work? I mean, do you, why would you replace rifles other than them being shot out or worn out? Do we use them that much?
No, but if you look at the, uh, information that was provided in that, uh, the rifles are, uh, I believe, without my looking at the information, we got about thirty, forty thousand rounds through, so now we gotta go back in and start replacing springs and, and certain issues on that deal. And we would like to go to a shorter barrel on the rifles, which, uh, we could shorten the barrels and install suppressors on them. Uh, for, not only for the hearing, but they're more usable in close quarters, uh, deals, so we found an outfit that would, uh, take our rifles, replace them, and then also in that bit, I believe, uh, is also the, uh, suppressors.
Do they, do, so this outfit that you're working with Ron, do they give you trade-in value on your old rifles? Do they take it and then give you a value towards those?
Yes.
That's how that works?
Okay.
Robert Quick for the Sheriff's Office, just to be, um, clear on that portion, for the cost that would take to refurbish each rifle, um, with that cost, uh, is about the same as the cost for purchasing new with the trade-ins.
Okay. Um, and then, my other question was on, um, replacement live scan systems in Battle Mountain Austin. So where are the, where are the live scan systems at?
Robert Quick for the Sheriff's Office, so we have two civil live scan machines, one in our Austin substation and one in Battle Mountain. Those are the fingerprint machines that we use for applicants and CCWs and all of that. They are end-of-life software and they, we can't use them.
Okay.
After October of this year.
Okay.
Uh, the training simulator hardware software that rollover, that's what you're gonna put in the new building over here?
Robert Quick for the Sheriff's Office, that's correct, we're, we're just rolling that over until the building's built. We can certainly take it out and then come back if you like, um, or just keep rolling it.
Just keep rolling it.
Okay.
We approved that last year.
And then drones, do we currently have any drones that we're using?
Robert Quick for the Sheriff's Office, we currently have five drones in play for the Sheriff's Office. Um, this was budgeted this year as drones, unfortunately, a statute that was enacted prevents us from purchasing drones from our normal vendor, requires us to purchase from US-made manufacturers, which is probably quadruple the cost. There's a current BDR or an, um, assembly bill out now that will fix that and allow us to purchase.
So we cur, we currently have five?
We currently have five.
So now the three would be eight, why do we need so many drones?
We have drones, uh, that are assigned to pilots, certified pilots, so, um, they take them and use them, maintain their charging. They're also, uh, maintaining their flying hours, so instead of having one that they have to keep coming back to get or come get if they need it, they have it out in the field.
So does basically every deputy have their own drone?
No, five deputies.
Five deputies, but we're buying three more?
Yes, the intent is as many deputies as I can have a drone that are pilots, certified pilots. Have a drone so they can deploy immediately if they need.
So basically, they become part of their patrol unit, so they're out on something, they, and they need the tool, they have it.
Yeah, that's correct.
Alright, any other questions?
Sorry, just, yeah, spotlight guys. Quick question on the canine replacement, uh, what, is this just a frequency of years of service or are they, is there?
Robert Quick for the Sheriff's Office, so our current canine is about ten years old.
Okay.
Um, we've recently had a scare that we thought we, we had torn a ligament on that particular canine, we have one. And, um, he's becoming of the age where that's going to start happening, so we wanted to get up in front just in case we need to replace the dog.
Okay.
And if we don't need to replace them, we'll roll over each year until that happens.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for our Sheriff's Department?
I did wanna just make you guys aware of the two new, um, positions for the.
Oh, no, 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 let's see here, how come that's not on our thing here?
Cause it's in the personnel, so that's not operating.
Oh, yeah, I would've, I would've liked to see like any added positions on our agenda here, so.
Robert Quick for the Sheriff's Office, it is redlined in our budget, um, our budget.
Yeah, so.
It's on page six, but I just, um, we only put that.
Yeah, I do have questions on it, I do remember this now, so it's, uh, so why are we adding two new positions when we can't even fill the positions we have?
Okay, Robert Quick for the Sheriff's Office, so this is a new pro, pilot project that we're gonna, we would like to try for an eighteen-month period. So currently, we struggle, as you all know, to get, uh, qualified applicants for sworn positions. What this will do is allow us to hire civilian-level positions for the jail and, uh, to have limited contact with inmates and work within the jail. And so that serves several purposes, right now, we always have to have a sworn officer in the house of control, um, to interact with the inmates and, and control things there. Well, we have a problem because when we only have one person on and they have a booking or they have to go somewhere else in the facility, we have inmates that are not being watched, so to speak, so we have a security and safety issue there. The other thing is, because we struggle with recruitment, um, what we're looking at for this is to be able to draw those eighteen to twenty-one-year-olds into law enforcement potentially, get them into the facility, get them backgrounded, have them understand what's going on within the facility and then when they become of age, they're able to transfer right over to sworn positions. Uh, that's a big struggle we've had with recruitment, uh, we get individuals that are graduating or that are eighteen, nineteen-years-old that are very interested in law enforcement, but we tell them, see you in three years. And being a small town, they're often mines and other locations doing other things and we can't draw them back in.
Well, I'm not particularly. In favor of adding two new positions, I can just tell you that. There's two more people we have on, insurance purrs is just, yeah, so. Especially when we can't even fill the positions we have. And then. Because if, yes, I just not understanding the whole pilot thing. It's, um, you're bringing civilians into your jail to work with inmates.
So this, these positions would be, they wouldn't be permanent positions, correct? They would be more temporary employees?
Robert Quick for the sheriff's office, so as proposed, this is a pilot program for eighteen months. So, um, if in fact it's not working or the commission doesn't want to continue with the program, then it would end and the funding would end. These are not permanent positions, uh, not involved in the contract at this point or anything. It's to see if it's going to work the way we hope it will work. And just one other note, um. This is one of our ways that we're trying to creatively get qualified applicants for sworn positions. And, um, we kinda took this and the job description that's in our, in our budget that we submitted. We took that from surrounding agencies. Elko and Humboldt have enacted the same kind of program. For trying to draw these younger, uh, individuals in.
Have they been successful with it?
Humboldt, uh, Robert Quick for the sheriff's office, Humboldt just got theirs approved. And, uh, Elko approved this type of position, but they've got civilians in their jail already in a different format.
So the intent of this pilot program is to, that is the intent, to make officers out of these people?
Robert Quick for the sheriff's office, absolutely.
So if they didn't make officers. They wouldn't be fulfilling any other duties or services as civilians or other than officers?
Robert Quick for the sheriff's office, so the job descriptions that's, that's contained in here is offsetting the officers that we have now. To allow them to actually be on the floor with the inmates. And do other jobs while the inmates are still being monitored, uh, for safety and security of the facility. So. As an example, currently if I have an officer working and they get a booking, they have to leave the housing control. Go down to the booking area and spend whatever time it takes to book and process inmates. Leaving the inmates within the housing areas unsupervised. What this would do would be leaving that civilian in the housing control area. And allow them to monitor, continue to monitor the inmates while the officer's on the floor or in another part of the facility.
So they would not be serving in a capacity where they're in consulting or working with people that have opioid addictions or anything like that?
Uh, Robert Quick for the sheriff's office, they, based on the current job description we have, they would have very limited direct inmate contact.
So, so the answer to my question would be no.
Robert Quick for the sheriff's office, I can't guarantee that.
Okay. So I'm not, I'm not in favor of the two positions. That's, that's my stance on this stuff.
I have a question. Uh, you called this a pilot program. I, I don't seem to back it, but I thought we talked about, did you say that this was an eighteen-month program?
Robert Quick for the sheriff's office, correct. It's eighteen-month pilot program.
So you want an eighteen-month pilot program for two employees and us to fund full insurance and full purse? And if somebody does come on, but they don't qualify for what you're saying, then they're done?
Uh, Robert Quick for the sheriff's office, so the intent, uh, if the program continues, the intent would be so we could hire full-time, um, sworn officers. Um, we would be screening during the employment and application process for their intent to move to sworn positions.
So what they're approving today, are they approving for an eighteen-month for two positions or are they approving for a potentially two full-time positions permanently?
No, this, if, Robert Quick for the sheriff's office, this is an eighteen-month program that the commission would have to. Then review and decide if they want to continue this program.
So my question is, are, would these two potential employees be, you know, quote-unquote temporary employees to where they're, maybe they're not getting. Uh, county benefits right away until they're made a, a full-time county employee? So is this maybe, is this a third party that's gonna be like a manpower that brings in temporary? Or is this projected to have these two, uh, on a county, county payroll, so to speak?
Robert Quick for the sheriff's office, this would not be a manpower issue because we still need to conduct the extensive background. In order for these individuals to have access to the information they have. So they would be a county employee, albeit temporary, uh, from the relationship of if the positions are not continued to be funded in the future, that they would be, uh, removed.
Cause I, I do see a benefit in, in hiring people on a temporary basis, you know, especially. Where you can see their performance over eighteen months, you know, and see how. Cause you're gonna know within a few weeks of, usually if a person's gonna work out or not. And that's why I asked if, 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 if we're going through an agency to hire these people, cause you know, i- it's, it's easy to hire people. It's sometimes not so easy to get, to get rid of them. If, for their underperforming, so.
Robert Quick for the sheriff's office, so the, the biggest reason for the eighteen-month is it could take up to six months to find and do the backgrounds on these individuals. Unfortunately, with the information that we deal with, the criminal justice requirements. We can't just use a manpower and a manpower background. We have to conduct our own backgrounds and requirements. So that's, that's part of it. Now, I, I may be able to fill those quickly, I don't know. But that's kind of the reason for the eighteen months. And then during that time period, once we have those individuals, we would then be evaluating. For the three factors that I laid out for the safety and security of the facility. In fact, that we're able to move them into a sworn position. When they become of age or intend to be moved, if they become of age. And so, um, un- unfortunately, that's where we are with this type of position and the criminal justice information that they would have access to.
Cause most of the, I mean, reading through the job descriptions, these are a lot of administrative stuff. I mean, data entry, uh, I mean, it's not just all on the floor. It's. You know, they've taken these, uh, some of these mundane responsibilities away from people who need to be on the floor. Is that correct?
Robert Quick for the sheriff's office, that's absolutely correct. That's the administrative, the data entry, the answering the four hundred phone calls from the same individuals. Passing meds potentially, and this allows the sworn officer with a much more, um. Much more training certification to be on the floor and in physical contact with the inmates.
So the, the hiring of two extra people could possibly cut back on overtime for, uh, you know, our already sworn, sworn officers. Have, so they can do their other duties that they're stuck doing administrative mundane tasks, so. I mean, from what I read in this description, it was not really a, you know, I, I don't, I don't know the proper term here, maybe a high. You know, Chairman Sparks, is, is there, you know, are these people gonna be dealing on the floor with, with, you know, with opioids? I, I mean, they're, they're not gonna get that experience until later on in a career, so I think that's. Kind of the, the concern is, is, you know, are these, are these two potential people going to be given these? You know, uh, high levels of responsibility? And, and to me, the job description read differently, it kind of.
Robert Quick for the sheriff's office, so these, these individuals will never work by themselves completely. There will always be sworn officers and the intent is never to have them on the floor within housing units to deal with it, with the inmates directly. And when I, when I say indirectly in the job description, we have a, um, a surrounding. Barrier in the housing control unit, but that does not prevent an inmate from climbing, potentially climbing over the top, things like that. So I can never say there won't be that contact. Additionally, currently when we have, uh, courts, district court, justice courts, things like that. We actually have, um. Officers called in on overtime because we need additional officers to do transports and so forth. So my intention would be that this would allow us to reduce some of that overtime that we have to call somebody in.
Yeah, I'm still not in favor of growing and adding two positions. I see where you're going and it is smart. Now, if I could ensure that. That was the sole intent, that they were going to be sworn officers in the eighteen months and it was not to fill some other facet. But I'd have to do some research on it before I would approve that, but as the way it's presented and the way, the testimony I've heard, I'm not in favor of adding two positions at this point in time.
So I just wanna put it on the record and I'm gonna let Lincoln speak to the cost of what this would be, but my concern about hiring. Two potential full-time, but only at eighteen months and giving them health benefits and purse. That's a lot of cost in an eighteen-month and that's a lot of administration work on our side.
Yeah, that's why I'm saying I'm not in favor of adding two positions. You're growing government. I mean, it's like, it's, I just, I don't see the need outside of a, of, of like. The only thing I can even see or make sense of is the fact that we're trying to. Bring in people to make deputies in the future. Now, I've heard and I don't know if it's true, that there's just been people that have applied, but they just get turned away. They don't qualify. What the reasons are, I don't know, but it's just. It's just, um, yeah, I don't know. It just, I, I don't like adding two positions. When we have positions, we can't fill currently.
And I wanna stress that, and I understand what you're saying, but my issue is us giving them the health benefits and the purse for only eighteen months and then having me to take it away.
No, there's that aspect as well. I see that.
So for monetary, we did do a payroll sheet for the two positions fully benefited, cause that's what we were under pressure that it was. It's in the jail backup, the jail budget backup, cause that's where they would be budgeted. But for the two positions at twenty-two seventy-five an hour and then all the benefits for one fiscal year, it was three hundred and sixty-four thousand. Just so you guys have that. Money from out to think about.
Um, so. Are there any further questions from the board?
So these, these two positions only would be working in the jail, not like they couldn't provide any coverage to the animal control or?
Brian, can you open up two point eleven?
Yeah, I'm gonna open up concurrently, uh, two point one-one jail discussion of possible action. There's a decrease to operations by one thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars. And then capital outlay request, A, inmate phone system contingency rollover in the amount of five thousand. B, kitchen equipment replacement rollover in the amount of fifteen thousand. Okay.
Okay. So, yeah, my question there is, are these two potential employees only scheduled for the jail? Or would they be able to take, uh, cross-training with our animal control, provide coverage? I mean, cause you don't have to be a sworn, sworn officer to do that job, right?
Robert Quick for the sheriff's office.
Quick, quick point, same problem, but then open animal control if we're gonna be talking about animal control.
Yeah, so, yeah, the reason I'm asking that is. We have overtime across the board that we're paying for and what, sometimes the, you know, these, these two employees. That's why I asked, are they strictly for the jail? Or would they be able to provide other, other benefits?
Let me go ahead and open two point one-two animal control discussion of possible action. A, there are no changes to operation. It's open now.
Thank you. Robert Quick to the sheriff's office, so the, um, the short answer is we haven't thought of it that far. Typically, it's, we're looking at it only for the detention's division. But we have had, um, individuals where we have cross-trained for that purpose or for the kitchens' purpose, things like that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I, I got a question. So I'm, on this job description, it says complete accurate and detailed reports of events and incidents that occur. Like. What incidents? Like just within the jail?
Robert Quick for the sheriff's office, yes, so that would include any incidents in, within the jail. We have a records management or a jail management system. That has an incident module to it where anything that occurs within the jail, whether it be, um. Problematic inmates or searches, things like that, it's detailed on reports.
It'd be those reports. Okay, thank you.
Okay, since we've opened up the, uh. Animal control part of it, last year we gave you an additional ten thousand dollars to be used before the end of the year and then we're doing, and we'd increased the feral cat program to twenty-five. Have you used the ten thousand?
Yeah.
Robert Quick for the sheriff's office, so, uh, that ten thousand was, uh, intended, based on my understanding, last year was to pre-fund for Elko and the feral cat issue. We've pre-funded five thousand of that because we weren't gonna fund the entire amount. And they are still reusing that. However, uh, based on the, um. Last report I had, which was January's report, we're sitting right at about fifty percent where we should be for that. I anticipate them requesting that additional five thousand. And speaking with the individual, um, that brought that to the commission, understanding is that program's going very well and they're, they're doing quite a few feral cat. Procedures.
And we're only funding the Elko, the clinic in Elko right now?
Uh, Robert Quick for the sheriff's office, that's where the program was set up at and so that's where we're funding.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, I'll hear a motion. I will make a motion. I'll make a motion that we approve. Uh, we're gonna take this, um, let me see here.
Since we combined.
Well, yeah, we'll start, we'll start with two point one. Uh, make a motion that we approve the budget as presented, but not allow the two new positions. That's my motion. Is there a second? Okay, is there another motion?
Make a motion that we approve item two point one. Decrease in operations by twenty-four thousand dollars to, twenty-four thousand two hundred and tw- two hundred and twenty-two dollars. Uh, with the addition of the, the two positions.
Okay, really quick question on that. Can we term them as temporary at the eighteen months and not have to pay the insurance and purse?
That, that's our, Robert's presenting it to you as an eighteen-month fully benefited position. I would present it to you as an eighteen-month temporary position with no benefits.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, we have a complete say-over and then I could support something like that, but not a fully purr.
All of a sudden, it was like I woke up or something, I don't know. But can we do it that way? With, make it a temporary with no benefits?
Robert Quick for the sheriff's office, uh, commission, you can make it anything you like. We'll work with whatever you give us.
By the way, I concur. You can do however you like.
Okay.
What's that?
Bill concurred that we can do it however we like. So do you wanna amend, amend it?
Well, I'm just, I'm not in favor. I mean, if, if we could do it a temporary to try to solicit. With the intent of them being on the street, law enforcement or certified law enforcement officers. I could do that, because if they want to become something other, then we'll have a say. It's temporary now. We're, you know, I'm gonna say, no, we're not, because the intent was this.
Yeah.
You know, we're not approving it for this position. So if we could do it as a temporary, then yeah, I could probably, I could probably support that, even though I'm not really. I'm not, I just don't like adding positions, especially when we have positions to fill.
We'll save a fortune by not doing the insurance and the purse, especially the purse.
And that's the whole point is, you know, it's like fill the positions we have. This is the only reason I would be in favor of that is it gives us an avenue to potentially. Fill positions by bringing in civilians, letting them work, get familiar. Then in the process of the eighteen months where they become certified, uh, to be law officers, to fill the positions, to cut the overtime. That's the only way I'd be.
That's the intent.
I mean.
It's our whole intent, Brian.
But we can't get twenty-one-year-olds, as you know, so we did it with the animal control. We hired, uh, general, a kid out of high school, did an exceptional job, still doing a great job. And we hired as, uh, another one, same way. So we filled our animal control. By using the eighteen-year-olds to do it, and this is what we're looking at doing in the jail. We can't get them. But we may get them arrested when they get out of school. They, we've had opportunities or I've had people talk to me already. They wanna come in when they get out. So now we can open it up to when they're eighteen-years-old or whatever, and if they pan out. Um, we move them, we'll give them a training.
Forgive me, I'm worried about, I'm worried about the topic itself. Um, you were getting into. Details of positions which should be on a different agenda when you actually go to hiring the people. Um, it's, it's still relevant, so you're not technically violating, but you're getting awfully close to the line. In terms of.
Well, even though they're asking for two positions, we have to discuss it somehow.
That's my point. That's why you're, you're close to the line, but.
Okay.
Yeah, we're just asking questions about the positions. I mean, it's, and what all entails, we, cause it.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not saying caution on that, but I'm trying to also point out that you can have this discussion another time. You could approve it now either in full or in part. And then you could have a discussion at another point as to when you're actually approving the positions.
But we're approving.
Approving them right now.
We're approving the budget, yeah. Yeah, you're proving the money for it, yeah.
Yeah, we're approving the budget.
One thing too you guys have to consider, if these are. Temporary but still full-time, they're gonna be going over the hours that are allotted by PERS every year. So if they go over a thousand thirty-nine hours in a fiscal year, we have two papers on them.
So then that was my question. Um, Robert, can these not be two part-time positions that are under nineteen hours a week and still try to attempt to do the pilot program?
Robert Quick for the sheriff's office, we can certainly try.
That's the whole point. I think if we can bring them in and they get comfortable in their scan, see the department, the agency, how it functions, how it works. And then they say, they express, hey, I wanna become a certified deputy, you know, it's like it's.
Because a part-time has to stay within the nineteen hours a week, can't not go over the thousand thirty-nine in fiscal year and they're not benefited.
Yeah, I could, I could support that. I can agree with that.
I could support that, too.
Because I, I do see, I mean, it's just, again, like a state for the record, is because of solving the problem of trying to get people in those positions. So, is there a motion?
So I made a motion, but maybe, if I need to amend that motion, I can.
It's your motion, so...
Okay. So, yeah, I stick by my motion, uh, two point one for the sheriffs to approve. Uh, everything is discussed, but to clarify the job positions with more description later on. I mean, two, as far as a part-time basis, no, no benefits.
Well, that's, okay, so you're saying two part-time positions?
Two part-time positions, so that...
Program with the two top part-time positions.
And make them still the temporary eighteen months, or just part-time?
That's the way, yeah, that's the way we have it discussed with, as they're part, they're strictly...
Temporary, part-time.
Because we run into the, a, a situation where maybe some, some people, um, don't need the full eighteen months. Maybe they're twenty years old, and maybe they, in a year, they, they're now of eight, so we're, that's kind of a tricky situation. But I, as far as the motion, uh, I'm going to, I'd like to approve two point one, uh, sheriffs for their, also their decrease, uh, by twenty-four thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars with the approval of the two part-time positions.
So we're approving the capital outlay request, too?
And then are you approving the capital outlay?
Yes, uh, the capital outlay request as, uh, as discussed.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now we'll go to two point one-one jail discussion and possible action. Well, we've already discussed it, so is there a motion on this?
I'll make a motion to pass two point one-one with a decrease in operations for the jail and one thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
I'll second.
Okay, um, and the capital outlay request?
And the capital outlay request inmate phone, sorry, inmate phone systems contingency rollover in the amount of five thousand, kitchen equipment replacement rollover in the amount of fifteen thousand.
Okay, so we have that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then two point one-two animal control discussion, possible action. There are no changes to the operation. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve two point one-two animal control, no changes to operations.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, there you are, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so two point one-four Battle Mountain Volunteer Fire Department, discussion...
About Austin.
You forgot Austin.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, didn't overlook Austin there. Austin Volunteer Fire Department, discussion and possible action. There are no changes to the operation.
I'll make a motion to approve two point one-three Austin Volunteer Fire Department with no changes to operations.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, and all in favor, say aye.
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 Two point one-four Battle Mountain Volunteer Fire Department, discussion and possible action. There are no changes to operation. So, let's see here. Any questions on it? I have no questions.
Nope.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to pass two point one-four for the Battle Mountain Volunteer Fire Department with no changes to their operations.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, two point one-five Lander County EMS, discussion and possible action. There's a decrease to operations by twenty thousand seven hundred and forty-two dollars.
And I do want to clarify, like I told them for the record, we used to have Austin EMS and Battle Mountain EMS, and we are combining the departments this year to just one department.
Okay.
I'd like to just disclose my relation to Director Harris. Um, since this is just budgeting, I won't be abstaining.
Okay, thank you for that disclosure. Um, are there any questions on this budget?
Patient transfer eighty thousand, is that where we dropped some of the money?
Um...
Because you have that written in in pen.
Yeah, because we, that was your revenue, Mikey.
Yeah, so at the time we put this together, that was roughly what our revenue was. Um, I didn't want to come in here and give you guys an inaccurate number, but I'm fairly confident we're going to blow that out of the water.
It was higher, and so we lowered it down to just not overestimate.
Yeah.
That's why it's written in like that.
But just to give you guys kind of a, like, we build sixty-seven thousand out in the month of January, and we're not going to collect all that, right? We're getting, like, forty cents on every dollar from Medicaid and Medicare, but the private insurance will help us catch up a little bit, and, um, and we are starting to collect from Medicaid and Medicare, which we did in the first eight months. So this year will be substantially better for us than the last year.
Yeah, the hospital was getting it, right?
No, we just...
It just wasn't?
Yeah, so they think, like, when you bill out Medicaid and Medicare, they give you what they're going to give you, and then that's kind of it. You eat the rest of it.
The first eight months, they were still working on their applications, so we couldn't bill, because we weren't, we didn't have the application approved yet.
And these are people you're transporting to, like Reno, or?
Everywhere.
Everywhere.
Here. I mean, sixty percent of our call volume is self-pay or Medicaid, Medicare patients. Granted, at the end of the day, they're human beings that live in Lander County. They need help, so we're happy to do it. We're not in it for the, money's important, but people are more important.
Um, and then you had a decrease to your maintenance contract agreement. What was that decrease from?
Uh, so that was Sharps. I over-budgeted, um, a portion of, of, of them. I overestimated on what we would pay them out in the first year, so, um, I cut that down a little bit. And then the other one was, um, Austin's, I believe it was Austin's maintenance and contract agreements, what they were paying out to the hospital. I cut that out.
Okay. And then I see you, you have thirty thousand dollars on your travel and training line. Do you need that amount, that we approved the grant now to your, your team at Elko for all that training?
So it's kind of twofold. I have good news. Um, I would, I would like to keep it in there in case this doesn't come to fruition, because we have three big classes that are coming in. Uh, we have the difficult airway, T-triple-C, uh, and then we are now currently putting all of our paramedics through critical care courses. Um, so, but we partnered with, uh, the UNR School of Medicine, and it is looking very fruitful. We're actually expecting a seventeen thousand dollar check from them for reimbursement on a large portion of our education. They have several million, millions of dollars that they're looking to fund out for the next couple of years, and, uh, there's only two people going after it. It's us and Ely, and we are very aggressive. Now, I don't want that to fall through and then not have the ability to train our guys, um, but it, it's looking pretty good. Like I said, they, they put together seventeen thousand, it's got to go through a committee and come back to us now. So there's, there's a good chance that we don't have to touch a majority of that.
Okay, awesome. Um, any other questions? If not, I'll hear a motion.
Um, I motion that, uh, we accept two point one-five Lander County EMS with the decrease in operations of twenty thousand seven hundred and forty-two dollars.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, commission.
Uh, we'll go to two point one-seven District Attorney, discussion, possible action. There's a decrease to operation by six thousand dollars. Um, I'm just going to ask, uh, so the decrease is good. Are there any changes in the, uh, labor side of it? Are we adding any positions, any things like that else? Okay.
Not this time.
Okay. Um, so are there any questions for...
Hold on, we missed...
No, we did that one first.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that's right. Okay.
Any questions on two point one-seven for District Attorney's budget? If not, I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve two point one-seven District Attorney's decrease in operations by six thousand dollars.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We've already done two point eight, one eight. Uh, two point one-nine Argenna Justice Court, discussion and possible action. Uh, there is an increase to operations by seven hundred dollars. Okay, two point one-nine. Increase seven hundred. Afternoon, guys.
Hello, Spencer Roberts for Argenna Justice Court. Uh, we're requesting the seven hundred dollar difference for the DUI defendant evaluations. That's for people between eighteen and twenty-one, that the law requires us to get evaluations done for them. Uh, anytime there's alcohol-related arrests, um, we went over budget on that already this year, and so we're just kind of getting ahead of it and trying not to go over budget this year, but we kind of have no control over that. So, uh, we're requesting that. Uh, nothing else really changing, uh, because it is my first year as the judge, so I'm not exactly sure where we're going to fall within the budget on everything else. Uh, but I think we're going to be pretty close on everything. Um, and then I would like to bring your attention to the levels for my employees. Um, one is put in as a level two, and she needs to be at a level three to be correct, and then my...
Which, 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 what's the, what's the position?
Uh, court clerk. She's at a court clerk two, and she should be at a court clerk three, because we're working with the county to mirror the, uh, pay scale in order to alleviate a lot of duties of the HR to be able to bounce around and give people their cost of living and then their anniversary. So we're kind of just changing the whole pay scale to make it easier for them and more fair.
This, are you basing this off of the new scale that I went through with, um, Ms. Martin?
Uh, yeah, the one that you went through.
So that scale hasn't been given to them in the backup, but if we, I believe I followed that scale with their levels.
Uh, you did, except for, um, the court clerk that's listed in here is a court clerk two. It says twenty-four oh-seven, and, uh, what do you make right now? Twenty-three something?
Twenty-three oh-six.
Twenty-three oh-six, and then the level two here is twenty-four twenty-seven. So in order for it to be a fair, uh, level increase, she needs to be at the level three, twenty-five seventy-three.
The level two amount on the page, is what sheets...
Sheet was supposed to take the numbers off of this sheet, so...
Yeah.
So what's the correct amount for number three? Court, oh, sorry, court clerk, court clerk three was the correct amount?
It would be court clerk two, and it would be twenty-four twenty-seven, not twenty-four oh-seven.
Uh, she needs to be at a court clerk three.
That's your guys, that would be bumping her up to a whole nother level. I based it off the way we ran our scale, and that was the conversation I had with Ms. Martin.
Okay, but if, if we go to a court clerk two, it, she would be losing money. And it's the same thing with the bailiff as well. The bailiff is being...
You know, one of them would be losing money.
Well, I mean, they would be losing compared to, like, percentage-wise. So instead of the six percent they've been getting, it'd be like five.
How we did our new scale, when we put our new scale in, we took everybody where their rate were, where they were at, and we put them on the next level of what that was to put them on the scale, regardless of what any percentage was. That's how we had to incorporate the new scale. That's how Ms. Martin and I did this scale.
Okay, well, I'm...
It's up to you how you present it to them.
Right, and I'm just, I'm just arguing to the fact that they, they need to get their fair percentage. Yes, please.
So somebody's going to have to clear the water, but I'm confused.
I also want to, I also want to make aware that this scale has not been approved by this board. It wasn't presented for us to put in the backup. I did tell Ms. Martin I needed it for the backup, and I did not get it back from her. So this scale has not been approved.
So for clarification, it is, uh, back when we approved the county pay scale for all the county employees, um, at that time, uh, Ms. Denise chose to not adopt that pay scale for her, for her employees. Um, they have chose to now adopt that pay scale and have kind of the same thing, which hasn't been brought back to you guys. And so in doing so, when we put this in the budget, we put it in just as we did with everybody else in the county when we gave them their, their raises. So right now, she gets a five percent instead of a six, I believe is what.
Yeah, that's pretty close, yeah.
And, uh, but that's just how she fell on the scale. So we, so everybody stayed on that same balance scale, so they can all take the steps up. We had the same thing with, with some of our other county employees when we did the scale for ours as well, where some only got a, a two percent, and some got, you know, six and seven. Um, but to, to make that balance on the scale, so that's where this is at now.
So the numbers that, so are those numbers reflective of that?
So, hold on, I want to also make aware that the scale that has been approved by this board for the court is not those numbers.
And we can't discuss it.
I only implemented, yeah, I implemented the numbers for the new scale, um, to move forward, and said that the new scale would have to be approved.
Well, we're kind of putting the horse before the...
If I go backwards and take the scale that's been approved right now, these numbers would not even reflect anywhere near. I'm trying to bring our Geno Justice Court up to where they should be on the new scale.
Yeah, we're kind of putting the horse before the cart. We need to prove the scale.
Yeah, we can't discuss anything like that until we've actually approved the scale.
We can bring back the personnel side of their budget at a different agenda with the pay scale. That makes it easier. I just approved the operating today.
Okay, so then, knowing that, so then, so the numbers, if I'm hearing it right, that you're saying the twenty-four twenty-seven is reflective of the...
Incorporating into our current state.
Right, so, but you're saying that is, is not...
I'm, I'm just arguing that they shouldn't be punished for moving to the new scale. If anything, they should be moved up instead of not getting the full amount.
Yeah, no, I see that. But it's, it's, it's like Bert just explained, some people benefited, others didn't, but it's to bring a standardization into the, the pay scale, correct?
Correct, but there's no punishment, because they're, they're still getting raises. Everybody's getting raises, but they're getting a five percent instead of a six. But it's just, it's how they fail and how they just fell into that scale.
And that was the thing when we did it across the board for all the county employees. I mean, it's like the...
Correct. We had a number of people that were very unhappy, because they only got thirty cents, and the other guy got a dollar fifty. But it was, it was how we had to interpret that, to make sure that that was a balanced scale for everybody to have the proper steps moving forward.
Okay, so, so that's what we're, right now, so, but what we're, we're being told is that the court, court clerk two, based on that scale that we will later improve in a later date, will be twenty-four dollars and twenty-seven cents. So if we approve that, that's the amount, not the twenty-four oh-seven. And then I have a question. On here, on the very top of this, uh, sheet two, there's a CPI of three percent, but it, there's no amount, and there's no position. What's that for?
That's for, yeah, that's for split employees, and we currently don't have any employees in the Argenna Justice Court that are split purs. It's just the separation of if they're split purs or if they're employer-only purs. So there's just, there's no employee that's split.
What are split purs?
Uh, where they can't, half of their purs is pre-taxed, so half of their purs gets taxed and the other half doesn't. And the employer only sign up for it.
Onboarding is...
Yeah. Their choice on what they want to be.
Employee, employer, employee.
Employer only.
Employer only.
Okay. All right, so, um... Okay, so are there any other questions?
We can't really discuss the salary part, right?
No, we'll bring it...
Because we have not approved.
No, we're just, oh, I see what you're saying. That's right.
We can, we can approve this, because the discussion, our, everything that's listed here is just for the seven hundred dollar increase for operations. We can still approve that.
Yeah, but the, but the...
You can approve the operation only.
Operation only, yeah, because we haven't, you haven't come before us for the other paperwork.
Yep, understand. Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so are there any other questions?
No.
Okay, I'll hear a motion.
Make a motion that we approve, uh, two point one-nine Argenna Justice Court for, uh, improve operation only in the amount of seven hundred dollars.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, thank you. Yeah. Two point two-zero, uh, Austin Justice Court, uh, discussion, possible action. There's an increase to operations by five hundred dollars, and B, justice of the peace, three percent cost of living salary increase.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon. So, um, let me see, justice of the peace. So my only question on the three percent cost of living, is that on a fiscal year, or don't we give that every year in January?
I was going to say, we already did that, didn't we?
So you, last year, I had to come beforehand, because I'm an elected official, I'm not a normal salary employee, I have to ask for that increase on my salary every year. So you gave me fifteen percent last year, because I hadn't asked for it five years. Yeah, so then this, and I'm just asking for the next one, because I have to ask every year.
But wouldn't that be in January, Liz? Because that's how we set the, the wages for the justice pieces in January, correct?
Yeah, he get, yeah, we, we give him when, in January, but he still has to ask for it in his...
So that's what I'm saying. The January, I'll, I'll, the January is, um, actually, you're supposed to set that in the December four, but it's, uh, for the bare minimum of the term for a justice of the peace, we'll set it the year beforehand. And when it's an election year, but that's the bare minimum, you can just...
No, Josh, they're talking about when I implement and give you the three percent.
Oh, yeah, I have to ask her to do it. That's true, but I have to ask you guys to do it.
All we're doing is putting the money aside and in January he'll get it.
Yeah, exactly.
But I have to ask for that in the fiscal year.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Okay, so... Uh, are there any other questions for our, uh, JP?
So Liz, is this, is this the same situation with the pay scale?
Correct, so you're gonna have to approve operations only because their pay scale has not, and I'm not sure, I didn't speak to you about the pay scale.
You did not speak to me yet.
Ms. Martin said she was going to send it to you.
Yeah, she has some stuff going on for herself right now.
So his would be the same.
Okay, so we're just gonna approve the operations side for the JP, okay, so, um...
So that means we're not increasing, approving the three percent also, or is that considered part of operations?
You could approve the three percent as well on this one.
Sure, okay, for Billy, yeah, that's, yeah. So we'll do operations and the three percent cost.
Okay.
Okay.
So, um, if there's no more questions, I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass two point two oh for the Austin Justice Court and an increase in operations by five hundred and Justice of the Peace, three percent cost of living salary increase.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Hey, thanks. And then we'll go to two point two one, uh, public defender discussion and possible action. Uh, A, there is a decrease to operations by thirty-seven hundred bucks.
So Lake and Sullivan, for the record, I decreased a couple lines within this budget just because, um, when we originally made the budget after, uh, DIDs kind of changed everything, we kind of came in with a stronger budget and we don't really need like telephone and fax, travel and training, minor equipment. Those types of things are being used, so I'm decreasing that a little bit because we're not using any of those lines.
Okay, so we have a, so this is our, so this is just the operating budget, see. Oh, right there. So do we have, how many cases did they actually hear last, this last fiscal year?
That's what I want to know.
Um, I have, I do not know that.
I, I did ask.
Um, I think so.
So you guys should be getting the quarterly reports in your, um, backup and your commission agendas and correspondence when they invoice us quarterly. Kyle provides a, a report of his caseload, but this is just the county labor rating to pay his contract and to pay for indigent defense, um, services.
Well, that, that was part of the, the reason why I want to know is because when we negotiated that contract, it was, there was a lot to say with caseload, it's an increase, kind of, that's why the justification for the increase. So I, I want...
So Kyle's contract is up the end of this year, so that's gonna come back before you guys sign it.
So then at that point, let us know exactly how many cases were, I, I mean, like, I want to look at it, you know, it's like, what are we paying him for?
He doesn't invoice how many cases, this is what you get.
Yeah, see, that's what I mean, it's not, it's, I, I wanted a little bit more streamlined and...
I'd like him to provide that when his contract comes out.
Yeah, so like, I, 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 yeah, I tried two hundred cases.
How long is his contract? Is it annually or?
Uh, we did it for two years, I believe, last year.
Yeah, so we'd want to know both.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, are there any other questions on public defender?
Yeah, we're, we're looking at, where we did, um, the telephone and fax, it was five hundred and you decreased it seven hundred?
No, it was, it was twelve hundred and I decreased it seven hundred, so that's only...
Oh, gotcha, okay.
All right.
All right, if there's no questions, I'll hear a motion.
Make a motion that we approve two point two one, public defender.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so we're gonna take a short recess so we can get some lunch and then we'll get right back at it.
This conference is no longer being recorded.
All right, so we're gonna, uh, get on with our budget hearings here. We're gonna circle back here.
To chamber.
To the chambers. And so it's, uh, Battle Mountain Town Grant Request, item two, Battle Mountain Chamber of Commerce for thirty thousand dollars. All right, so... Yes, please, come on. You're asking for money, so we're gonna give, tell us all the good reasons why we're gonna give you the money, yeah.
He's left everybody else bruised. Oh, gosh.
First, I'd like to, Holly Priest from the chamber, uh, for record, um, I'd like to apologize for not being here earlier. Um, this is my first go around for a grant request, so I had, I was not aware I needed to be here nor that this is when it would come up today. So I apologize.
Okay, no worries. So you're asking for thirty thousand dollars. So, uh, first off, the commission, you guys have any questions for Holly and the grant?
Have you turned in your crab feed receipts yet?
No, because, um, a week after the crab feed is when I needed to have the office cleared out and ready to go and I am still um, in boxes and everything.
I was just asking that because you had some funds left to use, so that's why I was asking.
Yes.
Did you move or did they just paint?
So they, um, the county has decided to do the flooring in Rita's office and the chamber office and, uh, put in ceiling tiles and, uh, new lighting. It's, it's going to be gorgeous, but there were issues with the floors being uneven and just took longer than expected.
So you've asked for twenty-five thousand, or they have asked since this is your first year, um, for twenty-five thousand, or, no, two years in a row, twenty-three and twenty-four, and then now you went up to thirty.
Yes, we've added a couple, we brought some events back. We brought back last year the lemonade walk and, um, uh, let me, I'm thinking what else. Another event came back last year that I don't recall off the top of my head because I'm not quite a full year as, uh, the executive director yet. That won't be till mid next month. And, uh, then we have brought on a, uh, golf tournament. This year is coming in. Uh, the tourism has asked if we would be interested in taking on the, uh, checker feed.
We just talked about that.
And, uh, part of, I have not been able to present all of the documents that tourism gave to me to give to the board because our last board meeting was three days before the crab feed.
Did she give you a breakdown on what, what, what they made on everything and what they spent?
Yes.
Wow, I couldn't get that.
Um, so, um, I, I have that paperwork work, but again, like I said, it's when I, everything went in boxes. It just went in boxes and to lay my hands on it quickly, if I'd have, when I needed to be better prepared, I would have been able to dig it out this last week.
If you took that event, do you know, are they willing to help you with prizes and stuff or what are they willing?
Um, so if we were to take that on, they said that in order for us to take it, we would need to have a hundred thousand dollars in the bank that we would dedicate to it.
Yeah, I wouldn't waste them.
Um, I don't know, I'd, ju- just for insurance purposes, I believe, and all of that, that's just what they want us to have as a backing. Uh, and then I have the breakdown like she gave me, the information. I think it, I see massive advantages, uh, to having it because it does bring commerce into our town. It brings people from all over. Um, it's, it, it bring, it does bring money into town.
A lot, yeah, it does.
And I can, I, I see its value. I am only one person though, and my board, three, fourths of them have their own businesses and their own jobs, so it gets overwhelming. Paula did say she would help do it this year, um, um, there has been a little bit of suggestion that maybe might take through the civic center. Don't know. I'm, I'm just saying suggestion at one time that, that she and I work in tandem towards making it happen. I don't know how that would look. I don't know what it would be like. I do think that if, in order for the chamber to entertain this, we would need some additional financial support from the county, at least for our first year to see how it goes or doesn't go. Um, and I don't, I did not include that because I haven't had an opportunity to even address my board and get their take on it. Some on my board in passing through the dark discussion on it, you know, just side comments. There is a little interest, but they want to be able to review it, which is totally fair. Um, they see some advantages also, but they need to make an informed decision, not just go, yeah, sure.
Well, that's like three times the size of the crab feed, right?
Yes.
I do know that, because I asked this question, they don't get donations from anybody. They don't go out and hit up any sponsors or anything. They got like a thousand dollars in donations and the rest of it all came out of convention and tourism money.
Yes.
And, um, I believe that, you know, if you decided to do it, you could end up with some pretty decent donations. You know, she spent a lot of money at Shields and Cabellos and, and may, there might be the possibility getting some donations from there and this gun.
AMs of, eh, where?
Apex?
Apex gun. You know, they did all of the guns and stuff and, and...
I don't know if Apex did them or if, um, Officer Smith did it. I think Officer Smith did it for this last, this last one.
That was the FFL, or doing, sending in the license for the FFL.
He did all the licensing things?
Yeah, so the Apex, all the guns came through Apex. It didn't? That's what Paula told us.
I, 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 I could be mistaken, but I know that, that Daniel does with Apex, he does have his own ability to procure, procure them like Ms., uh, like Officer Smith as well as Officer Smith. So I don't know. I don't, I don't, I'm not privy to that.
I just know I volunteered this year and that was what Paula told us, so...
And, and, I, I don't, I wish I had more information to give you on that. Um, I just, I'm kind of shooting off the hip on it. Uh, like I said, the, the, the five thousand dollar increase was because of the golf tournament and I don't, I don't know what that requires or how that works and I am, from some, from my chamber members, they are, they are feeling a little pressured because there's the continual, you know, can you donate to this? Can you donate to that? So I'm trying to find ways to offset, to balance, um, because I want to keep my hundred and fifty-two chamber members and bring more in. Um, I got two new people to come on the board, um, onboard as members this month. Uh, I have, uh, I have been, I have approached Honeywell to see if they would maybe come on as a board, as a chamber member where they do so much business with the county. Uh, we just seen, he's so busy, it, we're kind of passing in the night. Um, I've reached out to a couple of the vets in Winemaca to see if they would be willing because a lot of our people go that direction versus Elko Way. Uh, so I am reaching out in different locations. It's hard to hit it hard where I'm still learning the events.
Let me tell you what I told, uh, Miranda. Hit up April and get the business license list.
I, I have that.
Yeah, and then you can send out a letter to all of them and you'd be surprised how many will join.
Yeah, I, I have all of that and I have people very receptive. Um, uh, oh goodness, because I'm unprepared. Cypress Creek is, uh, one of the solar companies that is in stasis right now until the memorandum is lifted on that. Uh, they are just simply waiting for the, okay, to move forward from, for the, not memorandum, moratorium.
Moratorium, one of the businesses.
For the, for that to be lifted so that they know whether they can move forward or not. The, I've had three different meetings with them asking what areas in our community could use an influx of cash, uh, to, so that they can help because they want to give back to the community. We've talked about Boys and Girls Club, our after-school programs, uh, the rec center, the parks that we're working on, um, through beautification on how they could, they could do that. So I do have a pretty good network worked out, um, and we're building it all the time. It's just, like I said, I'm not quite a year into it.
So does a golf course give you guys, um, free green fees when you do your tournaments or do they make you pay for it?
I don't know. This is our first tournament. So I, I don't know how, I don't know how that is working. I don't know if we pay that. I mean, that's again, part of, but I still have to be able to do some of the signage and the advertising and, um, those components that just takes, I'm trying, uh, I go to Laughlin for a rural roundup next, not this first week of April.
Through the eleventh, I'll be there.
I'll be down there and we will be, um, I'll be networking, working on getting some other grants to cover some advertising so that we can get some, um, folders made so that I have already made folders. We want to have a list of all of our chamber members and the services that they offer and get them to all the realtors so that when they have a new home buyer or someone else coming in, like with NGM, there are people that they come in that are interested in our, in our area. They could handle this, what we have available, but that just takes time and learning the events.
Did you guys pay for you to go to rural roundup, roundup or did the convention of tourism?
The convention of tourism took care of that for us.
Great.
She paying just the registration or is she paying?
Yeah, she paid the registration. She's doing everything.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Good, yeah.
Yeah, she, Paula and I have a very good working relationship. We get along well, um, bounce a lot of ideas back and forth off of each other and uh, she's giving me great feedback.
Good, oh, that is good.
Okay, are there any other questions? If not, I'll hear a motion.
I motion that we, wherever our, our amount was here. We, uh, go to one point four and grant the Battle Mountain Chamber of Commerce.
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Holly.
Thank you very much. Again, sorry for being late and, uh, thank you for doing the office. I'm so excited.
Yeah. All right, so we'll go to two point two two, other general expenses, discussion of possible action. A, there is an increase to operations by forty-one thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars.
Okay, Lake and Sullivan, for the record, so we had a couple different lines changed, some increases and decreases. Um, we had to increase our accounting fiscal line. Uh, we have some more fiscal coming through there for the sheriff's office that are a little more costly. Um, and then our computer line, uh, increased our, uh, we've added kind of few features to our accounting software that's a little more expensive and then also, um, a ninety thousand of that was requests to, for our phone system in the county. And then I did decrease China Springs. Lack legislative succession may change the way that the counties are, um, required to pay for that. And so it's based more off participation now, so our fees for China Springs are like decreased in half. We used to pay about eighteen thousand, now it's only about a half.
What is China Springs?
It's the youth.
Oh, I think I asked that last year. I'm sorry.
It's an unfunded mandate.
Okay.
One that decreased surprisingly. Um, and then I did decrease our fire protection contract. We were budgeting multi-years in one fiscal year, so I was able to decrease that.
You have the...
And offset some of the other costs.
I don't see the NACO dues on there.
That's, uh, in your, in the commissioner's budget.
Oh, is that in the commissioner's? Okay.
Okay, no further questions. I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve two point two two, correct?
Yeah.
Other general expenses and an increased operations by forty-one thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, we'll go to two point two three, intergovernmental expenses, discussion of possible action. A, there are no changes to operation. So it looks like the budget we're approving is three hundred and twenty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
My question is, why do we still have Lita on all this stuff when we disbanded it? We have Lita coming up later on as a line item too.
So we still have the Lita fund, um, that we pay for the business improvement program out of.
Okay.
We don't have the board.
Just the board.
Yeah. Uh, but some of these amounts at the bottom, they're, they're not, um, part of the operating. That's why it says there's no changes. But some of these amounts are for grants, so those amounts will change the total, um, when I take out like the conservation district, a hundred thousand and stuff, but the, the top portion is just the operating.
So like the hundred thousand for the sage grass, but don't we take care of that through our con, wildlife conservation line item?
Yeah, I'm saying I will take that out.
Okay.
Since you guys didn't approve that grant.
Okay.
But the operating part didn't change.
Okay. I'm tracking. Okay, all right, any other questions?
Nope.
I'll hear a motion.
Make a motion that we approve two point two three, intergovernmental, intergovernmental expenses, uh, no changes to operations.
I'll second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, we'll go to two point two four, Road Bridge South, discussion, possible action. There are no changes to operation.
We didn't have any changes, um, to our budget this year.
All right, uh, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve two point two four for Roden, Roden Bridge South.
Okay.
Um, no change to operations.
Is there a...
I'll second.
Okay, the motion is seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, two point two five, Roden Bridge North, discussion of possible action. There's an increase to operations by twenty thousand.
In weed control.
To the weed control, yeah. We're, uh, over budget on that currently.
And that's mainly just for us going, um, around and putting gramatol down, trying to clean up a bunch of our different county properties that previously we hadn't.
Well, it looks good. We're doing a good job, so...
We just gave them sixty thousand for weed control? It's a different program completely?
Yeah, so that's conservation district.
That was only twenty now.
Or twenty, yeah.
But that's for like, uh, private.
Okay.
All right, what questions? I'll open for a motion.
Make a motion... Make a motion that we approve two point two five, Roden Bridge North, uh, increase of operations by twenty thousand dollars.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, second, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, we'll go to two point two six, Public Health Nurse, discussion and possible action. Uh, there are no changes to operation.
Okay, they want a step increase?
That's just our, our pay scale, our county pay scale. She's just referencing, referencing that for her employee, which is what we automatically do in July.
Okay. Say, that's not the same thing as the justice court one where we have to, okay. Where's her office at now?
Across the tracks in the, the old admin building by the college.
Okay. Alright.
Okay, no questions, I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion, pass two point two six, Public Health Nurse, no changes to operations.
And second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, we'll go to two point two seven, Social Services, discussion of possible action, there are no changes to operations. So. Okay, there's no questions, I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass two point two seven for Social Services, no changes to operations.
Okay, second?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, two point two eight, State Medical N D T C, uh, discussion of possible action, there's an increase to operations by three thousand five hundred and eighty-four dollars.
This is a mandated increase, um, we're required to increase it four and a half percent. But, uh, medical support.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to pass two point two eight, State Medical End, 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 I can't say it, sorry. Increase operations by three thousand five hundred and eighty-four dollars.
Okay, motion is second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Uh, two point two nine, Agricultural Extension, discussion of possible action, there's a decrease to operation by fifteen thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars.
We like decreases.
Yeah, you're trying to make friends, aren't you? Let's see, so where's the decrease here?
How come we're, how come we're decreasing?
Three lines, so they, their main line is just the reimbursement to you and our. Um, but I, we did some kind of looking at things, Heather and I, and, uh, I think there was an employee in there that we were kind of paying for that wasn't giving services to Lander and so that could be a portion of the decrease and the telephone line decrease as well. But the main decrease was the reimbursement part to you and our.
So if I might just add, my name's Heather Neeld for the record. Um, yeah, just to confirm what Lincoln said, we, um, there was a position, um, that was added to Lander County and looking at the services, uh, that she provided, there, they were a little different than what I felt like our community needed after I was hired on and so, um, that was reduced. Also, just basic, um, some of our extension projects have decreased and a lot of that is because, um, the budget that was prepared last year was, um, now that I'm in the office and consistently I have a little better grasp of what kind of expenses we might be looking at. So, um, so that, that's the main reasons for the decrease.
Okay. Alrighty, um, there's no questions, I'll hear a motion.
Make a motion on two point two nine, Agriculture Extension, to decrease their operations by fifteen thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion is second, all in favor say aye.
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 Thanks Heather.
Thank you.
Thanks Heather.
Alright, two point three oh, Opioid Settlement, discussion of possible action, there's a decrease to operations by eighty-eight thousand five hundred and fifty dollars.
So last year when we created the fund and we did a budget for it, was very broad budget. We didn't really know what to expect and so now we, we actually asked the courts and the sheriff's office and EMS departments and health nurses to put in what they wanted to request from those funds because there's only certain uses we can use it for. And so that's what, it, it's got a better breakdown now of what we're actually going to be using the funds for. And that's why the decrease, because it need as much budgeted.
Are we doing anything with the grants that are out there?
Some of that went to that, to the district court today for juvenile.
No, there's some really good opioid grants for each county.
No.
No? I can have Vincent send you something on that from NACO.
Problem is, we aren't even set the.
Yeah.
That's why I kind of did an outreach to all of them, like, hey, what can we start using this money for? Because it, it's going to be coming in over the next ten years and we have to report on it every year and try to get.
What, what exactly can it be used for? Anything for prevention and education and.
Yeah, there's a whole spreadsheet I can send you guys.
I'd love it.
Yeah, and it shows the uses by settlements. So each settlement, some settlements have certain things you can't use it for, like the bakeout ones are a little more stringent, but I can send you that spreadsheet.
Thank you.
Alright, if there's no further questions, I'll hear a motion.
Make a motion to approve two point three zero, opioid settlement, uh, for a decrease in operations by eighty-eight thousand five hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, we'll go to thirty-one, Risk Management, discussion of possible action, there are no changes to operation.
This one is for our, um, insurance claims, um, on vehicles and equipment. And, uh, we haven't really used it yet because we're still trying to get some funding in there. Uh, but now that we are removed from the guaranteed status, we're going to use some of that S E C R T money to, um, fund a portion into this one. But we're just budgeting seventy-five thousand to cover, that would cover about three insurance claims for our deductibles, twenty-five thousand.
Okay, if there's no questions.
Does this cover, like, if the county gets sued to, or?
Um, that would run through pool pack as well and those look a little different, um, when those happen. This is more of like, if a vehicle gets crashed or something happens.
So it's like a twenty-five thousand deductible for, if somebody sues the county type thing too, if the pool pack pays off?
It, it is, yeah, but that's usually ran on separately through, through professional services.
Okay, I'll hear a motion.
Make a motion to pass two point three one, Risk Management, there are no changes to operations.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll go to two point three two, Aging Services, discussion and possible action, there's an increase to operations, twenty-seven thousand one hundred. Afternoon.
Hello.
Are you doing the school lunch again next year?
Um, we haven't talked about it, but I'm assuming.
You're doing what, ten lunches?
About ten.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, last year in twenty twenty-four, we did seven hundred and ninety-five school lunches.
Wow.
The Austin School doesn't have a kitchen. And you have, um, it put in the budget somewhere for you guys running back and forth to Kingston, delivering meals?
Um, it's part of our transportation line.
Part of that line, okay.
I think I increased it by.
Does fuel prices keep going up?
Five thousand this year, I think. Yeah.
Hey, any questions, now I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass two point three two for Aging Services, increase in operations, twenty-seven thousand one hundred.
Motion is your second?
I'll second.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Uh, two point three three, Battle Mountain Landfield, discussion of possible action, there are no changes to operation. Well, if there's no questions, I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass two point three three, Battle Mountain Landfield, no changes to operations.
Okay, we have a second?
I'll second.
Uh, motion is second, all in favor say aye.
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 Uh, two point three four, Austin Landfield, discussion and possible action, there are no changes to operation.
I'll make a motion to pass two point three four for the Austin Landfield with no changes to operations.
Okay, we have a motion and second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion is second, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, two point three five, Austin Airport, discussion of possible action, there are no changes to operations.
I'll make a motion to pass two point three five for the Austin Airport, no changes to operations.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Two point three six, Battle Mountain Airport, discussion of possible action, there's an increase to operations by four hundred and twelve thousand.
So the reason for this is because we had to add a fuel line. Um, right now we're paying for the airport fuel out of the general fund and it's going back to the general fund. It should technically be in the airport fund. So, uh, that will all be reimbursed, that increase will be reimbursed, but we had to add to pay for the fuel out of the airport fund and then it will go back in the revenue to me.
And the Austin Airport is included in that, that fund?
Yeah, we put it all in Battle Mountain.
Okay, Bubby keeps asking about that, so.
Okay, I'll hear a motion if you have to.
Make a motion that we approve two point three six, Battle Mountain Airport, increase in operations by four hundred and twelve thousand dollars.
I'll second.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, we'll go to two point three seven, Lita, discussion of possible action, there's a decrease to operations by twenty-five hundred.
Okay, um, well, there you are.
Yep. Shelby, not for the record, planning coordinator, you had questions?
No, I was just going to say I talked to Sarah and she's supposed to be sending in your final bill for that, to get that closed out.
Okay. Um, yeah, so I proposed to leave the budget at fifty thousand. Um, last, well, so far this year, we've had a request, um, in eighty-one thousand dollars. Uh, so far, I have some updated numbers for you. Uh, we've reimbursed forty-six thousand dollars, um, and have a remaining requests, uh, for thirty-four thousand.
And part of that is Marx, right?
Yes, part of that is Marx.
Which doesn't come out.
Does that expire after certain time?
I was just going to ask, can we set a time limit on whether, how long to?
So they have nine months from the date that they sign their participation agreement to get the projects completed. Uh, we do have one, uh, for the covered wagon, uh, she was confused a little bit about the timeline. She thought she had three years when in actuality it was nine months. Uh, so I'll be bringing that back to you guys next, next time for, uh, an extension.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, so, uh, besides that one, Marx is the only one and I haven't been in contact with him. I don't know where he's at on it, uh, I haven't heard anything from him. I'm assuming they were waiting until the weather gets nicer to complete the paving, um, but that's just an assumption.
How many, how many grants have you gotten in so far?
Uh, one, two, uh, five.
How many have completed?
Only one is completely completed.
And that's the farmer's insurance, yeah.
Yep.
Looks very nice.
Mm-hmm.
Really nice.
Uh, the Comfort Inn, they were waiting on the weather to get nicer, uh, to complete theirs. I don't see an issue, they'll probably submit for their reimbursement, they're pretty good about it. Um, Austin, like you said, she's, I'm assuming she's getting ready.
Well, what she wants to do is she wants to do a little, uh, presentation and that, you know, and then do the final billing after that. She just.
Okay.
She went to work for the state, so she's been pretty busy.
Oh, gotcha. Yeah, um, yep, insurance and more is completed, yeah, so the only two that, uh, the covered wagon, they just need to install their fence. Um, and she's waiting on some property boundary line adjustments and things like that to get that done, um, and midway.
Awesome. And you're still accepting them?
Yeah.
Alright, if there's no further questions, I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass two point three seven for Lita for a decrease in operations by twenty-five hundred dollars.
Motion is second?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Alright, two point three eight, Regional Transportation, discussion of possible actions, there are no changes to operations. We have capital outlay request, A, Flight Alliance of Northern Nevada, FAN, partnership in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand and B, Footbridge in the amount of four million.
So just the new, uh, Footbridge, um, project is what we added here. Um, I think it's still a couple of years out, but we wanted to have it budgeted for to be able to start working on that.
And we're still waiting on indot on that one too.
Yeah, um, indot said we're about the only county with, with projects currently, so.
Hopefully they get moving.
Yeah, well, everybody else has projects, but they want them to fund them and we're the only county coming forward with some funding. So, um, they're thinking that we might be able to move this a little faster than what we were anticipating, so maybe move that three-year markup a little bit, you know?
That'd be good. Yeah, Ely's doing a Main Street project and so is Hawthorne, I think.
Yeah, I think them are all indot funded.
Yep, they are.
They were excited to see some projects come down the pipe that weren't indot funded, that are going to be, or at least partially funded by the counties, so.
Yeah, cool.
Alright, if there's no further questions, I'll hear a motion.
Make a motion that we approve two point three eight, Regional Transportation, no changes to operations.
And capital outlay request?
And the capital outlay request, as stated.
Uh, so we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, two point three nine, Austin Capital Acquisitions, discussion of possible actions, there are no changes to operations.
Hmm, I thought you might put that sidewalk under this one.
No, I think that's under our, uh, community improvement projects, the four million we have set aside.
Okay.
Okay, if there are questions, I'll hear a motion.
Make a motion that we approve two point three nine, Austin Capital Acquisitions, uh, no changes to operations.
Okay, I'll second, all in favor say aye.
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 Two point four oh, Austintown, discussion of possible action, there's a decrease to operations by twenty-five hundred.
Um, this was just for the public works line that we have in there. Um, we used to use it for like the TV, um, repair maintenance, so we don't have that anymore, so I just decreased. I didn't take it all together, but I decreased it.
Okay, okay. I'll make a motion to pass two point four oh for the Austintown, decrease in operations by two thousand five hundred dollars.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Two point four one, Mount Lewis Communications, discussion of possible action, there are no changes to operation.
I'll make a motion to pass two point four one, Mount Lewis Communications, no changes to operations.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Two point four two, Battle Mountain Town, discussion of possible action, there are no changes to operations.
I'll make a motion to pass two point four two, Battle Mountain Town, no changes to operations.
Okay, we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, two point four three, Capital Acquisitions, discussion of possible action, there are no changes to operations. We have capital outlay request, A, Wildlife Enhancement in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand, B, Austin Storage Facility rollover in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand, C, Lander Purchase in the amount of three hundred and thirty-three thousand.
Okay, what have we done with the property across our mommas? Why are we buying that?
That's, um, that was set aside for, um, section eight housing.
Yeah.
And so the idea behind that was to purchase that and, uh, and potentially either do something for senior living or, um, if nothing else, to do something more locally than, uh, section eight housing where they, you know, that's like Hurricane Katrina, things like that.
Right, yeah.
They relocate. So.
So you're going to work with our N D C and, and see what kind of funding you can come up with that way, or?
With, I apologize, with.
Our Rural Nevada Development Corp, our N D C?
We haven't yet, no, we didn't reach out to them for funding, no.
For the housing part?
No, we, we weren't wanting to do that housing there, we were, we were actually wanting to, uh, do like a senior living or something in that and, but have that whole, whole parcel to, to do something like that on.
Okay. Isn't that in the flood zone?
No, that's, that's on the other side of that.
Oh, okay.
It's on this side of that, for Bubby.
Alright, and so then the other two are at, um, additions to the cemetery?
Yes, the other ones that are, um, I think them are, them are gathered from tax, um.
Oh, okay.
It's on the other side.
What is the Rock Creek property going to do?
And the Rock Creek property is if we ever go, move forward with the dam up there to, uh, um, what is that project called? Yeah.
Reservoir.
Rock Creek, Rock Creek Reservoir, if we were to ever back that up and create a reservoir, um, in Rock Creek, that's why we're looking at that property.
We want to control that piece.
Talked about that years ago.
Yeah, well, years ago, yeah.
Years ago.
Years ago.
Yeah.
But yeah, that's definitely something I think we'd wanna have.
Yeah, it was a long time ago.
All right, so if there's no further questions, we'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass two point four three, capital ac- acquisitions, A, B, and C.
Okay, we have a motion, I'll second, all in favor say aye.
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 Two point four four, golf course, discussion of possible action, there's an increase, uh, to operations by five hundred dollars.
I apologize, I've, I've, I've...
I'm looking for it, I don't see it.
Yeah, where's the increase?
I don't see an increase, unless you didn't list it on here, for your wire, you could say something else.
No. Not, unless it was for utilities or something like that, I don't, I'm not aware of any increase.
So, do we make a percentage of the green fees back, or a lease off of the cafe, or anything back off of this?
Uh, well, we, the, the lease for the building, but really not much, no, the golf course is, is like parks and like direct center, it's, uh, another public service that's just a huge sinkhole.
Are we still paying for the golf carts, or are they paying for those?
No, they have, they have their golf carts.
Okay.
Yeah, they rent their carts.
It's the telephone and fax line, it didn't get referenced on the sheet, but, uh, they have a cellphone now as well out there, and they did it before, so that's what increases.
Okay.
Okay, I'll hear a motion.
Make a motion to approve two point four four, golf course, increase in operations by five hundred dollars.
I'll second.
Motion and second, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, we'll go to two point four five, parks, discussion of possible action, there are no changes to operations, we have capital outlay request of A, park lighting, new park rollover in the amount of fifty-two thousand.
I'll make a motion to pass two point four five on parks, capital eight, capital outlay request, park lighting, new park rollover in the amount of fifty-two thousand dollars.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, two point four six, pools, recreation center, and discussion of possible action, there's an increase to operations by nine thousand five hundred and forty-six dollars.
So, we're just adding the eight thousand back into the events line, um, that we had given to the chamber for the two events that came back over, and then the other additional increase was for the Christmas alert, and that one will fluctuate everywhere, every year, just depending on how much donations we get, and then what we spend out, we just budget whatever's remaining.
I'm gonna make a motion to pass two point four six, pools, recreation center, with an increase to operations for nine thousand five hundred and forty-six dollars.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, question, so on the clothing allowance, twenty thousand, is that, are we paying like, is for like the bathing suits for lifeguards, stuff like that?
Yeah.
And did, so are, we must be buying, we must have to buy them frequently, huh, they must just get wore out?
Yeah, I think they get wore out conveniently so much.
All right, uh, we have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Uh, two point four seven, civic center, discussion of possible action, there are no changes to operation.
Make a motion that we approve, two point four seven, civic center, no changes to operations.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
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 Two point four eight, libraries, discussion of possible action, there are no changes to operation.
I'll make a motion to pass two point four eight for the libraries, no change to operations.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Two four nine, uh, cemeteries, discussion of possible action, there are no changes to operations, we have capital outlay request, A, cemetery fencing, in the amount of one, one hundred and forty-six thousand three hundred and eighty dollars, so, so cemetery, so is that fencing the entirety of the cemetery, is that what it is? And I'm not sure, is this the, for the Austin Cemetery?
No, this is for the Austin Cemetery.
For extension, right?
Or, uh, the little piece on the corner there that we're getting back with taxes that we're gonna include into the cemetery, this is to match the same cemetery fence that's there.
Is, is it that wrought iron fence?
Yep.
Okay, that's why it's so much, all right.
Is, is this gonna go, like, through the alley, or will the alley still be there?
No, so part of that alley will have to be abandoned.
Okay.
Um, and we'll have to move some sewer line there, um, to where the residents are, and then the rest of that property is gonna become county property, and then we'll be able to extend the cemetery itself.
Perfect. Nice.
I apologize, we have two different fencing things going on, we're fencing the Austin Cemetery, and I wasn't sure if that was rollover to this, or if this was the addition to this one, so that's why I looked back, 'cause I know she ought to have been kinda handling that, so.
Yeah.
All right, so if there's no further questions, uh, we have a motion.
Make a motion for two point four nine on the cemeteries, um, no changes to operations and capital outlay requests, cemetery fencing in the amount of one hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, three hundred and eighty dollars.
Okay, we have a motion, second?
I'll second.
And a second, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, Battle Mountain Capital Acquisitions, um, discussion of possible action, there are no changes to operation.
Make a motion that we approve, two point five zero, Battle Mountain Capital Acquisitions, no changes to operations.
Okay, we have a motion, I'll second. Um, um, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, it's two point five one, emergency maintenance, uh, discussion and possible action, there are no changes to operations, we have capital outlay request, A, emergency maintenance, fixed assets in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars.
Um, this is an amount we, we put in there every year, just in case we have like a piece of, a big piece of equipment go down, or something along the lines of this fund can be used for those emergency projects.
I'll make a motion to pass two point five one, emergency maintenance, um, no changes to operations, capital outlay request, emergency maintenance, fixed assets in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, uh, we have a motion, I'll second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Two point five two, reserve fund, discussion of possible action, there are no changes to operations, capital outlay request, we have A, Battle Mountain EMS, new ambulance rollover in the amount of three hundred and fifty-one thousand five hundred dollars, B, Zoll cardiac, cardiac monitors, six, in the amount of five hundred and five thousand, C, replacement of SCBA's for Battle Mountain Fire in the amount of one hundred and thirty-five thousand, D, miscellaneous equipment and furnitures for upcoming projects, golf course, firehouse, event center, in the amount of five hundred thousand. Boy, those cardiac monitors are expensive little boogers, huh?
They're very expensive, yeah, and they keep going up.
Before we start, I'll just disclose again that my relation to Director Harris, I, I won't be abstaining, or, uh, as this is just related to the county budget.
Okay, thank you for that disclosure. Uh, are there any questions?
No, but, yep, I do, Brian, number D, just in case they do shop with me, we might wanna leave D out of that if I'm gonna vote on it.
Oh, oh, I see what you're saying, just, you might just disclose that.
Yeah, so.
Okay, I don't, I don't know, I think that you would have to abstain once, uh, because you aren't a part of any of the purchasing, but you would have to abstain from the vote when we do, on the payment of bills.
Okay, perfect, okay, all right.
All right, so there's no questions, I'll hear a motion.
Make a motion that we approve, two point five two, reserve fund, uh, capital outlay request, A, B, C, and D, uh, as well as no changes to operations.
Okay, we have a motion, second?
I'll second.
Seconded, and all in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. Uh, admin ads assessment, discussion of possible action, there are no changes to operations.
You missed two point five three.
Two point five three, I?
Oh.
Retiree insurance?
Oh, sorry, man, it's late in the day, I'm past my nap time.
And you have lunch.
Two point five three, retiree insurance liability, discussion of possible action, there are no changes to operation.
Make a motion that we approve, two point five three, retiree insurance liability, no, no changes to operations.
Okay, we have a motion, I'll second, uh, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, now we'll go to two point five four, admin assessment, discussion of possible action, there are no changes to operations.
I'll make a motion to pass two point five four for admin assessments, no changes to operations.
What, so what exactly are the, what's the admin es- uh, assessments?
Um, those are a portion of the court fees that are paid, that don't mention that on, and don't be used for certain things.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, two point five five, genetic marker, discussion of possible action, there are no changes to operations, and what?
What, what are we doing with this?
What's the genetic markers?
So, again, this is a portion of, uh, fees that are paid, and, um, this is like a pass-through, so we pay it back to Washoe County Medical and San Diego's office.
They're testing DNA?
Is this drug testing, or what is this?
No, I think it's, uh, more for, like, maybe autopsies and things like that.
Yeah, we have an expert in the house.
Thanks.
Not sure of the expert, I, I can give an answer. Mike McDonald, uh, District Attorney's Office, Chief Deputy, the, there is genetic testing, um, that is required by law, sentencing, uh, in district court, and so, there's a, uh, pool of information that's accumulated regarding the folks, the offenders that are convicted, and so, uh, my understanding is that, that, uh, after sentencing, tests are conducted, the judge has already ordered us the fee that are set out by statute, and then those funds are just passed on, uh, to folks in Washoe, to the state, I wasn't sure who.
Okay.
And what do they do with that, the genetic testing after, what do they use it for?
They can compare, uh, the convict's DNA with unsolved cases.
Oh, okay.
Sometimes they can solve cases across the country and things like that.
Okay, that makes more sense.
Yeah, it's creating a, a database.
Okay.
Cool.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see here, two point, or actually...
I'll make a motion to approve two point five five genetic marker, no changes to operations.
Okay, so we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and second, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, we'll go to two point five six, forensic fee, discussion of possible action, there are no changes to operations. If there's no questions, I'll hear a...
Make a motion that we approve, two point five six, forensic fee with no changes to operations.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
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 Two point five seven, Austin Water, discussion of possible action, there are no changes to operations, we have capital outlay request, A, booster station to upgrade and coordination tank rollover in the amount of six hundred and seventy-five thousand.
So, you're gonna move the tank and the booster over there onto the old property next to Braggs?
Yeah, not the tank, just the booster station.
Okay, so then what are we doing with the tank?
That's just part of, we're gonna, we're making sure that we're upgrading that, so we have everything, you know, that whole system will be upgraded, how much we did here with our tanks.
Okay, you're still gonna leave the tank sitting on the corner there?
No, that's the booster house.
Oh, that's just a booster house, okay.
That's just a little house.
All right, yeah.
They're gonna carve it down there on that RV.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna move that over into that over lawn.
I, I can't believe nobody's ever hit it. It's been close a couple times.
All right, I'll hear a motion.
Make a motion to approve, two point five seven, Austin Water, uh, capital outlay request, A, in the amount of six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, as well as no changes to operations.
Okay, I'll second the motion, all in favor say aye.
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 Two five eight, Austin Sewer, uh, discussion of possible action, there's no changes to operation.
I'll make a motion to pass two point five eight, Austin Sewer, no changes to operations.
Okay, we have a motion?
I'll second.
We have a second, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, two point five nine, uh, Battle Mountain Water, discussion of possible action, there are no changes to operations, we have capital outre- request of A, Ethel's Twentieth Street Water Line in the amount of two million three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, and two hundred, three hundred and sixty-three thousand and thirty-three dollars, and B, meter and backflow support complex in Borealis Park in the amount of fifty-four thousand.
Those new lines, Bert?
Yeah, where's Ethel and Twentieth?
So, Ethel and Twentieth is out there, uh, by NAN, uh, it makes that loop all the way around, and it's all we're trying to do is make that line loop for fire flow purposes.
So, it'll go down past NANS, down, down?
Correct.
By my empty properties that already got wells on, thanks.
Yep, um, so it'll, it'll go down there, the reason why we're looking at doing this is because we wanna repave that road, and that road's in pretty poor shape, but we don't want to, uh, put brand-new asphalt down if, in the next few years, a water line would come through with it, so we'd rather do them together.
Okay.
And then the sports complex, it's just a state requirement to have backflow preventer, so we have to put one in over here in our sports complex.
Okay, any other questions, if not, I'll hear a motion.
Make a motion to approve, two point five nine, Battle Mountain Water, uh, capital outlay request, A, for the amount of two million three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, uh, two, three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, and, wait, okay, if you got two million, two million three sixty-three zero three three.
And before, and before you guys vote, I know the Commissioner Price did kinda disclose, but it does border your property, which could, could benefit it, I know that you do have, um, wells on them, but...
I'll, I'll stay in, yeah.
You might abstain from it.
It's not gonna matter, I got wells on them.
And also B, in the amount of, uh, for the meter and backflow, uh, the sports complex in Borealis Park for fifty-four thousand dollars, as well as no changes to operations.
Okay, I have, uh, a motion on the floor, I'll second it.
Oh, okay.
And all in favor say aye.
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 And I'll stay.
Okay. You wanna state why you abstain?
Huh?
You wanna tell?
Oh, because it borders my property.
Thank you for that. Uh, two point six oh, Battle Mountain Sewer, discussion and possible action, A, there are no changes to operations, uh, we have capital outlay request of A, safety lift station and gravity sewer rollover in the amount of four million six thousand six hundred and sixty-nine dollars, and B, Round Mountain Lift Station and Gravity Sewer in the amount of two million five hundred thousand dollars, and C, sewer plant maintenance in the amount of fifty thousand dollars.
And so, at the time we, uh, we put in for these, I believe that the Round Mountain Lift Station and Gravity Sewer, that we won't need a lift station out there, so that number will be substantially less, um, and then, uh, safety is one that we were already planning on getting done, that's the one right out in front of the jail here, um, we're planning on adding to that, so we can connect over here to the road below the golf course, and kinda lower this traffic density on that.
Okay. All right, if there's no questions, I'll hear a motion.
Make a motion to approve, two point six zero, Battle Mountain Sewer, uh, capital outlay request, A, the safety lift station, gravity sewer rollover in the amount of four million six thousand six hundred and sixty-nine dollars, uh, B, Round Mountain Lift Station and Gravity Sewer in the amount of two million five hundred thousand, and C, sewer plant maintenance in the amount of fifty thousand dollars, as well as no changes to operations.
Okay, we have a motion, I'll second.
I'll second.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, two six one, court facility fees, discussion of possible action, there are no changes to operation.
Make a motion that we approve, two point six one, court facility fees, no changes to operations.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, two point six three, mind map fees, discussion of possible action.
You missed juvenile.
Oh, man, okay.
You're getting excited here, we're almost done.
Two point six two, juvenile, uh, admin assessment, discussion of possible action, there are no changes to operation.
Lincoln, what is this?
This is anything like the courts have with their admin assessment, but this is for the juvenile fees that come in proportionally.
For the fees coming in, okay, thanks, all right. I'll make a motion to pass two point six two for juvenile administration assessments, no changes to operations.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Two point six three, mind map fees, discussion of possible action, there are no changes to operation.
I'll make a motion to pass two point six three, mind map fees, no changes to operations.
What's the, what's the miscellaneous line, uh, Lincoln, under there for a hundred and twenty thousand five hundred, what, what do you use that for?
Um, that would be a question for Lexi, this is the reporter's, um, budget.
Okay, just curious.
Um, I can ask her.
Map fees, Minecraft fees, I guess. Any other questions?
No.
Nope.
Okay, I'll hear a motion.
I had a motion earlier.
I'll second.
We have a motion, hey, Lexi, I have a question real quick. On your, uh.
She's in there watching the TV.
You have the, uh, miscellaneous line item of a hundred twenty thousand dollars, a hundred twenty thousand five hundred dollars, what do you use that for?
Uh, this, I, for the NRS, I can use it for any, half has to go towards keeping, um, mining maps, so paying the companies to plot those and the rest of it can be used towards anything the recorder sees fit. So this year I used part of it as, um, indexing my historicals, all of my past ones.
Okay, I understand what miscellaneous is, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, did we get a second on it?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Two point six four, technology fees, discussion of possible action, there are no changes to operations. Well, if there's no questions, I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass two point six four, technology fees, no changes to operations.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Yes, we motion is second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, and then two point six five, Commissioners, discussion of possible action to continue the budget workshop on March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. So do we want to, on the stuff, we can't, can we? Can we bring up the stuff that we didn't address with agenda justice court and tomorrow?
We have to have time to agendize it properly.
Okay, so it has to be agendized properly, okay. All right.
So we don't actually have to, I mean, we still have our Commissioners meeting tomorrow, but we don't have to carry this forward? Cause we're done.
Okay, so, okay, with that, then we'll move to public comment for non-agendized items only, is there any public comment? Okay.
There are no public comments.
I'll hear a motion for agreement.
So moved.
All right, second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Didn't see that one coming.
What, that's being done?
Uh-huh.
Hey, we don't mess around, we don't mess around.